Uh, one, I am calling this meeting of the Barrington Town Council to order. All members of the town council are present. I would ask that you join me in the pledge of allegiance. Jim will put on the screen a flag image for us since we can't all be together. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, just, for all. Thank you. So it has been, there's been a request that we explain how folks can speak to the flag ordinance. We have an agenda. You should be able to find the agenda on our website. And you'll see that the agenda, that particular item is item eighteen on our agenda. Uh, we will talk about kind of the manner in which we'll do it. That is how folks can address this in a little bit. But we'd like to get as much, as many folks as we can to, to give their views on this as we can. If you are watching on video and you look at the participants tab, you should be able to see a hand raising icon. And when you, if you click that, we will know that you want to be, uh, want to be heard and eventually we will call on you. Uh, there are already over a hundred people here. I see there's already one hand raised. That's, uh, what we'll, we certainly will get to you, Mr. Jacobson, but, um, we're going to go through the other portions of the agenda. And we will get to that portion, uh, later in the evening. The next item on the agenda is, uh, our announcements, and I would ask our town manager, Jim Cunha, to take us through those, please.
Thank you, Council President. Um, I'd like to remind everyone that the COVID, rapid COVID testing site, uh, remains open. It will be open, uh, starting tomorrow morning at nine AM, nine to five, uh, through this Saturday. Uh, Committee on Appropriations has begun its deliberations on the budget. They'll be meeting on Tuesdays, uh, tomorrow night and the following week at seven PM, uh, via Zoom, and you can find the link on the agenda on the council, on the town website. The Diversity Equity and Inclusion Session Two will be held on this Wednesday from seven to eight PM. Once again, the Zoom link can be found on the town website. Uh, President's Day is February fifteenth, and all town offices will be closed on that Monday. Um, the library will be offering, uh, the movie Purple, America, We Need to Talk, a special virtual, uh, virtual community screening and interactive discussion. Uh, and that will be held on, excuse me, I have it right here. That will be held on Thursday, this coming Thursday, February fourth at seven PM via Zoom, and the library website has that link on it. Special election is Tuesday, March second. Uh, the last day to apply for a mail ballot is a week from tonight, February ninth. I mean, I'm sorry, a week from tomorrow night, Tuesday, February ninth by four PM at the vote dot ri dot gov website or in the town clerk's office. Early in emergency voting will begin in the council chambers of town hall, beginning on February tenth through March first. And then the special election itself will be held on March second. There will be only one polling location, and that will be in town hall. Um, from seven AM to eight PM on that day. And that, just reminded the, uh, that is the, uh, polling for the bond issues for the state budget for this year. Um, I like, if people have an opportunity to go to the town website, we made some upgrades. Um, there's a town council contact, uh, place where, uh, residents can contact the town council directly from the website. Um, there's also many online applications for different positions and permitting. And finally, uh, I'd like to talk a little bit about the COVID vaccinations. As you know, we began the seventy-five plus um, last week, while the registration for it, we actually will be administering those vaccinations to the eighty residents, uh, on Wednesday. It was supposed to be today, but that was, it was canceled due to the snow. That'll be this coming Wednesday. It'll be the same appointment times that they were assigned, and they've all been contacted. That means that now all our congregant care settings in town are covered, uh, for over seventy-five-year-olds, and we have established on our, um, on the senior, uh, center website, a, a link to a registration where you can register for, uh, future vaccinations. They will begin on, they will be on Wednesdays, beginning on February seventeenth. And, um, the first four weeks will be for first doses, and then the second four weeks will be with, for second doses for those same people. And, uh, we had a meeting with the Lieutenant Governor today, and there's a lot of moving parts on this. Uh, we're trying to keep on top of it. We're hoping that the the, uh, vaccines will increase in number, and we'll be able to make, uh, greater offerings to those seventy-five and over um, in our community, and then move to phase five, which is the sixty-five and older and other folks as well. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thanks, Jim. Um, I should point out that I've gotten, I just got in a text that said that, um, people are not able to join the meeting. Uh, we were at a hundred attendees. I thought we had a number that was higher than that.
Uh, we should have a number that's higher than that. The Zoom said, uh, five hundred, it told me today. Um, we were at a hundred several weeks ago, and that may be the problem. It might be a Zoom problem.
Okay. Uh, is there a way to just check to see if there's a setting that, that we can adjust?
I can. I, I do not believe there is a setting.
Okay. We believe that we have room for, uh, uh, five hundred people. Uh, it looks like we're maxed out at one hundred. Which is unfortunate. If, if we can get that resolved, uh, hopefully we'll, we'll be able to get more in this meeting and possibly at later meetings, but, um, I wanted to, our next item on the agenda is to discuss an act on town council rules and procedures, including the consent agenda policy. I had a couple of things that I wanted to raise with the council. One was, um, just to talk about how we, um, approach the consent agenda. Um, especially because we have such a, um, lengthy agenda. It's actually not that long. It's just that there are a lot of very important things that will take up some time, but, um, we are going to try to get through the consent agenda as quickly as we can, so, uh, unless anyone objects, I, I intend to just, um, ask people to uh, bring, draw attention to anything in particular they wanted to. And unless they wanted to vote on something other than, uh, granting, agreeing with it in the consent agenda, maybe we won't hold those. You're certainly free to do whatever you want. I'm just asking that you do that. So any questions on that? Yes, Jacob.
I, I just had a question. If, are, if we have people who aren't able to get into the meeting, are we allowed to proceed per Open Meetings Act?
Yes. Um, Andy, can you answer that? I, I've actually asked that. I, I asked whether we had to have some limit, but I, I think the answer is that we're okay. Uh, we're not required to have unlimited seating.
Yeah, um, this is Andy type. Um, under the Open Meetings Act, the Open Meetings Act basically says nothing about capacity. Um, so, um, there have been several, um, cases brought to the Attorney General, and they've said repeatedly that, um, you do not have to have, um, an unlimited capacity. Um, that being said, when we get to certain things that are public hearings on the agenda, I, if, if we're still stuck at this, um, I would be more concerned because with a public hearing, you have to allow everybody to speak at least once, although not for an unlimited length of time. And if people can't get in, they can't participate in the public hearing. So on those items that require a public hearing, if we haven't fixed things by then, um, I would be recommending that those things be continued. But the meeting can go on under the Open Meetings Act.
Okay. Um, is it possible, Mary or Jim or someone, to, uh, see if we can get in touch with the Zoom people, um, to address this?
I'm trying to do that right now.
Great. Okay. Thanks. Rob, yes, please.
And, and I'm wondering if, if we get to that appropriate time and we haven't gotten an answer, do we even take a short break? Um, or, you know, even maybe five, ten minutes, or give us whatever time we need to make sure that we can contact somebody at Zoom to, to see if we can get everybody in. Um, you know, just to try all avenues.
Sure. Yeah, I think that makes sense. Our public hearings are towards the end of the meeting, so we will have some time, uh, for these uh, sort of more routine parts. And hopefully we can get this resolved. Any other questions on that piece of it? That was just a request that we try to move through that more quickly now and in the future. The other piece of it is the, uh, town council rules and procedures. Um, we do have a set of rules. There are times when we're sort of relaxed about those rules, and I think we're going to have to follow those rules tonight. Uh, even with only a hundred people, that's still a lot of people for much of the meeting. Those rules say that, uh, the members of the public can be recognized and heard on most matters for three minutes once. And by most matters, I mean regular agenda items. That's distinct from the, uh, public hearing portion. The, in the public hearing portion, uh, our current rule says that people uh, will be able to be heard for as long as they want, for as many times as they want. Normally, not a problem. We, we go through this a lot, and, and most of our ordinances don't draw that many people, if any. But if we have, um, a hundred or more, probably more, uh, folks doing that, and, and people are speaking for long periods of time, then there's a lot of folks who are going to be disappointed that they haven't been able to be heard, uh, that they're having to wait so long. So, one solution to that is, uh, to suspend that rule. That is, um, Rule Nine C uh, of the Rules of Procedure in its entirety, and authorize the president to keep all comments of the public to three minutes. We can then allow people to speak for three minutes, and then go through the list, and if they want to say something else, they can say something else, and we'll, we'll, we'll do that until everybody has had their chance to speak. But I'm just concerned with, um, folks speaking for long periods of time. I have had a request from a, a resident to speak for twelve minutes, and, um, you know, normally, if it was a simple thing where we didn't have so many people, I, I would certainly not object to that. But where we have so many people who want to be heard, I'm concerned about that. So I'm going to make a motion to suspend Town Council Rule Nine C of the Rules of Procedure in its entirety, and authorize the president to keep all comments of the public to three minutes.
I second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, uh, seeing none. Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Thank you. Hopefully we'll be able to get as much participation as we can. So the next item on our agenda is to discuss an act on the consent agenda, and before we introduce it, I did want to invite any members of the council to speak on any items on the consent agenda they wanted to draw particular attention to. Rob, please, go ahead.
I, I would say notwithstanding the rule that we just approved, um, I, I would propose, I see that we have Robin Gardner in attendance tonight, and, um, Ms. Gardner's letter regarding the tree is on the agenda. Again, it was on last month as well. And I think there was, there was some confusion in terms of, um, her opportunity to speak, so I, I would like to pull that one out and give Ms. Gardner an opportunity to speak.
Okay. So that's actually Rule Nine A. I'm sorry, eighteen, what is it? A.
On the, are, are you looking on the consent agenda?
No, I'm looking at Rule Nine B. So I'm going to take your, uh, your request as a motion to suspend Rule Nine A and allow, uh, discretion to the president to extend beyond the three minutes for particular agenda items.
Although, although, Mr. Carroll, if I can clarify where I, where I was going, um, rather than just making the comment at the beginning of the, the consent agenda to recognize that item, um, I, I propose we follow that, at least for that one item, um, the old practice that we had where we would pull that matter off and give that member of the public an opportunity to speak on her letter, if that makes sense.
Okay, sure. Great. Um, so I will start with, um, the comment that I would like to make. Um, we, we got a letter uh, of thanks from a family, uh, that had been in crisis. Uh, it was to our police department, Sergeant Ferreira, Officers Elward, Gregorzek, Wierostek. Uh, they were able to diffuse a really potentially violent and volatile situation involving a severely impaired person. Um, the, the family of this person wrote to thank the police, noted that the police withstood an abusive verbal barrage, and were able to calmly persuade this individual to accept a town ambulance for transportation. And the family was grateful for the high level of compassion and understanding the officers showed. I just highlight that because this is uh, one of many examples that we see of the high degree of professionalism and the outstanding training of our officers. And I wanted to point out that their actions reflect well on the department as a whole, so, so thank you, officers, and thank you, chief. Uh, does anyone have anything else they want to highlight about the consent agenda? Yes, Jacob, please.
I wanted to, um, pull something from the consent agenda for a separate vote. Uh, doesn't need discussion, just a separate vote.
Okay, so, um,
Are we going to do that after the highlights?
Yes, that's, that's, that's
Then I'm all set.
Okay. Uh, seeing no one else, um, we will move on. The consent agenda for folks who are watching is a series of items that are usually non-controversial that we vote as a group. Um, and they will typically be enacted as one motion. There won't be a separate discussion on these items unless a council member or a citizen so requests, and the request is for good cause, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Uh, so, having said that, is there, uh, we, we have already identified, um, the Town Tree, which is item eleven. This is the, um, acknowledged correspondence item. That was Vice President Hum. Counselor Breyer, you wanted to remove something for a separate vote?
Yes, the reappointments.
That's item six. Any other member of the council want to remove anything from the consent agenda for separate discussion? Any members of the public? Ms. Gardner, we will get to yours in just a moment. Uh, not seeing any hands. Do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented, with the exception of item six and item eleven?
So moved.
So moved.
Um, the, uh, motion is made by Counselor Castell and seconded by Vice President Hum. Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
So, yeah, I, I missed, is this the full consent agenda?
No, no, with the exception of item six, which is removed, and item eleven.
Aye.
Uh, Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Okay, so we have removed item six, uh, reappointments, boards and commissions. Did you want to say anything on that? Counselor Breyer?
No.
Okay. Uh, Vice Pres, uh, do I hear a motion to approve the reappointments to boards and commissions?
So moved.
Uh, Vice President Hum is seconded by Counselor Castell. Vice President, any further discussion? Okay. Uh, Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Uh, Counselor Breyer?
Abstain.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Next item is acknowledged correspondence, and that's the Town Tree. Um, Ms. Gardner wanted to, uh, has, has, um, uh, sent us a letter about this Town Tree. Um, Ms. Gardner, uh, do you want to be heard on this? I'm not seeing a hand raised.
Excuse me, Mike, I'm wondering if it's because she is not pulled over from the attendees list.
Her hand is raised now.
Okay, her hand is raised. Uh, do you see her, Jim, on the hand raised? Then can you unmute her?
Yep, he's going to do it.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. It's a little, uh, little bit of feedback, but we can hear you.
Okay, how about now? Better?
Yep.
Okay. I just want to let you guys know that I have been in Barrington for sixty years. My family has been here since the nineteen forties. I'm going to shut my phone off. Hold on a second. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, much better.
Okay, awesome. Alright, so all I want to say is that I have seen such a big change in Barrington, and what I mean by that is the cutting of the trees. Now, I know that a lot of trees have disease. I know we've lost a lot of trees because of the storms. But what I'm trying to get at here is that people are taking advantage of this. There, then, and what bothers me the most is that we had a tree cut down right across the street from my house. Mind you, years ago, we used to have trees that had, there was like a canopy all the way down the road. It was so beautiful. I cannot believe how people are cutting the trees down and not having any remorse about it. They're, they're mad because of the leaves, or it makes a mess, or the acorns. Well, you know, I'm sorry that that's the problem with some of the neighbors, but for the town to allow that tree, seventy-five-year-old beautiful oak tree, not split, not diseased, and matter of fact, in the, um, let me find it here. There's a couple of things here. For the, for the purpose and intent, okay, of cutting a tree, it has to have some kind of disease, um, it has, wait, I got some more here. I, I'm just, I'm so upset that they, because the neighbor says, oh, we're taking down this tree, and I said, but why would you want to do something like that? Well, I'm sick of the leaves and the acorns. That tree's been there for seventy-five years. Yeah, if we were all sick of the leaves and the acorns, we'd be cutting trees down all the time. So the, the town, I called the town after I came home, working sixteen hours, came home and saw the tree cut up. I thought the guy was lying. I thought the guy was just kidding me. No, it was a town tree, and he was able to cut it down because he told me he was sick of the leaves. And the public works said he could cut it down if he would pay for it. That is totally ridiculous. Now, I can see that we've been losing trees because of the storms, and they're sick and everything else, but to cut a healthy old oak tree, seventy-five years old, that is ridiculous. And Alan let him cut it down because he had the money. So then I went and checked. There was no permit required. Mind you, it wasn't a company that cut down that tree. Um, there was not one permit that was taken out for that tree. Um, and then the tree commission. The biggest thing is to preserve our trees, our healthy trees, because it helps with the, when, when we want to sell our house, the tree helps with the, um, you know, with the value of the land and the house and the town, and so on and so forth. I mean, I found so many things here that goes against what he did, what they did. Public Works let this guy cut the tree down. So I called them, and I said, why did you let this tree get cut down? Well, we weren't sure if it was on his property or if it was on the town property. BS. Because it was a town tree. They come down, they, they prune it, they clean it. Uh, it's a town tree. And then when I went and looked at the report
Ms. Gardner, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we do have a very long agenda.
Well, this means a lot to me, is all I'm trying to say, okay? And I don't see why this happened. A seventy-five-year-old tree, healthy, was cut down because the resident wanted it cut because he was sick of the leaves. And the town, um, the public works, cut it down. Let him cut, let him cut it down. And they were lying to me, saying they weren't sure if it was on his land or if it was on the city's land.
Okay.
That's, that's wrong.
Thank you very much. Um, now, do I hear a motion to accept the correspondence as presented? To acknowledge correspondence as presented?
Yeah, I, I want to thank Ms. Gardner for raising this, and so moved.
Seconded.
Seconded.
Uh, Vice President Hum makes the motion, seconded by Counselor Castell. Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The motion carries. Okay, thank you. Um, next item on our agenda is to discuss an act on interviews and appointments, and the first one is for Juvenile Hearing Board. Uh, this is for a first alternate, alternate with a term end date of one thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. And I would ask if we could unmute Ms. Susan Fink. I saw her here. Oh, yes, Vice President Hum.
Uh, and, uh, thank you, Mr. Carroll, and I apologize. I, I need to recuse from the juvenile hearing board appointment. Uh, my wife is a member of the juvenile hearing board. Um, I, I have the recusal form prepared, and I realized just moments before the meeting, I haven't passed it along, so I'll do so promptly after the meeting, but I just wanted to note that before we begin.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so Vice President Hum is recusing, but, um, we are looking for Ms. Fink, Susan Fink. There she is. I think you're unmuted, ma'am. Uh, not yet. Can we, can we try to unmute her? Jim? Can we unmute her, or we're not able to?
I, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Who would you like me to unmute?
Oh, Susan Fink. She's got her hand raised.
There you go, sorry.
Ms. Fink, uh, can you tell us a little about yourself and what you hope to bring to the juvenile hearing board, please?
Certainly. Um, and thank you for making the time for this this evening. Um, I have been a lawyer involved with DCYF and the Child Welfare System of this state for the past, um, thirty-two out of my thirty-four years, I would say, of, of practice. Um, and I did do a lot of juvenile, uh, defense work, as well as guardian and litem work. I think that those experiences would bear, uh, useful, would be useful to the board in making, you know, fair and just decisions for our kids. Um, and also frankly, as a, a longtime resident and mom of, um, three young, uh, one younger adult and two older ones, they're pushing forty, um, you know, I'm aware of a lot of the pressures and, um, issues that kids in our town face. So I think that, um, my also willingness and having time to do this at this juncture, uh, although I, I am still practicing full-time, um, I would like to contribute to the town. I've, in the past, I've been on the Harvard Association Board. I was on the Temple Habonim Board for, for many years. And, um, I'd like to direct my energies along with my expertise to the juvenile board if, if they'll have me.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Any questions from the council? Okay. Thank you for your willingness to serve. We will be voting in just a moment.
Thank you very much.
Uh, the, the next name is, uh, Melanie Fletcher, but Ms. Fletcher, uh, earlier this evening withdrew her, uh, application. Uh, so the next name is Arlene McCauley. Uh, can we unmute Ms. McCauley? I think you can unmute yourself there. Great.
Okay, I, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Um, please, tell us a little about yourself and what, uh, you hope to bring to the juvenile hearing board.
Great, thank you. Um, well, um, thank you very much for allowing me this opportunity, and I, I have to say, I echo, um, Susan Fink's And I, I have to say, I echo, um, Susan Fink's, um, uh, um, mention of all of the things that are important to her, I think will obviously be important to me. I'm a mother of three. I raise my kids here. And I, I think I have a really good feel for the community and for the education system. I worked, you know, I'm, I'm tremendously concerned about the youth. Um, not only in this community, but in this country. I think that these are incredibly trying times, which we all know. Um, I believe in behavior change. I really think that kids given, uh, an opportunity, um, a sort of a meeting of the minds, a junction, a way to look towards a, a, a new way of, of doing things and find a new sense of direction for themselves, will be able with some help, um, and some compassion and motivation from people who, who, let's say, serve on the juvenile hearing board, will be able to provide. My background is clinical. Um, I, I have a, um, a clinical psychology degree, and I think I'm kind of uniquely poised because I worked for many years as the, uh, as a health educator at Brown University. And I counseled kids and I saw families. I also worked part-time at RISD. So I had this unique opportunity to see these really elite students and, uh, creative students.
I'm moving, I can have three hundred.
I'm sorry, and, um, and, and, and to sort of be able to deal and make, uh, with those kinds of people. And then my next fifteen years was as a student assistance counselor in Bristol, Rhode, Bristol, Rhode Island, Bristol Warren Regional School District. And I dealt with all sorts of kids there with substance use and abuse, and I dealt with their disciplinary actions. So I do feel that this is, uh, you know, I want to have an impact. I, I'd like to bring my clinical skills, my understanding, and most of all, my firm belief in, in the ability for these kids to change and find a moment where they can soar. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, any questions from the council? Okay. Thank you, Ms. McCauley, for your willingness to-
You're welcome. Thank you.
Sure, um, uh, I should take that to McCauley. Um, so, um, our next candidate is our former colleague Kate Waymoth, but she has withdrawn her application as well. So we are left with two, really, all four applicants have very strong resumes. And as is often the case in, in Barrington, we're fortunate to have so many qualified people applying for these, these positions. Um, and although both of the candidates who we heard from today are outstanding with great experience and would no doubt be excellent additions, I, I'm gonna make a motion to appoint- Counselor Breyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Castell? I also vote aye. Uh, so that, the motion carries with one recusal. Um, Ms. McCauley, congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Fink, I know you've served on our boards before, but, um, now that you've reminded us that you are available, you may be getting calls to serve on other boards. So, uh, thank you very much for your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if I could interrupt, the Zoom, uh, will allow me to have three hundred panelists and only one hundred attendees as it's currently set up, and I couldn't get them to change it. So what I've done is move people from, uh, attendees as, into panelists to allow room for attendees. So right now, we got room for eighteen more attendees, and I'll keep moving people over as necessary. That way, everyone should be able to participate.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next, the next one is vacancy for First Alternate with a term end date twelve thirty-one twenty-three for Parks and Recreation and Mr. Joseph Merrill. Mr. Merrill, are you? Can you raise your hand, please, sir, if you're here? There he is. Jim, can you unmute Mr. Merrill, please?
All right. I'm gonna call Kate.
Can we, um-
There we go.
Can everyone else please mute? Thanks. Mr. Merrill, thank you very much for, for joining us tonight. And, uh, can you tell us a little about yourself and what you hope to bring to Parks and Recreation?
Sure, thank you. Um, I'm actually fairly new to Barrington. I moved here in September. Um, I've spent a lot of time in Texas, Ohio, and most recently, South Carolina. I've, uh, been involved on many different kind of boards, uh, residential reda-, uh, design review commissions, I've been in park commissions, um, uh, and various other boards, um. So being so new to Barrington, I thought this would be like a perfect opportunity to get involved and learn more about it.
Okay. Uh, thank you very much. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Merrill? Okay, seen uncertain, uh, thank you for your willingness to serve. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Joseph Merrill to the Parks and Rec Commission, uh, Parks and Rec Committee as First Alternate to fill a term ending December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-three.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Made by Counselor Breyer, seconded by Vice President Humm. Uh, Vice President Humm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. So the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Merrill, for your willingness to serve and, um, you'll be getting an email about the Parks and Rec Commission. Um, next item on our agenda is public comment. Now, this is a three-minute statement for members of the public to speak on a topic that is not already on the agenda. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand. When you're recognized, please state your name and your residency, uh, for the, uh, for the record. Before we address that, I've gotten a couple of emails. And I just want to, uh, if, if we can sort of send the word out that there is room in the meeting. Uh, oh, now we're up to a hundred and twenty-five total participants. So we've got fourteen rooms, fourteen, uh, spaces for attendees, and we'll increase that as needed. So if you can just tell folks, um, uh, to just try again, and they should be able to join us. And I see, uh, two hands, um, Mariana. Could you please unmute Mariana, please?
Thank you. Do I need to lower my hand now?
Yes, please.
Okay, perfect. So I just want to make a quick comment regarding, um, what happened this past week with our neighbor Candace. I think the entire town is aware of it. And especially now being Black History Month, that I would like to see the town, the town council, to make an effort to really come to, to Candace in a way that is supportive, that is recognizing the pain that she suffered, and that let her know that you guys are listening and that, you know, the help is welcome and that her pain is real. And that as a council, it's your role to lead this community by example, to set the premises based on our morals and our values of what we want Barrington to be, and not simply by policies. Policies are flawed. Our values and our morals as residents of Barrington as people cannot be flawed. And I don't know if you, I don't know if, if the town council has already reached out to her in some way or made it some kind of public statement. But I would like to see that happen. And I think that by us not being accountable with the small stuff, and I'll give the example of the complaint of the harassment complaint and nothing coming out of that, and we still not having an apology. I truly believe that these small behaviors, when we should all be on the same page, really opens up for people who are on the opposite end, who are extremely racist, fit, with, support fascism, um, and the same terrorism. It gives them the message that if we cannot come up with resolutions and be accountable with each other when we are on the same side, it gives them the, the, the emboldens them to take such actions as we saw with the hate mail. Because they know that nothing's gonna happen. Because if we cannot do things among ourselves, how are you gonna really take them serious? How are you gonna do something to protect others for something more aggressive and more violent? So I would like to again, still, ask that, you know, a simple apology to demonstrate as a leadership that we are accountable, we hold each other accountable. And those things really matter. The small-
You have thirty seconds?
Thank you, Jim. The small actions do set us an example to the bigger actions. So let's not allow for some, for that hate crime to ever happen again, to the best of our abilities. And I ask that to come from the leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Paul Dolcino has his hand raised.
Uh, actually, President Carroll, Laura Young, who was a panelist, uh, was moved over to the panelist. She had her hand up first.
Okay. Um, Ms. Young, please, go ahead.
She should be able to unmute herself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Laura Young, Fourteen Manor Road. I just wanted, I really have more of a question, and this is related to the, um, to the vaccination, um, effort that we've been making. I have, uh, received a number of calls, um, because I'm a part of the Barrington Village, from, uh, seniors who don't have email or use email, quite anxious about the, um, inability to get through. Um, and so I have a question really is, what is the plan for those seniors in town who cannot use email to sign up for their vaccination appointments?
Uh, I will, I'll ask Jim to, to answer that question just a minute. I would, uh, point out that we did not expect to be, uh, receiving the, uh, vaccination in this way. That is, we train, we have our, our, uh, fire department trained on vaccinating the whole town. That is, getting enough vaccine for the whole town and not, uh, getting just a, a short group of, of vaccines. We weren't given any guidance on that, but since then, um, Jim and his team have developed our own guidance, uh, in the absence of, uh, sort of federal guidance on how to do this. And among the things they're doing is, is creating a list using telephone number. So Jim, please, go ahead.
Thank you, President Carroll. Um, over the weekend, we developed a, uh, a site that, uh, people can go to, a database where they can sign up. We'll collect their name, their address, their phone number, their age. And as vaccinations become available, um, we will start, and I, I confirm this with Doc Alexander Scott, um, we'll start with the oldest people in town and work our way down through the seventy-five-year-old and over. Um, so the first vaccines will be April seventeenth. So once we get confirmation that they're coming in, we'll start contacting people and making those assignments. So people encouraged to, if they don't have a computer, they can call the, uh, they can call the senior center, um, or they can go online and hit the link on the announcement, and it will take them directly to the database, and they can put their information and basically go on, on the list.
I, thank you, and I appreciate that response. What we're running into is that the senior center phone is busy, and people are unable to get through. So they're anxious and frustrated, and they're reaching our number. And I just wondered, are there other numbers or alternatives? I've been emailing the information. Um, I just want to make sure that the seniors who need to use a phone have a way to get through.
We have, we have three phones there, uh, people answering the phones during the workday. And, um, hopefully, with the new people being able to log on and do it online, that, that'll free up the phones. You could call in the, or if someone has all the information, they could call in all of the information, and we could, uh, give that to them. Um, you can try my office, for example, and we can take that information down and put it in the database.
Great, I appreciate all your help, all your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I want to be clear, uh, Jim mentioned April seventeenth, that is a date-
I'm sorry, February seventeenth, President Carroll.
Uh, the February seventeenth is a date that we've been given. Uh, uh, anything could happen, uh, that date could be pushed out. Or it's certainly possible we could get, um, you know, another limited supply of doses. Uh, so I would encourage people who can get online to sign up. You can go to our website, and you should be able to see that. And, uh, those who cannot get online to call in. And I, I hope that now that we've set up the website to do that, uh, we'll have more, um, uh, more availability on those phones. Jim, I note that we're at a hundred attendees again, if you can start to move folks over again. Okay. I know that Paul Dolcino's had his, uh, hand up, but were there others who wanted to speak? Uh, could you ask Paul to raise, uh, to unmute himself? Colonel?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thanks.
Okay. Uh, yeah, I had a bit of a concern, I noticed in the correspondence section, um, there was an email and screen capture submitted. Uh, I would like it stricken from the public record as it makes a slanderous accusation referring to myself and the Barrington U B C are somehow racist, uh, because of, we expressed a difference of opinion on Facebook page. I don't, this is the appropriate forum or venue for this type of commentary to be placed uh, into the public record in, in a town council meeting. And I, in addition to that, I feel obligated because that, that I would request an additional three minutes of commentary to clear my name, where I can speak to my background, experience, and show my commitment, uh, to diversity, equality, uh, and inclusion, uh, as well. So I don't know what the protocol is that, but I am concerned, uh, with, with what has been submitted, uh, prior to this agenda.
So, uh, if, just to sort of pause, uh, Paul's time, I, I can answer his question. We have certain rules that we have to follow when, uh, letters come in or emails come in to the staff. Uh, it is my understanding that if they come in to the town council, uh, excuse me, to the, the municipal government, then we don't, that we don't have discretion. But I certainly can look into that, and we could raise that at another meeting. Now, you can take this opportunity, Paul, and, um, you know, you will have more opportunities, um, to, uh, to, to address this issue. So please, go ahead.
Okay, uh, I'll go ahead and, uh, just give everyone a little bit of background about myself. I've always been proud to serve my country and community alike. Uh, I, uh, enlisted in the military in nineteen eighty-two, and what became a twenty-six-year, uh, career in the army. During the Cold War, I served in Germany, uh, to stop the spread of communism. And I was there and celebrated when the Berlin Wall fell. In nineteen ninety, I deployed to the First Gulf War to liberate Kuwait. During my entire career in the military, I served alongside men, women of all creeds, religions, and sexual orientations. And collectively, we shared a common goal, mission accomplishment. I commanded a unit, uh, during the Don't Ask, Don't Tell years, and prosecuted those that did not treat up with dignity and respect, to include a soldier who harassed another based on their sexual orientation. In my best assignment as a professor of military science, I recruited awarded college, college scholarship to young men and women of all backgrounds, and increased the diversity of my program by over three hundred percent. My family has lived in this town for over fourteen years, been involved in the P T O, the Planning Board, the university, uh, the, uh, United Veterans Council, the Charter Commission, and even worked the polls. Our desire has always been to fully assimilate into Barrington, not to disrupt or transform it. My wife is a naturalized citizen from Honduras. We've raised two kids in this town in a bilingual household. Now, in the last fourteen years, have we experienced anything that would suggest Barrington is racist or that its schools or government promoted systemic racism? Instead, my family has thrived and grown, and we're proud to announce in two weeks, my daughter will be off to MIT. Uh, when I was on the planning board back in two thousand and fourteen, I developed a plan to capture existing owner-occupied affordable housing through a block grant repair renovation program. It was designed to help our towns' medias while ensuring affordable neighborhoods were preserved. If the town truly deserves to be more inclusive, they should start adopting similar programs because actions- because actions, deeds, and results matter, not words, slogans, or banners. My greatest privilege has been to have served in our nation's military, one of the hardest duties that I've had to perform, that of a casualty assistance-
Paul, you have thirty seconds.
All right, I'm almost done. One of my hardest, in that duty, I had to receive the body of a young black soldier who'd been killed on active duty. He was only eighteen years old, and for the next five days, my sole responsibility was to care for his family. I assisted in processing death benefits, life insurance payouts, and ensured he received full military honors. It was an incredible lesson in humility and made me proud to be part of an organization that took care of its own regardless of rank or social status. This commitment to my fellow soldiers has never left me, and so that is why, when my fellow veterans asked me to represent them in this policy debate on the flag, I could not turn them down. Thank you for giving the time to clear my name.
Thank you, Paul. I see Wafa Fraj, I don't know if anyone had, from the panelist's side, had, if you could unmute Wafa? There you go, please.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, please.
Yes, I do agree with Mariana's point about the incident that happened to Candace Breen and her family, and I do actually request that the town manager and the town council to issue a statement tonight to announce this hate crime in the town, because this behavior is gonna continue, and it is continuing online and in our neighborhoods, everywhere in town, unless we have to stop it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the panelist's side? I don't want-
I don't see anyone with their hand raised on the panel.
Lisa Lowenstein, please.
I'd just like to go back to the subject of the vaccinations. We're a pretty small town, and we all know who amongst our neighbors is an elderly person. I've been reaching out to my mother's generation and to her friends, and just asking them if they need help with the registration online. It's really the most efficient thing. If we each thought of all the elderly people we know and reach out, it's a fast way, and it's very clear. You then can print the confirmation off, put it in an envelope, leave it in their mailbox, and we really can get a bigger penetration. I tried getting a vaccination appointment for my mom by calling and calling, and had the same experience. And working online, it works smoothly and perfectly. So that's my recommendation, get the word out, and let's take care of our older neighbors.
Thank you very much, that's, that's a great idea. Patty, I don't see her last name, but Patty would like to be heard.
Patty's on, can unmute herself.
Patty, can you, you can speak.
Patty is unmuted.
Hello?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Yeah, hi, my name is Patty Deal, and I had a couple of questions which I did submit, and I would like some answers. One of them is, you've answered something about not getting the information, or you got it two weeks early, and you have to train the fire department, but why are we behind Bristol and Warren? I have a friend, I have a couple of friends that are getting their vaccines today in Is there an answer to that?
There is an answer. We're currently all using the same regional med pod site in Bristol, and so they allocated them by town, and that's why, where we happen to be Wednesday.
We, we are behind other people?
We were originally scheduled for today, and everyone today was rescheduled for Wednesday because of the snowstorm.
Okay. So they, because my friend just called the, the fire department in Warren and got on the list on Friday. That's what they did. I just wondered why, you know, what happened there? And also, when are we going to get notified about our appointment time or date?
So the people that were able, the forty-seven people who were able to register on last week, will receive their inoculations on Wednesday. They were supposed to receive them today. The next scheduled inoculations are on February seventeenth, Wednesday, February seventeen. We are told by the state that we will receive a hundred and ten doses.
Yep.
Well, a week or so before then, assuming things haven't changed, and things are changing all the time, but if things stay static, then we will contact a hundred and ten of the oldest people, the oldest people on the current database, and try and assign them appointments for their first dose.
Well, I thought that was a great idea. I think nineties, and then eighties and seventies.
But we only have a hundred and ten, so if you're over a hundred, you're guaranteed, and we'll go as far as we can and fill up those hundred and ten, and for the next four weeks following, or the next three weeks following that, we'll do the same thing with a hundred and ten as it's currently forecast. Hopefully, we'll have some more to give.
And where will the location be that we'll be getting this shot?
Currently, it's in Bristol. We are trying to get the Department of Health to authorize us to open up our own med pod site here. Typically, it's used for mass inoculations, so we would use the high school. That isn't practical with this number of doses, nor is it practical for the high school. So we are looking at the senior center right now, the Adult and Richment Center, as the location for our mini med pod to administer these doses.
Okay. No consideration about the center, where they're now having the testing? Would he donate that?
The senior center would be much more appropriate. The center where they're testing right now is under renovations, it's very stocked. The senior center's just been renovated, it's a more appropriate place.
Okay, all right. I think that's all, I'm just, I just wondered why we were late, and I think you've explained it.
Great, thank you, Ms. Deal. I should also point out that the health department limits what we can do, and in this case, we would really rather be distributing doses to Barringtonian in Barrington. That's not being permitted. We're also seeking permission to allow our fire department, in fact, our fire department requested the ability to go to the homes of homebound seniors to deliver the vaccine in person, but we're gonna need special permission for that, and we're working on that as well.
Well, I'm certainly, I'm a senior, but I, I drive, I'm certainly sure a lot of seniors would volunteer to, to pick up people and drive them, so there could be a list circulated for that.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Sandy Stamos.
Thank you for taking my question. Patty has addressed many of the issues. First, I congratulate you after being dumped by the state a problem last week, and while I can Monday morning quarterback and say you really should have thought more about how those doses were given, I'm pleased that there is a procedure going forward, and I congratulate you for that. But I guess my concern is, how about folks, I mean, we're clear about folks being able to call in and to, you know, email. I am really concerned, as a past healthcare person, there are people that may not be noticed in their community. Isn't there a way that there's a registry of people by age known to the town, that a day or two of volunteers, such as Patty and myself, could sit down and call and make sure each person has been notified that's on our voter rolls, tax rolls, each person has been, made sure that there's a ride and somebody to accompany them to get their vaccine? I'm really concerned about somebody falling through the cracks. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Jim?
And if, yeah, I could address that, the senior center staff, as soon as they get done answering calls, will start making those phone calls to people.
But who, once they have the, they'll have a master list to be able to see who has not, I mean, I'm not concerned about the people calling you, I'm concerned about people who are blind, who are living alone, who don't have the wherewithal to contact you.
The state has a special needs emergency list. Those people are being contacted, as we speak, by our fire department, to see if they are interested in receiving the next set of inoculations. Besides that, if people are on that list, we're certainly reaching out to the people in the senior center that, that frequent the senior center when it was open, and we check on them on a regular basis anyway. So we're doing everything we can, and I think it'd be great if the community could come together and go knock on their neighbor's door if they know they have a elderly neighbor and mention to them, you know, to get online or to call.
But I think, I think it behooves us to make sure we contact everybody.
We're doing our best.
Yep, thanks so much.
Thank you. Allison Hayward is one of the panelists, if she can unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, yeah, I just, I just joined in. Thank you for, you know, what you're doing to try to help ensure the safety of our older residents and getting their vaccinations. I'm an emergency physician who lives in town, and just wanted to say that, you know, whenever possible, it's important for us to consider not having people kind of get together in person, as I know that there was a registration where people were required to come in person to the town hall to show an ID, and I think that if we can avoid people having to go in person to a place where they might come into contact with others, then that's, that would be more ideal. And also, like, if, you know, people are going to be giving rides to others, that's a potential place where they can also be exposed, and they would have to have appropriate PPE to be able to do that safely.
President Carroll, the, once people are selected for a vaccine, they need to be put into the CDC database, and that takes, we had three firefighters in here on Friday doing those registrations. That has to be done in person to validate age and address, and to get some personal information, some of it HIPAA information, and therefore, it's done in person. But we took precautions to make sure everyone was socially distanced and appropriately masked during that situation. And also, we'll take temperatures to make sure that no one's coming in sick.
Uh, thank you, thank you very much. That looks like it was it for the raised hands. Again, oh, there's one in the attendees, let's see. Mariana, we're only gonna have folks speak once per time during this portion of the meeting, because we do have a lot to get through. We could certainly address items at later meetings. Again, I would ask you to encourage people who, you know, who might have tried to get in to, to try again. There is a little bit of room, and Jim is continuing to move folks over, so that we can free up some space. But I've just answered an email from someone who was trying to get on. So that, that is the public comment. The next item on our agenda is to discuss an act and a proposal for a smoke-free ordinance. I received an email this evening, and it was a little, I wasn't exactly certain, but it sounded like the person who was asking for us to consider this was not interested in pursuing it tonight, but would like to do it at a later time. If you would like to have discussion tonight, Ms. Burke, please raise your hand, and we're happy to discuss it. Jim, could you unmute Ms. Burke, please?
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
I was not prepared to discuss this tonight, and I would like to, if it's possible, propose this for a different agenda, for a different date, and prepare with a more concise statement for the proposal.
Andy Tights, do I need to do a motion to continue this, or can we just put it, this is not a public hearing?
No, but it is an agenda item, so we usually like to have a motion just so we can track it, if you want to continue it. Basically, well, two things. You could table it, and then that would allow this person to come back whenever they want, or you could continue it to a specific meeting.
Yeah, so before I make a motion to table it, Council Brier, did you want to say something?
So I, I had noticed in the town manager's memo that he was advising a recommendation, should, should the council want to, to ask the solicitor's office to come up with an appropriate ordinance. I was wondering if it might be possible to suggest that Adrian Burke maybe have a conversation with the solicitor's office and see if they could come up with something that meets what she is looking for and is in line with what the solicitor's office thinks would be appropriate for us to consider, just to potentially save time.
You can certainly, you can make that motion. My own view is that I think we should hear from the council before we ask the solicitor to draft an ordinance, and I'm not, I don't know what the interest is in, in an ordinance of this kind, and that's the reason why I wanted to have, hear from the council and allow Ms. Burke to make her pitch for the ordinance, and then we could then ask, but if you want to make that motion, that you can certainly do that.
No, that, that makes sense.
Okay. Vice President Hahn?
Thank you, and actually, may I ask a question of Ms. Burke, to see whether she thinks she would be prepared for our meeting next month, and that might play into whether we continue it to next month, or whether we table it until we can have further discussions with her.
Ms. Burke, are you still there? Looks like you are. Ms. Burke, did you, did you want to have this heard on March one, or would you prefer to see if you, you know, to, to tell us when you'd like to have it heard, something to do that?
Thank you, yes. I was interested to work with a town solicitor as well, to come up with some kind of a concise statement. So the reason for my, my delay here, honestly, was that I was doing a lot of outreach to make that, you know, effort to have the communication with the town solicitor. So I think it depends on if you feel that that is a good idea for me to pursue, and then once the town solicitor and I feel like we have some clarity as to a proposal to be made or not be made, then we could schedule the agenda, or we can request for an agenda item. Does that work?
Yeah, so that's, what we normally do is, if, if, if the source of the ordinance is from within the council, we do, we do ask the solicitor to draft that. But I think at this stage, what you're asking is for an ordinance, and if you can lay out what you think it ought to say, at that point, we can talk about it as a council, and then determine if we'd like to ask our solicitor to draft an ordinance. We can't just ask him to draft, what we're trying not to do is to ask him to draft ordinances that there's not enough support for on the council, because that's expensive, and we're trying to be cautious with our money.
Thank you. Yep, yes, I understand, and I should be ready for March agenda item, if it's possible to delay.
Okay.
And I will make the presentation at that time, as being suggested, and provide a more concise statement.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to continue this matter to the March one hearing? Seconded by Counselor Castell. Made and seconded, any further discussion? Vice President Hahn, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Brier?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. So Ms. Burke, this will be on for March one.
Thank you, and good night.
Thank you, just making a note of that. Next item on the agenda is to discuss an act on the proposed Seconk asphalt plant. We've all gotten a lot of emails, and there's been a lot of concern about this. I would say, just to kind of set expectations for tonight, it's pretty early days for us. it's pretty early days for us. We, we as a council, I've actually asked our solicitors to examine our legal options. Because I would be surprised if there was a member of the council who was in favor of an asphalt plant on the border of Barrington. I made the assumption that we would all want to protect the health, safety and property values of Barringtonians. So we're looking into that, the legal options. I can tell you, just not as an expert, but as a lawyer, it's a tough hill to climb when you are not in the same state, but maybe there will be legal options. I don't think that there is, that is the only option. And there are certainly a lot of folks who are organizing around this. And I would very much encourage them to do so, to work with our neighbors in Rehoboth and Swansea and Secconk who may also be affected by this. But we will see what we can do. And among the things that we're doing is speaking with our representatives to the General Assembly. Our senator and our two reps are already working on this, working with our attorney general and working with the EM. They may also be reaching out to their colleagues in Massachusetts who are in those areas as well. But I wanted to give the opportunity to any member of the council to address this. You know, my end game is to inform folks about an upcoming planning board meeting which we can attend by Zoom that's taking place in Secconk over this. And also to let folks know what we were doing with the idea that we're going to try to, try to address this more fully at our March meeting and encourage folks to, to do what they can as citizens to join with their neighbors. What is the date? Does anyone on the council remember the date of that planning board? Rob?
I believe the Secconk Planning Board might have already heard and approved it. I think it's the Secconk Conservation Commission. And I believe it's either, someone can correct me, but it's either February 5th or 8th. I think perhaps the 8th.
Okay, I'll see if we can.
This is Andy Tights. Yes, it is. The Secconk Planning Board, A, has already dealt with it and B, is only conducting site plan review. Most people in Rhode Island are confused because it's very different. In Massachusetts, a lot of the wetland permitting, in fact, pretty much all the wetland permitting that is done by Rhode Island DEM. In Massachusetts, that's done by the local town conservation commission. So we're in Barrington, a conservation commission meeting would just be advisory to someone. In Secconk, this conservation commission will be considering the environmental permits, the wetland filling permits that are being applied for. So that will be a very important meeting. And I'm just looking here to try to see. The conservation commission will hold a public hearing on February 8. And apparently, they haven't yet released the Zoom info for it. So you're going to have to keep checking the Secconk website, which by the way is www.cconk-ma.gov. And so if you check that, you can, they should be posting that before the February 8 meeting.
There is a panelist, Emery Cardosi, who would like to be heard. Can we unmute Ms. Cardosi? Please go ahead.
Hi, my name's Emery Cardosi and I appreciate you giving me a moment. I am not a resident of Barrington. I am an abutting property owner in Secconk. And the reason I've been asked to speak for my group is I've gotten the group together that includes so many of your Barrington residents because of the impact of this. And before I go any further, I did want to, I didn't know if you realized, there also has been an invitation extended by our Board of Selectmen. And their meeting is this coming Wednesday at 7 o'clock. It is a Zoom meeting. And this will be a topic. They are planning on having planning there. They're planning on, they have invited Conservation Commission and our Board of Health. But they think it would be a good time to get some information out and reach out to the other communities, both in Massachusetts and in Rhode Island that will be most affected by this. The very definite thing we know is that when these plants go up, there is a high impact in the diameter, in a radius of two to three miles, which is going to include two of your elementary schools. We also have an elementary school in that, in Secconk, and there's a daycare right on Warren Avenue in Secconk. So it's very high impact. Our wetlands connect to 100 Acre Cove. It's an open wetlands. These considerations are serious. The wildlife is big. But the quality of life would truly be compromised for anyone in that area. Health changes will happen within six months of them starting. And so it's real. And the health things aren't just bothersome things. It starts with simple things like maybe, you know, asthma or allergies, sinus things. But, you know, the other things that have been proven with these toxins, childhood leukemias definitely increase in these areas. Immunocompromised people really do suffer. And people that have never had any immunocompromised disease start developing them. It is a very, very serious physiological and emotional impact, you know, on the environment and on the people in the areas. So our Board of Selectmen is taking this quite seriously and definitely is looking to, you know, kind of see if you could all maybe work together. We are challenged. It's two states and it's four towns. That is real tricky stuff with what we're dealing with. The rules are different. So we are available, the group of us, you know, anytime if anyone has questions, you are always welcome to reach us. But again, I know you're pressed for time and I'm sure there are residents that have things to say. But I just wanted to give you a little overview. This is going to be within 300 feet of our property perimeter. And this is a very serious thing. But as soon as I got the letter, I knew it wasn't about one household or six of us that are abutting. This is a much, much bigger issue. And I thank you. I really appreciate your time and your consideration and look forward to working with you moving forward.
I just had a question for Emery Cardosi. The Board of Selectmen meeting that is on Wednesday, do you know if they post videos of those afterward that we'll be able to watch? Because we have a meeting this Wednesday night that overlaps.
I can find out tomorrow morning and I can get that information to you. I know a number of the people on our committee, you know, know how to get in touch with all of you. So I will get that information first thing tomorrow and get it out to you.
Thank you.
And Ms. Cardosi, if I can ask you to reach out to the council and give us the contact information so that we can kind of spread that.
We can do that. Definitely. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Hahn, yes.
Thank you. Sorry for turning on the mute button. Yeah, one of the, I guess, one question I was going to raise in terms of whether we have authority to do so is, you know, some sort of, and I mentioned this because it's on to discuss and act, whether we would be able to propose a resolution for now indicating that we have initial concerns, but certainly we don't have all the facts. So, you know, I agree with your assumption, Mr. Carroll, that you raised at the outset. But, you know, we don't have all the facts, so I think that that would be helpful. But a resolution to reach out perhaps to the Board of Selectmen and the Conservation Commission and then copy some others that I'll mention, essentially requesting that, you know, while they're free to do whatever they want, you know, requesting as an abutting town not to vote on the matter on the February 8 meeting so that the abutting towns and other stakeholders have further opportunity to look into this matter and make an educated opinion on it. And I think, just based on some of the anecdotal comments that I've seen and heard, it might be helpful if we copy or send a copy of that resolution or letter or whatever it may be to the Massachusetts Attorney General's Office, Department of Environmental Protection and Department of, I'm sorry, Department of Energy Resources. And the reason for that is some of the concerns I've seen have had to do with some of the emissions from the plant. And I know Massachusetts has some pretty stringent emissions goals. So I don't know if those groups have had an opportunity to look at it. I assume they have. But at least if we copy them, at least they're aware that way and they're tuned in. It would at least give us, you know, a formal way to say, hey, it's on our radar. We're looking at this. You know, please hold off so everybody can make an educated decision.
I have some proposed language for that, but anyone else who wants to speak? Anyone on the council?
I like that idea.
How about if we do a letter? And I don't think we have to write the whole letter now, but basically expressing grave concerns on the people, on behalf of the people of Barrington and the Town Council of Barrington and requesting that they take into account the concerns of their abutting neighbors in Rhode Island, in Barrington, as they move forward. And we can get a list of all the folks that you wanted to mention, you wanted to copy on that. But I can't, is there something else you think we should add to that, Rob?
No, I think the only other thing that I might add, but subject to whether we have authority to even do so, is, you know, make a request that they don't quite vote on it yet. You know, I assume like we do, they have the opportunity to continue it to their next meeting. So that would give further opportunity for the stakeholders to, you know, to give an educated opinion or have a better understanding of the issues. And again, I know that our request carries, you know, whatever weight it's worth, which isn't much because we don't have jurisdiction, but at least it makes them aware.
Yep. After you continue your meeting to give affected stakeholders additional time.
I think, I think if we maybe also offer some gesture of reciprocity in it as well, that certainly if something was happening in our community and they wanted to be heard, we would invite their opinion.
Okay, anything else? So I can certainly draft that without calling a separate meeting. We're not really, we can't vote on it without a separate meeting because that would be Open Meetings Act violation. But if you, if you would just, if we can make a motion to, we can either hold a separate meeting or if you want to make a motion just to direct me to write a letter on behalf of the Town Council expressing grave concerns on behalf of the people of Barrington, Town Council, and asking that they take note of these concerns of their neighbors in Rhode Island. We ask that they continue their meeting to give affected stakeholders an opportunity to examine the application and then also say something about how we would be happy to do so were the situation reversed or something. Does that make sense? Yes, Rob, please.
Thank you. Just one clarification comment. Maybe instead of continuing their meetings, I'm sure, just like us, they have a lot of work that goes into it. Perhaps it's just continuing their vote so they can, you know, and I'm not married to this, but, you know, that they have an opportunity to at least discuss it for whatever they intended to, but not vote on it at that meeting to allow for further discussion.
Okay, so I'll change that to vote. Anything else to add?
There is one here raised in the attendees.
That is Susanna Holloway. Jim, if you can unmute Ms. Holloway, please.
She should be able to unmute herself.
Thank you so much. So for the asphalt plant, I think there are a lot of environmental concerns about this, especially near such a sensitive wetland, which is definitely protected. So could we please also reach out as a town to our Attorney General to ask for some of his guidance on this? There may be federal laws or regulations which are implicated. Our own coastal resources management may be implicated because of the way 100 Acre Cove, you know, is such an important waterway. So I would really like our Attorney General to help us.
That is already happening. That's already happening, yes. That's one of the steps that our representatives to the General Assembly, Diana Cassar, Jason Knight and Sidney Coyne are already doing. So that's an excellent idea though. And you mentioned something else in terms of federal. I think it makes sense to reach out to Congresswoman Cicilline as well.
Yeah, and our US Attorney, Aaron Wiseman.
Thank you. Okay, let's see, no other hands. Do I hear a motion to authorize the president to send the letter as described?
Unmute.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Costello. Vice President Hahn, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Brier?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Costello?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Thank you. That motion carries. A lot of work to be done on that and I think the work's going to have to be kind of a all hands on deck sort of thing, both from the council and our public. Next item on the agenda is to discuss an act on the Housing Board of Trustees Down Payment Assistant Program. And I think we have Chris Brady to take us through that. If we can unmute Chris. Chris, you may be able to unmute yourself. There you go.
All right. Good evening, everybody. I thank you for your time. I can walk you briefly through the Down Payment Assistance Program guidelines that we've developed with the Housing Board of Trustees, for those who aren't familiar with our group. Our charge is to help the town move towards the statewide requirement to have 10% of your housing be affordable housing. Right now, we have 2.66% of our housing is affordable in Barrington as of 2019. So we're behind and we need to catch up. In March of 2019, the Housing Board of Trustees met with the council at a special meeting. And the council, how should I word this? Voted to implement the Down Payment Assistance Program along the lines that we discussed. And we've been working on fine tuning those guidelines and we're finally there. It's been a long haul. And we wanted to get the council's stamp of approval. So that's what we're doing here today. The program, the goal of the program is to provide down payment assistance to first-time home buyers who are income-eligible residents of Barrington. They need to put at least 3% of their own money down and sign a 30-year affordable housing deed restriction. The income eligibility is capped at 100% of area median income. And the down payment assistance would range And the down payment assistance would range from $25,000 to $50,000, depending on the size of the household and the income. We have two tiers of income, one level of subsidy for folks below 80% of AMI and one from 81% to 100% of AMI. It's, we would, our plan is to have the Community Housing Land Trust assist us with administering the program. They would qualify applicants, and we've been working with them to set up the program. They would also monitor applicants for compliance after they move in. It is required that these homes be owner-occupied, too. They're not speculative or investment property. So that's the quick version. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any member of the council have questions? And do we, does someone want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion, Mike.
Okay, great. Please, Counselor Conway.
I'll make a motion to approve the Affordable Housing Down Payment Assistant Program as presented.
Second.
It's the motion made by Counselor Conway, seconded by Counselor Breyer. Any further discussion? Mariana would like to be heard, if we can unmute Mariana.
I have one quick question for Chris, and that might be a completely idiotic question, but I'm just curious. Housing prices, especially in Barrington, being so high, and we're talking about one tier of the qualifiers being below 80%, so those people most likely are not qualifying for houses in Barrington at such a higher price. So how does that work even with the down payment? If we have houses that don't, people cannot even get along for, or am I just talking completely nonsense right now?
No, not at all. The idea is to allow people at, you know, up to 80% or up to 100% of area median income to be able to afford a home. And when you look at the numbers with a subsidy of up to $50,000 for a family of four, that can really take somebody from what you could afford at 80% of AMI to what it takes to buy a house in Barrington. So that's the goal. In exchange, the homebuyer has to sign a 30-year deed restriction that would require them to sell the house to somebody who meets the same income qualifications, and it caps the resale to what would be affordable for somebody at 100% of AMI at that time. So, does that answer your question, Mariana?
Yes, thank you.
Great.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded. Vice President Hahn, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Costello?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, the motion carries. Thank you very much for your hard work, Chris, and everybody on the Housing Board. We appreciate it.
Thanks for your support on behalf of the board. I'm going to sign off and make some room for others who are interested in attending the meeting, but, good night and thanks.
Next item on our agenda is to discuss an act on resolutions. There really is one resolution for this portion, and that is the Resilient Future Resolution. This is something put together by our Energy and Resilience Committee. It is, it is a request that we both recognize and commit to the need for, to addressing the need to reduce our carbon footprint. And it makes some specific suggestions in that regard. The committee is also working on updating our energy plan, which will be a great help for us. And among the things that they're suggesting is using electric vehicles for our fleet, which would be a great thing. One of our members has done the numbers on a Tesla for the police department, and believe it or not, it's, it looks like it could be cheaper. So we're gonna, he's arranging for a free test drive for the police in a Tesla Model 3, I think. So we certainly, you know, I'm open to that. It'd be surprising to me if we could afford that, and it made sense, but the numbers seem to work out that way. Does anyone have any comments on this resolution? I have a slight proposed change, but anyone have any comments on it? Please, Jacob.
So I love the resolution. I think it's great. When I read it, it was right around the same time that I heard about a bill that's in the General Assembly now, the Act on Climate Bill, which is Bill 78. And I reached out to Lynn Carter to see if she was aware and if it was something that could be added to this. We had a bit of a discussion about it. I heard her thoughts and decided that leaving this to stand alone is good because this is really internally focused, looking at what we as a town can do to really improve our footprint. But I would, I would like to, rather than add to this, to put a resolution together that I plan to for next month on some General Assembly things.
Okay. Any other members of the council? I'd like to point out one thing. It's in the, the last paragraph, and this is, maybe this is picking myths a little bit. One of the things, and I drafted the very old energy section of the Comprehensive Plan, and we talked at that time about electric vehicles and hybrid electric vehicles, and it's something that the police are looking at. But I would say, I would make one proposed modification, that is, that we, the Town Council will, instead of the word "make," I would put the word "place," and then say "energy efficiency, carbon emissions reduction, and renewable energy choices," and then I would add "among its top priorities." And the reason I say that is, our top priority's always got to be public safety, right? And so, you know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't, even in a more energy-efficient car, we wouldn't want to put any of our folks at risk. So that's, I would rather just say "among its top priorities" because I always thought that public safety is our top priority. But that's my only proposed change to it. Does anyone have anything else? Okay, then I'll make the motion to adopt the Resilient Future as presented and amended. And do I hear a second? Seconded by Counselor Breyer. Vice President Hahn, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Costello?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, the motion carries. Mary, please remind me, I have those changes written down. I can tell you what it is. In that last paragraph where it says "Town Council will," the word "make," delete that word, and add the word "place" instead, and then continue along "energy efficiency, carbon emissions reduction, and renewable energy choices," and then insert the words "among And that's it? Let's see. The next item on the agenda is to discuss an act on ordinances. Andy, this is the point where we don't have any introduction for any ordinances, but we will be holding public hearing on four ordinances. However, we have 62 panelists and 86 attendees. That means there are 14 more people who could join at any time. Are we in good shape to start under those circumstances?
Yes, I think you are.
Okay.
As long as people can still get on, and if you get close to the limit again, I mean, it's kind of backwards that you've got so many more panelists than attendees, but I think this works as a fix for tonight.
Yes.
So as long as the town manager keeps moving people over so that people can get on, and you can move people, and you do have plenty of room under your panelists so that people can speak, I think you're okay.
We're going to do the best we can to improvise, adapt, and overcome. So, we have no ordinances to introduce. I want to go over before we go into any of these, although I don't expect, I expect sort of less. I know the, one of most interest is the fourth that we'll discuss, that we will be keeping to the three-minute rule, but you'll be able to, in this case, speak as many times as you want. We have 150 people at the meeting. If everyone wants to speak, that will take quite a while, and we won't finish tonight. But, so I would encourage you, if someone has said something that you've agreed with, you don't need to say anything. If you want to just pop on to say, "I agree with so-and-so," that's fine, too, but let's try and be as efficient as we can. The first ordinance for introduction is 2020-25. This is an ordinance amendment to Chapter 169 Taxation. And before I open the public hearing, this is a matter, is Steve Boyagen on? This is a matter that Steve Boyagen, our recent colleague, took on right away as he came on board as a member of the council. And, let's see, and he worked with an ad hoc committee to look at the way to expand some relief for folks who were struggling. The origin of this was that when the middle school was being proposed, there were a lot of people who, understandably so, were concerned that the increase in taxes to pay for new middle school might drive them out of town. And so, we listened, and we looked at ways that we could expand some tax relief for those people who are really on the margins. And that was a successful enterprise. And is Steve available? Do you see him?
I don't see him on the call, President Carroll.
Okay, he may not have been able to get on. So Steve put together a memo to outline some of those things. I want to, he put together in his sort of usual fashion, very detailed numbers that will show this, but I think there are, for those who aren't focused on the, right in the weeds on this, basically, the proposal would increase the exemptions offered to seniors and disabled by 14.6%.
President Carroll, former Counselor Boyagen says he is in the meeting. I'm trying to locate him right now in case he, like him, here he is. And I'm going to promote him to a panelist, and he can control himself.
Steve, if you can, I think you're unmuted, if you could, please take us through this.
Sure.
But if you could take us through this, I'd appreciate it.
Happy to. I'm not sure if you can hear me.
Yes, please.
Okay. Great. So Mike gave you some of the background, and the memo, I hope, answers all of your questions. But generally, what we're proposing here is to increase each income bracket for the senior exemptions, increase the amount of available relief by 14.6%. In the lower-income brackets, that has a more material impact on the amount of the exemption available, because obviously 14.6% of $3,250 is bigger than 14.6% of $200. But the memo lays out each of the adjustments that we're proposing. Basically, in, for fiscal year 2019, the Tax Exemption Committee estimated that the exemptions would cost $836,000 for seniors and the totally disabled. We actually never hit that figure. In year one, it was because of a drop in applications. It continued to increase over year two and three because of adjustments to HUD's AMI figures that are used to set the brackets, but it never became quite as generous as we had hoped. The thinking at the time was, once applications had stabilized, that we would increase the amount of the aggregate exemptions by the same percentage that the taxing levy increased each year. So the proposal that's embodied in the ordinance would do that. It's essentially a catch-up of 14.6% to get where we projected we ought to be at this point. That has some cost, obviously. It would probably raise the tax rate somewhere between 5 and 10 cents, depending where the rounding comes out in the results of the newest assessment. But we think it's manageable. Applications have been relatively stable. They increase slightly every year, which is a good sign. It means there are probably more seniors in town. But the increases are such that we're not anticipating any huge bumps anymore like we were from year two to year three, for example. So that's the long and the short of it. On veterans and service-related exemptions, you'll see in the memo that there actually was a pretty 10% adjustment upwards after we did our work for fiscal year 2019. And that was done because essentially the amount of the veterans' exemptions, we tackled that first in the process. And when we came up short of our projected costs, the next year, we said, well, let's bump that up 10%. So the catch-up there is somewhat smaller, but it's still an increase of roughly, call it 5%. In the aggregate, that's not very expensive. There are just not enough veterans in town to make that a material impact. Mike, we can hear you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. That was helpful. And I really congratulate your whole ad hoc committee on doing that. That was important work, and I'm glad that we were able to expand that for seniors, the disabled, and for our veterans. And now I'm going to open the public hearing for this. That means that members of the public will be able to participate. And again, you'll have three minutes, and then we'll move on to the next person, and you can be heard again if you'd like to. So this is the public hearing on ordinance 2020-25. Would anyone from the public like to be heard? There's one panelist raising their hand. Erin Paquette. Please, Ms. Paquette.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Erin Paquette, and I live at 137 Bay Spring Avenue. I am also the chairperson of the Senior Services Advisory Board in town, and I'm in attendance tonight, along with a number of our other board members, to express our support for the proposed ordinance. The board was fully in support of the original ordinance creating the tax exemption, and we are also fully in support of this proposed ordinance. And in our opinion, the amendment will provide further assistance that is much needed to the senior population in Barrington. We would urge the Town Council to vote in favor of the amendment.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public want to be heard on this ordinance? Someone from the attendees? Al Trade? Not sure if that's, if it's Albert Trade or who that is, but if we can unmute that person.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Yep.
Great. Hi, I'm Al Trade. I'm at 5 Driftwood Drive. I am also on the Senior Services Advisory Board in town, and I'm in attendance tonight, Uh, I am also on the, uh, Senior Services Advisory Board and I'm the vice chair. I would also, uh, like to, uh, uh, support exactly what Erin said in, uh, going further, going forth with the, uh, further exemption for seniors. Seniors are very important to, um, our community and a big part of our community. And, uh, having served on the board now for three years, uh, I certainly have gotten a much better sense of, uh, uh, what the seniors mean to Barrington and all that they really, uh, add to the community. So, I would, uh, uh, as a board member and as an individual, uh, a person living in Barrington for twenty years, I would certainly support, uh, uh, the efforts in going forward with a, uh, positive vote. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public wish to be heard? Okay, speaking none, I'm closing the public hearing. Uh, and now, members of the council, would you, would any member of the council like to be heard on this? Counselor Costello, please.
Um, I think this is, this is an excellent program. During the campaign, um, the most common thing I heard from seniors was that, "Look, I'm supportive of, of all we do for the schools and for the kids in this town, um, but I'd like to make it a little easier. I'm not necessarily ready to, uh, to downsize my home and I love living here and I think I'm a meaningful member of the community. And I'm not asking for much, but I'd like you to make it a little bit easier." This program would make it far more affordable for seniors. It makes a big difference to a lot of middle and low-income seniors who want to stay in this town. We, I think, at some point, we've all committed to the idea that we want to do more for seniors in this town to make it senior-friendly, make senior-living-friendly. The one question, um, I see Mr. Boyagen is still on, that I would have, is, is there's some, you seem to cite some evidence that, um, that this program has, has actually slowed, if not reversed, the downward trend in senior population. Where are we getting that? I mean, that's fantastic, that's what we're trying to do. And so, do you, do you have, and if, if, if he's listening, um, where would we find that information?
So, the best you can do, um, is you can gain, because we obviously, we don't have annual census data. What we do have is our experience with the applications. Um, in year one, like I said, they decreased pretty substantially. We think that was a combination of factors. There was a lot of public resistance to this. Um, and so, out of spite, we think a lot of people didn't apply. Um, part of that also was that we, uh, started complying with our own ordinance that requires annual applications. It used to be sort of autopilot in that you'd file your application and your exemption would persist year after year. Um, what we found is there were a number of people who no longer qualified for the exemption, but were still receiving it. Some of that was, you know, not above board, but I don't think that was the majority of it. I think the majority of it was, for example, we had, uh, one envelope come back that said the person isn't at their house anymore, they live in Atria. Now, I don't think they were trying to take advantage of the town by claiming that exemption, but it just so happens that now that the home is not occupied by the owner, but maybe by their child, that the senior exemption doesn't apply. So, in year one, we saw a reduction, uh, in number of applications. Since then, we've seen a steady increase, um, most recently about a five percent increase. And on top of that, you see a larger increase every year in the number of low and moderate-income seniors who apply for the income-based exemptions. Um, so, it's a, it's a, you know, it's a prediction that those two correlate. The number of seniors in town probably equate to the number of applications that we receive.
Okay. Just on the whole, I think it's an excellent idea. I know it was controversial in the beginning. Now there's a track record of success. I think we should, we should solidly in, in, endorse this ordinance and go forward with it.
Any other member of the council want to be heard on this? Counselor Brier?
I had, um, a, a couple of questions and then, uh, something to consider. Um, one was in the military exemptions, Part B, where it, um, lists that this is in addition to any other exemption for which somebody is eligible. Does that cap out at zero, um, in tax liability? Because some of these exemptions are larger. So if, say, um, somebody had a ten-thousand-dollar exemption as a Gold Star parent and is also income-eligible for a two-thousand-dollar exemption, but would have only owed nine-thousand dollars on their home, is the town writing checks out for that money or it just caps at zero?
No, none of them are refundable credits, so it's zero.
Um, and then the, the other thing, um, that I'd like us to consider, and maybe the ad hoc committee already did, uh, and chose not to include it, but was that we have, um, about fifty or so active-duty military and I wondered about considering including them in the military exemption, um, thinking that somebody could serve for two or three years and retire and be eligible for the exemption. Somebody could serve for fifteen, twenty years and currently be serving and ineligible for the exemption. Um, so I, it would cost about seventeen-thousand dollars on top of the, the rest of the exemptions. I just wondered if that was discussed, um, and looked at.
Counselor Brier, if I could just address that, not pro-war against, but, um, the military, active-duty military, they're not eligible for, for retirement pay until they've served at least twenty years. So, no one on this list would receive an exemption unless they were twenty-year retired. Uh, unless they were disabled. I, I apologize, that's wrong, the veterans get it. But they also receive a, um, an allowance for housing while they're on active duty that supports their, their house. So, um, it's not, their entire mortgage payment isn't coming out of their pay. Uh, the vast majority is actually coming out of an allowance that they get for housing. So, I'm not sure it would have as much of an impact. It certainly would have a good impact for them. I'm just not sure it's worthy of taxpayer effort.
That's good information.
Sorry, I was, I was trying to unmute there. I can tell you that, um, that would have to be a separate ordinance. The term veteran is defined and I don't have the definition in front of me, but I know it was, uh, something that we talked about for a very long time. Mike Tripp, who's from the United Veterans Council, was on the committee and we, and we worked through all that. Uh, I think the primary concern, from his perspective, was apparently there was, uh, someone in town who I think, uh, was discharged in basic training and it has been a bone of contention for the United Veterans Council for a number of years that he said he was a veteran. Now, I'm not qualified to weigh in on the quality of someone's service, um, but that definition was tinkered with quite a bit. So, you could expand that to include active duty in the future, uh, but that would have to be a separate ordinance.
Thank you. Anyone else from the council? Please, Vice President Hump.
Thank you. I, I first just wanted to echo Carl's, um, or Mr. Costello's statements, um, and commend Mr. Boyagen for the work that he did to put this together. Um, I, I see your, your, your picture there and you're, you're freshly shaved and I don't recognize you without your beard anymore, um, but welcome to the meeting. Um, and, and also thank you to Ms. Paquette, uh, and the rest of the Senior Services Advisory Board. I, I have a question, um, with respect to the committee itself, um, who did all the work to, to look into this and put this together. Um, I'm, I'm interested in your take, Mr. Boyagen, as to whether this ad hoc committee should be disbanded once we vote on this tonight, um, or if there's a need for it in the future, given that, uh, it does seem to contemplate regular adjustments from time to time.
So, uh, a- and let me step back to, to Jacob's question, actually. While we were, uh, talking, I looked up the definition of veteran. It includes those who have not yet been discharged, provided they've served honorably so far. Um, so active duty can receive the benefit under this. Um, to, to Rob's question, the committee, you know, it finished its work when it issued these recommendations. Um, we asked to stay in existence for two reasons. One was to determine when we could make an adjustment. Uh, I can give you some of the background. This was extremely volatile in terms of the cost of this when we first did it, because we were fighting to get people to file applications, uh, you know, with huge controversy surrounding it. And in the last two weeks before the deadline, the cost of the program ballooned from just over half a million dollars to about three-quarters of a million dollars, uh, totally unanticipated. So, we said, "Keep us in existence to see what happens in year two, because when people see how much money is available, the, uh, applications could spike." And they, like I said, they did go up, they didn't really spike. Since then, the committee hasn't had much to do. Um, the, the recommendation for these adjustments, in fact, at one point, we had considered just drafting the ordinance to have them take place automatically, um, without any further action by the council. We thought that was a little risky. So what we did instead is we set the timing for the application deadlines, which is actually different than it used to be, so that you would have all the information available to the council prior to the budget season, which is why I introduced this before the election, was to make sure that you guys didn't have to wait two meetings, uh, to get it done, so it would be on your docket. Um, the only other piece of work for the committee is that we all recommended that the town investigate a way to do something that's done in Newport and communities out throughout Massachusetts, which is a work-off-your-taxes program. Uh, where any senior who wants to volunteer their time effectively can get a reduction of their taxes up to a maximum amount, I, you know, depending on the community, of about five-hundred dollars. Uh, you know, we have a very talented retired workforce here, right? I mean, people with incredible experience and they could be of some use. There are a lot of struggles with that type of program in terms of finding suitable work, supervision of the work, how you compensate them, the fact that that's taxable as federal income, notwithstanding what we might do at the state level or the local level, all those types of things. And that was the only thing left for the committee to look at. Um, I can tell you right now that the committee is largely, you know, cast to the wind. Um, Peter Dennehy and I are both off the council, but were appointed chair and vice chair as council members, so you'd have to fill those seats. Um, some of the committee members had moved out of town. Some were specifically picked because they represented boards and commissions like senior services that they no longer sit on. Um, so if you wanted to continue to go down that road about the work-off-the-tax program, uh, you'd have to reconstitute it, but I, I don't see any other work for us to do.
Okay, I'm, I'm understood and thank you.
Any member of the council? Um, I will then make a motion to adopt twenty-twenty dash twenty-five, an ordinance amendment to chapter one sixty-nine, taxation, as presented. Is there? Who, who made that? Counselor Costello, seconds. Uh, Vice President Hump, how do you vote?
Uh, sorry, I, I had, um, some language amendments I wanted to just, um, ask for consideration. I haven't written up, it doesn't change anything technically, but, um, changes the phrasing of widow or widower to widowed and his or her to their and son or daughter to child. Um, it doesn't, doesn't change any, um, of the meaning, it just removes gender from the ordinance. I can go through each of them, um, if you want to hear or...
Oh, okay, um, let's, let's pull that up. Okay, uh, and where's the first change?
So the second page, um, so one sixty-nine dash twenty-seven, A-one-A, um, change widow or widower to widowed?
For each veteran or unmarried widowed of such, widowed?
Yeah.
I guess I'm not familiar with that. Phrasing. I thought that was the past tense of being widowed. Oh, do you mean for each veteran?
I mean, you can, you can add the word person after widowed if, if you want, but it's not. Uh, that would, that would maybe flow better. But, yeah, for each veteran or the unmarried widowed person.
Okay. I don't, I don't have any objection to that. Uh, Rob, please go ahead.
I, ju- just for discussion purposes, um, I, I'm wondering, I, I, I had the same initial confusion on using the term widowed. Um, I'm wondering if we can use a term such as surviving spouse, um, for each veteran or the unmarried surviving spouse of each veteran?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, Mary, do you have that? Okay.
And that's in A, B, and C?
So, replace widow or widower with surviving spouse? Okay.
And then in D, um, change son or daughter to childs? And that comes up twice?
Uh, I don't have, does, does anyone have any objection to these on the council? Okay. Mary, can you follow, do you see that in D? Their son or daughter appears twice and you change that to child in each case?
And then also in D toward the end, his or her changed to their.
Okay.
And again, in the last line of E.
Okay.
And that's it?
Okay.
Um, I'm sorry to interrupt. I, I realize that I forgot to mention one thing to you that, uh, I only saw after I sent in the memo. Um, and that is that there is one other change in the language that's probably appropriate. Just prior to the, uh, table of income and credits, uh, it says, "The median income applicable to the town of Barrington is published by HUD in the year of the applicant's application." Experience has taught us that a lot of people tend to file these late and the practice has been to be pretty lenient with anyone who files late as long as they have some, you know, reasonable justification for it. Uh, that would complicate things because applications are coming in in twenty-twenty-one, which would have us calculating one applicant's exemption based on HUD's twenty-twenty-one figures and others on twenty-twenty. Um, so I thought that what should be in there instead is in the year that the applicant's application was due to be filed.
So, in the year, and then that, Mary, if you could see that, one sixty-nine dash, uh, nine, was just before, uh, AMI or just after AMI, you could say the year that the applicant's application was due to be filed. I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Mary. You were muted, I think? I can't, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Steve, should AMI remain in there?
Uh, yes, because it's used elsewhere as an abbreviation, so that's just a different term.
So the, the place where the change is, is in the ordinance, section one-sixty-nine dash nine, uh, the very last line, in the year of the applicant's application, AMI, and then after the parenthetical, is due to be filed. That makes sense. Okay, with, with those changes, uh, I will make a motion to adopt twenty-twenty dash twenty-five ordinance amendment to chapter one sixty-nine, taxation, as amended. Is there a second?
There's a second, second.
Seconded by Counselor Costello. Any further discussion? Vice President Hump, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Brier?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Costello?
Aye.
I also vote aye, the motion carries. Steve, thank you and Peter Dennehy and all of the folks on that for their hard work on this. This is really important stuff.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is, uh, ordinance twenty-twenty dash twenty-six and ordinance amendment to chapter fifty, Budget Forecast Committee. This is really... This is really the kind of formalization of what we've had in the past. It allows us to create this Budget Forecast Committee. The idea is for us to be very forward-looking. This isn't intended to be locked in stone, and we had a presentation by John Alessandro, our chair of the Budget Forecasting Committee. And it's helpful for us to begin thinking about things. For example, as any household would, we know that the high school needs a new roof in coming years, so that's an expensive item, we need to be prepared for it. Those are the kinds of things that we want to be looking at for, and so we have this Budget Forecasting Committee that tries to come up with a forecast that will assist us in creating budgets. In any case, this formalizes it and sets out the membership. I am opening the public hearing into the ordinance amendment for the Budget Forecast Committee. Is there any member of the public who would like to be heard on this? Okay, seeing none, I am closing the public hearing. Any member of the council want to be heard on this? Yes, Counselor Breyer?
I was wondering, because it's not listed, and I've seen it listed in other committees, but how and when the chair is chosen?
I don't know that we, there are rules written for the Budget Forecasting Committee, certainly not part of the ordinance, right?
Right, that's what I'm saying, I haven't seen that, but I've seen, you know, with the establishments of other committees, it says, "Committee will select its own chair." And I was wondering when that happens, because the membership changes in off cycles.
Yeah, well, the Budget Forecasting Committee may establish its own rules of procedure. So I think that we certainly have the ability as members, and that's probably a good first step to identify that going forward. I don't have any objection to maintaining the current chair, but I think that's probably the solution, is to establish those in the procedural rules.
So the other question was for consideration of the inclusion of the town moderator as a member, would give an odd number, and would also then involve the person who oversees and presides over the financial town meeting, more of a role in the long-term financial planning of the town. I asked Richard Staples over the weekend, and he said that he would, it is a role that he'd like, he'd like to be more involved, and I think, I think it can add a good dynamic to have that voice involved as well.
Okay. So I think we could probably add that as item B for the town moderator. Any questions or concerns about that from the council? Any, yes. Vice President Hahn?
I have no questions or concerns, and I think it's a good idea, well, I have no concerns, I think it's a good idea, but I do have just one question. Is, in terms of the position of moderator, is Mr. Staples permitted to join a committee? Maybe he is, maybe he isn't, I just don't know the answer to that. But is it worth checking on that first?
This is Mike Ursillo. If you'd like, I'll look into that question, and maybe hold this and move on if you want to. I was gonna just look up the charter provision.
Okay. So we will pause this, we can possibly address it in this evening, but...
Yes.
We'll get Mike the chance to look that up, and we'll move on to the next one, which is 2020, 2021-2, renewal of our ordinance of declaration of emergency. Members of the public may know, we have declared a state of emergency in the town of Barrington. There are a number of good reasons to do that, we are in a state of emergency, there are certainly a lot of folks who are suffering under COVID. But it also helps us to respond quickly with our manager being able to very quickly take steps that may be necessary. And in addition to that, and fortunately with the new administration, it looks like it'll be easier, we may need to be in a state of emergency to collect FEMA reimbursements. So that's the reason for that. I'm opening the public hearing into ordinance 2021-2, that is, the renewal of our ordinance of declaration of emergency, and I'd ask any member of the public if they'd like to be heard on this. Okay, seeing none, I'm closing the public hearing into that ordinance. Members of the council, does any member of the council want to be heard? Counselor Breyer?
Yes, I would like to just hear what the plans are for getting the word out about the vaccine registry, in addition to the email that went out, wondering what the plans are to make everybody aware who might not be online.
We have obviously made, posted it on all our social media platforms, Twitter, Facebook, town webpage, the email distribution list from the senior center, the eye contact list. I also had a discussion with Josh Bickford from the Barrington Times, and it will be in Wednesday's Barrington Times as well, and that's what we've done so far.
I think Lisa Lowenstein also made a great suggestion that as individuals, we reach out to neighbors, friends, and family who, to encourage them and/or help them with addressing this. Go ahead.
I had heard a few suggestions from folks in the community about things to do that could help, would be asking local pharmacies if they could post a sign about it, about how to register or who to call to sign up. And Meals on Wheels can deliver a flyer for us to all of their homebound residents that they serve, and then if...
I spoke with Megan Grady today, and they will be delivered, they did a two-day delivery today, so flyers will be delivered on Wednesday with the Meals from Meals on Wheels.
Great.
And I can ask Deborah to distribute the flyer around to some of the businesses, not only pharmacies, but some of the other businesses in town, to ask them to post it.
Okay. And then if we find that we still haven't gotten, you know, a broad group of the population registered, possibly considering doing a mailing to the list of folks who have the senior exemption.
Any other council members? Ready to make a motion?
Well, I wanted to, I wanted to ask also about looking into what might be needed for a virtual FTM, knowing that with the vaccine rollout, there's probably a good chance that we'd struggle to have an indoor, in-person meeting on the fourth Wednesday in May at 7:00 PM. Just want to see if we're looking into what it would take to hold a virtual one, so that it is an option if that's the way we decide we want to go.
We just, unfortunately, it didn't work for tonight, but I'll make sure it's working for next time, that will increase the participation with the Zoom account, to allow us to do a virtual with up to 1,000 participants. That, you know, we could certainly end up with more than that, we never have, but we find that our attendance increases tremendously with virtual. So we'll have to take a look at what the costs are and what the options are as far as a Zoom webinar would be.
Okay.
So that's, this is the state of emergency motion, but that's something that we can look at, and I think we would need to bring it up as a separate agenda item, that is, how to respond to, how to prepare for a potential virtual meeting. Now, I have a little confidence in that, but if we can find a tool that will get that done, that'd be fantastic. I'll put that on the agenda for our next meeting, and if, in the meantime, Jacob, if you wanted to look into tools that might be able to provide for that, all of the things that we need, for example, the ability to make a motion at any point, and all of the things, you may want to work with Richard Staples on that as well, to see if there is a way to do it. Among the obvious obstacles are, there are lots of seniors who don't have a computer, so that prevents them from attending. We're also used to having multiple computers around us, or phones, or iPads, or laptops, and so on, but I have talked to a number of seniors who just don't have any interface with the web, and we have to find some way to address that, too. Okay, here, I'll make a motion to adopt 2021-2, renewal of our declaration of emergency as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Conway. Any further discussion? Counselor Breyer?
There are folks who have their hands up, I don't know if, they've been up as we've been talking.
Right, we did close the public hearing already. I'm willing, certainly, I will open the public hearing again, there's a motion made and seconded. Ms. Lowenstein, please.
I just wanted to add an idea. We've already seen that our postal workers in Barrington have assisted the elderly population in unusual ways during COVID. Could we work with the post office to put a stack of flyers in every one of the postal trucks, and just have them drop the flyer at the person's house, and have them just leave it for the postman, maybe a brightly colored flyer or sign that says, "Do you need help getting your vaccine?" And I don't know if that goes against postal regulations, but we need to make this really easy for people and meet them where they are, and I know that my postman, Todd, saved someone's life this past 12 months and was recognized by the town council for it, and I know he's always checking in on my neighbors, so that might be a way to just cut all of this red tape and just pick these papers up from the people and know who needs the help. Thank you for letting me be heard again.
Thank you. And Mariana, please.
Yeah, I was gonna say something similar to what Lisa said, just trying to find a ways, I'd be more than happy to volunteer, too, if there's any way that we can do. I thought about maybe doing something outside of Shaw's for a whole week, where we could be there for, maybe if we get a group of volunteers, I don't know what would be the requirements or the issues with that, that we can have, maybe a table outside for a few hours during the earlier, part of the morning, and distributing the flyers that people coming in, or even leaving flyers at Shaw's and a couple of the other establishments. I would be happy to, to help if you guys need it, volunteer.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. So I am now closing the public hearing, we have a motion made and seconded, further discussion from the council. Vice President Hahn, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Costello?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, that motion carries.
President Carroll, if you want to return to the prior public hearing?
Yes.
On the issue of the town moderator, the charter does specify in detail the duties of the moderator in section 718 with regard to presiding over and managing the meeting. I think if you want to have the moderator's input, it would be best to make the moderator an ex officio member, because this in effect would be adding a duty to the moderator's position that doesn't exist per charter, and again, there is a specific charter provision on this, so perhaps the compromise is to make ex officio, that way if the moderator can't attend to all those meetings, it would not be mandatory.
Okay. So we could have item four, membership, item, section 50-1B, membership and term, item four, we could simply say the town moderator ex officio.
That would do it?
With that change, right, your motion to adopt ordinance 2020-26, an ordinance amendment to add chapter 50 Budget Forecasting Committee as presented and amended.
So moved?
Motion made by Counselor Breyer, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Hahn. Vice President Hahn, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Costello?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, that motion carries, and we have passed the emergency ordinance. So now, we are on to the ordinance amendment to chapter 104 Flag Policy. Before we get to the public hearing on that, a couple of things. First, Counselor Breyer wanted to say a few words, so please, go right ahead.
Thank you. Yes, I just wanted to go through the ordinance and just sort of explain the purpose of each section before having the public hearing, and it started with the first section covers the fundamental purpose of the ordinance is to codify what's already the current legal status, which is that raising flags on government property is government speech, and that the town flagpole is not a public forum. The second section describes the current practice, flying the US flag, and immediately below it, we choose to fly a special flag that highlights a small but very important segment of Barrington's population by flying the POW MIA flag honoring them and all veterans. The next section sets the definition, or the next two sections set the definition and legal parameters of it, and the fourth sets us with an obligation to always respect the guidelines of the US flag code that lays out the method by which temporary flags can be raised on the same howard. And by calling for a resolution of the council, it demands public input, because all resolutions by the council will have public notice and public input, and the reason for the potential block by a council member if a town manager were to raise a flag is so that we can ensure that there would be public notice on anything that any member of the council feels could be controversial. And I just wanted to cover the broad strokes, and I look forward to hearing what everybody has to say about this ordinance.
Okay, thank you. And before we begin the public hearing on it, let's start with what we are considering. There are at least four versions. Counselor Breyer presented a version, I presented a version which added some and deleted some from his, and some other modifications, and Counselor Conway presented one, also that made some modifications to Counselor Breyer's. We've also all received many emails from folks who are suggesting specific language or general language that is opposing the flying of any other flag. So those are the things that we're considering. But before I start it, I want to talk about how we conduct that public hearing. We've gotten hundreds of emails on this topic, and there've been opinion pieces, and social media posts, and radio interviews, and so on. I guess one thing I'm sure we can all agree on is that people are bringing enormous passion and feeling to these viewpoints. I would say that's a good thing. These are important issues, and they're worthy of great passion and robust debate. And no one can be faulted for passionate argument, but I'm going to ask that all of us treat each other with respect. I've spent a career trying to persuade judges and juries, opposing counsel and clients, and one thing I've learned is that it never helps to insult the people you're trying to persuade, so I urge all of us... So I urge all of us to keep that in mind. I also urge all of us to give each other the benefit of the doubt and listen to what is being said. It's really easy to discount and ignore what someone is saying if we've already decided on their motives. I'm gonna give you an example that I noticed from our last meeting. A member of the public was speaking, there was a smoke detector beeping in the background, and another member of the public, let's call that other one TR, wrote in the check function that the speaker should change the battery in his smoke detector. Apparently, someone felt that TR was belining or mocking what that speaker was saying, and that person left to the defense of the speaker. But I think that was based on a false assumption of TR's motives. And I know that was false for a couple of reasons. First, I've disagreed with TR before. He's not subtle. If he disagrees with you, you'll know it, and it won't be in that way. But the more important reason is that TR's a firefighter. I know that he really wanted that speaker to change the battery in the smoke detector because he's had to go into fires. He's had to, I'm sure he's had to resuscitate people who've been pulled from buildings. My point is that let's not immediately assume we understand someone's motive in saying something. I also want us to avoid labeling each other. I don't doubt that there is a subset of people in this world that support the Black Lives Matter flag and who are also Marxist or anti-American or anti-Semitic, a subset of people. But please don't apply those labels to people in this meeting. At the same time, I don't doubt there's a subset of people who oppose the flying of the Black Lives Matter flag who are racist and believe that black lives don't matter. Please don't apply that label to people in this meeting. That's a subset of people. I'm asking that we treat each other with respect and don't let our passions impact our judgment. In any case, we will not tolerate disrespect of each other or name-calling. And if necessary, I'll use the authority granted by the charter and our rules to remove a person who's doing so from the meeting. In order to accommodate as many people as possible, we'll be enforcing the three-minute time limit rules per comment. Our manager, Jim Cunha, will monitor the length of the comment and warn you when you have 15 seconds left, or 30 seconds left and 15 seconds left. And when your time is up, he'll say time, and then you'll be expected to finish that In fairness, I would ask you not to ask to speak again until everyone else has had an opportunity. We're gonna try to hear from everybody. If we can't hear from everybody, we may have to continue this meeting, to continue forward on this meeting. But we want to make sure it's as fair as possible and that we give everyone an opportunity to be heard. So I hope that was clear. And unless there's anything else from the council, I will now open the public hearing into Ordinance 2020-27, an ordinance amendment to add Chapter 104, Flag Policy. And I believe the firsthand I saw up was Colonel Dolchinos. If you can unmute Paul.
Thanks, Mike. I just have a question before we start. I did, later on, there is an agenda item to discuss specifically the Black Lives Matter flag. Is that gonna have a public commentary on that? I address all that at this time and out of the way.
Okay. So that's a good question, and maybe we can restart Paul's clock on this. But I want to, you should feel free to talk about both. I know they're pretty intertwined. When we, if we can get through the public hearing on this, at that point, depending on how late it is, I would keep it to one comment per person, each comment being three minutes. For the public hearing on this ordinance, we're gonna keep it to three minutes per person, but you can cycle through and ask as many times as you want.
Do you want to name the chair?
Yes.
Yeah.
We can mute other folks. And Paul, please, go ahead.
Okay. I'll knock them both out at the same time. Just have to reiterate once again, the Barrington United Veterans Council believes all black lives matter, not just the ones that are victims of police brutality, but also the lives of victims of gang violence and criminality, the lives of first responders, and the lives of service members. However, we do not support national or local organizations that support all this, including want to defund law enforcement or engage in violence to promote Marxist ideology. So we feel it's a time to heal. Let's stop flying divisive partisan political banners over our Veterans Memorial. Flying unauthorized banners creates a slippery slope. One man's flag civil right heritage, another man's symbol of hate. The town council should be not in a position to be arbiters of what free speech. In addition, town resources should not be used to promote partisan ideology. Black Lives Matter is more than just a value statement. It's a brand slogan of a national organization with local affiliates. They raise funds, they support political causes, they endorse political candidates. The town has essentially provided for political advertising for BLM since September 2020, right through the general election, and to include that the town hall was being used as an early polling place while that flag was flying over it. When you display the BLM flag, you have to accept the baggage that comes with it. Six months of rioting, over 40 deaths, thousands of injuries, and $2 billion in damages. You cannot excuse the actions of any group's extremists. For example, let's take another value statement, "Make America Great Again." It's aspirational. However, after watching individuals waving MAGA banners storming the Capitol, no one would recommend that we display that flag now. The primary function of our elective officials should be to represent the interests of all its citizens, not cater to special interest groups in or outside of our community. We need to keep national politics from corrupting good local town ordinance. When I worked with Mike Carroll on the planning board, our votes were in agreement 90% of the time, and we were very respectful for each other's views. Veterans see themselves as the guardians of the American flag. My most recent letter to the editor recounted the heroics of Sergeant William Carney, a former slave who lost his life in battle to save our nation's flag. His actions, he became the first African American to receive the memorial actions. So you can empathize with us, how flying certain banners under the flagpole can be a very vocal issue for us. The American Legion for years has led the fight to amend the constitution to prevent flag desecration, to veterans' treatment of the flag as more an expression of speech. It is a flag that will be draped across our coffins and presented to our next of kin if we die. If you have served military, if you haven't served in the military, you probably wouldn't understand. The closest analogy that I would think of is how a Jewish person would see in the public play of a slaughter, or how African American might feel when he sees the flying of a counter flag. I represent a group of Vietnam veterans, many who've served in Barrington law enforcement, who, when they returned from Vietnam, were treated poorly and spit upon. There were no parades, no words or praise, or even expressions of gratitude. Those are scars they have today. With the town's decision to unilaterally fly the BLM flag over the memorial, we feel like they are being spit all over again. If we really want to keep an inclusive community, let's start by respecting the feelings of those who have sacrificed much to defend it. That's why we are advocating for the town council to adopt a non-political flag policy that agrees to flying just the three flags, the state, town, and MIA flags. Thank you.
Time. Okay. Thank you. I believe there are, Jim, you tell me, is...
I think the next person up was Sarah Giordino.
Okay. Ms. Giordino, please.
Can we ask people who are not speaking to turn videos and mics off?
Yeah, it gets distracting. That's for the panelists, the attendees, for the panelists, if we can all turn our mics off.
Okay. So my name is Sarah Giordino. I'm a Barrington resident. I am a lesbian. I have a partner who's non-binary. To simplify this, we're known as homosexuals, and we're a rainbow family. My partner is a veteran. They were trained in East Providence. They served in the Coast Guard as a reservist for eight years. They were recalled during 9/11. When they were close to getting killed in the port, their CO officer could not, their CO could not contact me because there was, you know, the "don't ask, don't tell" policy. And if I would have been revealed as a spouse, as a partner, my partner, my veteran partner, would have been, had a dishonorable discharge. And so that's the reality for us. There's talk about ideology and politics in these flags. I want to specifically talk about the rainbow flag that is also being considered not allowed to be flown. We were born this way. It's not an ideology. And the rainbow flag symbolizes diversity, inclusivity. It's not a lifestyle, it's not a promoting tool. And it's offensive to us to see that our neighbors have, keep the poll, keep politics off the poll signs on the lawns, when I know that this is about politics. This is about not accepting who we are. And I want to take an opportunity to say just how much of a problem Barrington has. I learned before we moved here, two years before we moved here, that a teen was assaulted in the high school. An LGBTQ teen was assaulted in the high school, the issue was swept under the rug. And if we would have known, we would have never moved here. The family was forced away. This summer, a member of our community, someone who grew up here, was called Faggot on County Road. And just the other day, a person, my good friend, who was a babysitter since my partner is tending to their brother, brother who is having open heart surgery. That person was stopped by a police officer driving home to Providence after taking care of my kids, and stopped and interrogated because they are gay. Because they don't, they were asked, "What are you doing here?" So they were targeted because of that. So all I need to say is that this community has a humongous problem. This is one of them. And I ask you, the council, everybody, to take this very, very seriously, because there's many, many people watching. This is, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
President Carroll, I think Giovanni Chichion is next.
Okay, please, if you can unmute him. Mr. Chichion, please. Go right ahead.
Thank you. Sorry, I lost myself on the screen now, so I can't tell how to turn my video on. I apologize. I'll try to do it without the video. So my name is Giovanni Chichion. I'm the chair of the Stephen Hopkins Center for Civil Rights, and an attorney here in town. I've been an advocate nationally for many years for civil rights, criminal justice reform, equity for racial minorities, LBG, LGBTQ persons, and others from the system is or has in the past been less than fair. The Hopkins Center has been asked to investigate and analyze issues relating to the constitutionality of the placement of political flags on the town hall flagpole. My comments here are not an indication of my position on the content that I'll be discussing, only the legal implications of the prior actions of the town and the proposed ordinance. In short, we are of the opinion that, one, the prior actions of the town in deciding to fly a flag that many view as political speech without proper process was improper; two, that those portions of the proposed ordinance that give the town manager full discretion as to what flags may be flown are also improper under the controlling legal precedent, Shertliff v. Boston; and because, three, because the ordinance provides no guidance, no consistent rationale as to what is permitted and what is not, the council will quickly run afoul of legal precedent that makes clear that you may not make a decision based on content without offering equal protection to all citizens. Government speech is not subject to the First Amendment, but the doctrine does not give a town free rein to engage in one-sided political speech. So we acknowledge that the guiding decision in the First Circuit, Shertliff, gives the town a fair amount of discretion when it comes to government speech, but Shertliff is not a free pass. The town must have a consistent and fair process, and the town cannot use Shertliff as a license to engage in political speech. Imagine for a moment that the town manager or the town council had decided, as the current informal policy or the proposed ordinance would permit, to fly a flag in front of town hall and in every school that said "Make America Great Again" in the weeks leading up to the last election. It's not a Trump flag, and it is not representative of any specific candidate or organization in a technical sense. It's just a slogan that on its face, no one could really object to. Who here doesn't want our country to be great? Who here doesn't believe that black lives matter? Nonetheless, I would guess that many citizens would feel strongly that a MAGA flag was an indication of the support of the town government for a very specific candidate and his policies. It is my personal opinion that a policy or an ordinance that would allow a MAGA flag to be flown in front of town hall or in front of polling places on Election Day is not something that should be supported. If our current policy or this ordinance allows a BLM flag to be flown, then they allow a MAGA flag to be flown. As we heard last month, there are some who strongly and sincerely believe that the BLM flag is representative of the antisemitism of some of those who support that cause. I have no doubt that the MAGA flag raises the same exact concerns for many of our citizens. Does the town of Barrington really want to contribute to such divisiveness and create such pain for minority groups through its official policies? I would hope that my town is better than that. Setting matters of stability and unity aside...
Thirty seconds.
It is our legal opinion that both our current informal policy and this ordinance as drafted do not meet the standards laid out in Shertliff v. Boston, and both are subject to legal challenge. For these reasons, I would strongly encourage the town to limit the use of flagpoles in the town as described in the first two sentences of Section 104.2, or -2 of the proposed ordinance, and to remove the last sentence of that section and all of Section 104-3 from the proposed ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think Scott Douglas was next.
Thank you very much. I appreciate everyone's bringing the passion and attention to this issue. It's quite clearly a central one to the town. I think I should state from the outset, I speak on my own opinion, I speak as a veteran. My opinions do not reflect the opinion United States government or my current employment as a Navy Reserve officer. So I speak to my own values, my own opinions. But I think that's a good place to start. I do not believe that veterans are the self-appointed guardians of the flag. I believe the flag belongs to all of us, and that as a veteran, I have no special role or entitlement to tell you what you can or cannot say. And so I would rather say that I fully support the fact that the town manager, Jim Cunha, and no surprise to me, a Navy veteran, who probably remembers the sailor's creed and about its last line, "committed to excellence, the fair treatment of all," saw that it was a wise move to take the leaderships up, to fly the flag, and take us forward as a community. I think it's appropriate, now that we consider another ordinance, to routinize that and bring these conversations out in the open. These conversations are healthy. I fully support Mr. Brier's logic, that it's entirely correct that it is no dishonor to fly another banner beneath the US flag, or else there would be no provision in the flag code to do so. I hope you'll consider many options to including the BLM flag for the entire month of February, which the federal government recognizes as Black History Month, and the rainbow flag at some and many points in the coming year, and perhaps a flag celebrating the 19th Amendment, if we could find one or one could be made. And that might be an appropriate challenge for the town to do, to come up with nonpartisan flags that celebrate the same things, the same themes that the federal government designates entire months for, Women's History Month, et cetera. Look, veterans are simply a part of our larger society. We're not special. We have our own dedication, we have done our own duty. But the respect that is given to me is one that is freely given by society, does not entitle me to turn around and demand silence from society out of respect for what I fought for. I fought for that flag out of my own conviction, not because it gave me a privilege to tell others that they could not say anything in their hearts in my presence when that flag was raised. So please, don't choose silence in my name. Understand that there's quite a bit of diversity among the veterans' opinions. I ask us to take the harder path now and adopt a flag code that will allow us to talk this process out, because I believe a more perfect union is always a work in progress and would be better served by a flag code that forces us to talk to each other and forthrightly state what best represents most of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe Luis Sloan is next, and then Lisa Deth.
Okay. Ms. Sloan, please, go ahead.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
We started this meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, speaking about justice for all. Indeed, pushing for the idea of equality and justice for all, which is what is what both the rainbow flag and the Black Lives Matter flag stand for, is perhaps the most American thing you can do. And I'm so proud to live in a community where the town council supports these patriotic ideals. I'm not a veteran myself, but if I want to wrap myself in the flag, I can sure try. My father was a fighter pilot. My grandfather was in the cavalry, and my sixth great-grandfather wrote that radical equality document, The Declaration of Independence. I believe that the majority of the town is with the town council in recognizing the reality that America is still striving to achieve those founding ideals and still falling far short as my forebearer, who spoke of equality but owned his own black children as property, surely did. The rainbow flag celebrates the LGBTQ community whose equal rights are to this day still under attack. The Black Lives Matter flag acknowledges the clear reality that our culture and our law enforcement agents still too often act as if black lives are less precious than white ones. I moved here to Barrington five years ago from a racially extremely diverse and extremely LGBTQ-friendly community in Brooklyn. I figured Barrington would not be Brooklyn, but that it would be fully in the 21st century that racism and homophobia would not be openly displayed. I was very wrong. The frequency of racial, ethnic, religious, and homophobic slurs my son heard at school has been shocking to me. Kids don't jump down the throat of the bigot here as they would have in our previous community. Meanwhile, literally since this past August, a friend's husband was called the N-word by a neighbor, anti-Black Lives Matter hate mail was sent to a black neighbor, and my thirteen-year-old black guest, one of my son's best friends from Brooklyn, was profiled twice in one afternoon. Not one but two Barrington parents felt perfectly comfortable last summer vociferously objecting on the middle school Facebook page to a free workshop for white residents on anti-racism. What? I don't think that this is the way most of Barrington thinks, but there is not yet a culture of diversity and inclusion here, so bigotry, both outright and subtle, too often gets a pass and a platform. And because of this, Barrington is both failing its residents from traditionally marginalized groups, and it's falling behind. I've talked to incredibly successful people of color who don't.
Seconds.
I myself pulled my son out of the Barrington schools in part because of the climate. He went from the number one public school Barrington to the number one private one wheeler where diversity and inclusion are front and center. Barrington is beautiful and can do much better, and I applaud the town council for their moral leadership. Equality isn't political, it's patriotic. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I believe you said Ms. Daff. Dr. Daff, please.
Hi, Lisa Daff, Five Robbins Drive. Um, I've lived here for twenty-two years. Um, I am here just to support the um United Veterans Council on their proposal to only fly the four core flags. I think there's other ways that the town can display um the Black Lives Matter and other flags.
Good shit.
Excuse me. Um, uh, you know, in the town, and there's other things I think that can be done. I I think uh there's ways to bring the community together, and I've heard a lot of talk. I haven't seen a lot of the action. I think there are things that that could be done and um I have ideas on that, but um I also in just not in support of the proposals as written, I think they lack very specific criteria. Um, they are not transparent. Um, in schools, we have rubrics for things like this, so that way you can easily kind of take a look at what made you deny one person's request versus approving somebody else's request. It's very arbitrary, and it is a policy that really just puts in writing what y'all have uh done uh leading up to this. I think if you have a more specific criteria where things are very transparent, that it won't lead to continued issues between flags, who are you gonna fly, for how long, and it it really is arbitrary up to the people who are making those decisions. I don't think that's the really the way, right way to be inclusive and bring the community together. I think it's just a matter of time before another flag like a pro uh life flag or a pro-choice flag is flown, and people object to that. If if you say yes to one and not to the other, what what is the criteria on that? There is nothing specific in the proposal, so I I really don't support the proposal as written. Um, I think if you're gonna pass an ordinance, you need to have some criteria or some type of rubric in order to make this a very transparent uh process, because right now it's not transparent, and what I have found in serving on multiple boards is that if you don't have transparency, then that's gonna lead to more problems. So I I really uh hope that you reconsider the proposal um and uh maybe, you know, put more into it before you want to pass something. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next would be William Jacobson.
Mr. Jacobson.
Okay, there we go. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, hi, thank you. Uh, William Jacobson, I have lived in Barrington for approximately twenty-five years. First time I've ever involved myself in town politics in any degree. Uh, I um am a law professor at Cornell. I also run a foundation based in Barrington that focuses on free speech issues on camp, mostly on campuses. And I, as the prior speaker, uh was concerned, I am very concerned about the situation as it's developed from a legal point of view. I believe the resolute, the uh ordinance that's in front of you has the categorical statement in the first sentence that municipal flag polls and flag raisings are forms of government speech. I think the better word there would be can be forms of government speech. It's a very fact-specific analysis, including under a decision that just came down in the First Circuit seven, eight, nine days ago. Uh, and I think the facts as they would present themselves appear that this ordinance is actually a pretextual, that it is intertwined, as has been commented, with the desire to fly the Black Lives Matter flag. In fact, that's the next agenda item. If this ordinance were to pass tonight, presumably, the next thing that would happen was that the Black Lives Matter flag would be uh flown for thirty-one days. And I think you've set yourself up in a very unenviable legal position uh to defend this because this comes across, and I and I don't mean any disrespect, just as an outsider looking in who normally doesn't get involved in town politics, that this may be pretextual and that this isn't actually government speech, that it is the views of certain people um who are expressing themselves because they have a power over the government, and that's not the same thing. So I think the statement that opens this ordinance i- is not actually accurate and leaves the town open to to legal remedies. I also want to say that I have been studying and following the Black Lives Matter movement and writing about it since two thousand and fourteen during the Ferguson riots. Most people only heard of Black Lives Matter in late May and June of last year after the George Floyd death, but I have followed them from their inception. And while it absolutely is true that the majority of people who follow that movement have goodwill in their hearts, we cannot ignore the history of that movement. And the history of the movement is that prior to two thousand and twenty, it was a movement founded on by a self-avowed Marxist, is a movement tightly intertwined with anti-Zionist groups. In fact, one of the founders of Black Lives Matter visited a member of the uh Popular Front for the Liberation of Palestine um in two thousand and sixteen, and I think that the notion that Black Lives Matter means only one thing, as expressed in the resolution that's coming later, is not true for everybody. It's not true for everybody. Some people see that and they think about the Orthodox Jews um who've been attached attacked in New York City under the banner of Black Lives Matter. The riots in Los Angeles this summer specifically targeted the Orthodox Jewish section of the city. Look it up. Um, at in Wisconsin, Jewish synagogues were
Thirty seconds.
Were targeted during the riots. So while Black Lives Matter, yes, as a hashtag is certainly true, I mean, I think everybody on this call agrees with that. That flag means different things to different people. It's not as simple as you have presented it, nor do I believe the law is as simple as you have presented. I'd ask you to defer any uh vote on this tonight.
Thank you, sir.
I believe next is David Mail.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, sir.
Thank you very much. Good evening, councilors and other leaders. Thank you for your leadership. I'm David Mail, and I live at number one Tallwood Drive. I'm a retired Protestant minister, and I want to speak in favor of the flag policy. I really believe that this moment in our town's history, in our nation's history, calls us to step up and to speak out and to make space for all Barrington residents to be heard and to thrive. We have friends and neighbors in Barrington who are hurting, who have quietly and sometimes not at all quietly been bullied and silenced and diminished. Why would we tolerate this? Ellie Vizel, Holocaust survivor, Nobel Prize winner, speaks of the perils of indifference. He writes, "It's seductive to look away to avoid rude interruptions of our work, our dreams, our hopes. It is, after all, awkward and troublesome to be involved in another person's pain and despair." Indifference, he says, benefits the bully, never the bullied. And he says, "In denying their humanity, we betray our own." The flag issue points to something deep within us that is to be addressed. It's not a political issue. It's a human rights issue. And it's past time for people like me to align ourselves with our neighbors who seek to fully express themselves, to fully determine their own agency among us, and to expand the tent under which we all live together. Indifference is not an option. Let's empower the town council, who we have duly elected, to create an inclusive, dynamic policy that says to all of our people in this community, "I see you, I hear you, and I value you." Thank you very much.
Thank you, Reverend Neil.
Uh, next would be Enrique Sanchez.
Sanchez, please.
I'm gonna have to promote him to a panelist because he's using an older form of Zoom. He should be on now. There he is.
Please go ahead, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, everyone here uh for uh having this town hall tonight. I really appreciate the the time to uh address uh this issue, this uh initiative that you're all going to vote on tonight. Um, I am from the city of uh of Providence. I currently live at Johnston, Cranston, but I'm very well-connected and have a lot of friends in the Barrington community. Uh, as you know, the Barrington has been a a site of, you know, protests and 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 um uh lots of uh, you know, uh good, good uh protests uh over the last year. I also, I'm here representing uh the BLM RI PAC uh that was recently formed this past year. Uh, I am the current Latinx Outreach Coordinator uh for the BLM RI PAC. Uh, we uh uh I'm here representing the Red Island BLM PAC uh in support of keeping the the BLM uh a flag up uh in front of the uh the town, the city hall. Um, I just want to make my points across here. That flag represents diversity. It represents black lives, uh brown lives, LGBTQ plus lives, uh lives of people who have been marginalized, who have been forgotten for many years. Uh, BLM stands for and is with uh all types of people, you know, black, brown, white people. Uh, as you know, uh on these protests this past year, these past uh several months, it hasn't just been black people or brown people. It's been black, brown, white uh people of Asian ethnicity marching and protesting in the streets. This means that we are making progress. We are making progress towards a more diverse nation that includes a more multicultural, multiracial uh uh sets of beliefs that represents all types of people, uh different backgrounds. This idea that BLM represents Marxism and communism and socialism and the support of Palestine, people under the BLM uh uh support do do not understand these topics for the most part. They don't understand that these issues here, these 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 beliefs is not is is not represented here in at the national level. To maybe to some people in the movement, uh they're trying to hijack it, they're trying to antagonize it. The same thing we see with right-wing groups, right? Right-wing conservative groups. There's always this this set of of antagonism and hijacking of a movement.
Thirty seconds.
That the idea, the idea of that that the BLM movement is a Marxist or leftist, that that's that's all, that's not what BLM stands for here in the in in the local and national level. Uh, like I said, we are in support of the flag staying up. Uh, we are also in support of veterans, uh veterans who uh who are also in support of of the flag and uh like I said, we also represent uh, we we support uh all types of flags that are uh Thank you, sir. Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you.
I believe Karen Raznick is next.
Ms. Raznick.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Hi, my name is Karen Raznick. I live at Nine Meadow Circle. I've been a resident of Barrington for almost twenty years. I am a public school teacher in Providence. I've been a teacher there for thirty-one years. Um, I also happen to be Jewish. And the Black Lives Matter flag offends me because I know it was founded and by a racist movement and it offends me that it's flying in our town, which is supposed to be inclusive of everybody, and I feel that it being there is not um it it's it's just offensive to me. And while I do support every single culture in this world, and I am respectful of everybody because that was the way I have I've been raised, um I don't think that flag pole is the right place to do it. And I know we have banners on the high school fences and in in many places in town, and I think that there's another place that we could fly flags um where it's not offensive. Maybe we could have another flag pole. I mean, we spend enough money in this town on electric um car chargers, and there's got to be some kind of funding where we could find another place where everyone could be able to fly a banner or a flag um in another, you know, in a a secondary place. Um, I agree with everything William Jacobson said. And um that I I just, you know, as a resident of this town, if I'm offended and I know other people are offended, that's not what Barrington should be about, so we have to find a neutral ground. And maybe there needs to be another flag pole or another place to there. Everybody can share their opinions.
Thank you.
Next would be Ken Schneider.
Mr. Schneider, please. Okay, you can hear me, I'm assuming? Yes, we can. Yes, okay. Uh, so I I live in East Providence. I do not live in Barrington, but I do believe that Barrington is at a big crossroads right now. And I want to tell you a little story to tie things together. We had a company in East Providence uh that was a massive polluter. And we fought that company for eight years as neighbors. And I think you're starting to realize, you know, with this, the the talk about the asphalt plant coming to Seconk, how you can almost relate to this. So what I kept on hearing for eight years was this company could never locate in Barrington because their zoning laws are good. They're tight, they're narrow. And I can't tell you how many times I heard that, and I regretted that I lived in East Providence. Um, I had wished that, you know, a long time ago that we did move to Barrington, you know, with our children, but, well, we didn't. So what I'm asking you to do is keep up that reputation that I always heard about Barrington and keep this ordinance very, very narrow to the government flags because I believe that uh anything else is opening up a very slippery slope. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, next would be David Scarpino.
Mr. Scarpino, please.
Thank you very much for giving me the time to speak. Excuse me. I'm opposed to the uh to the ordinance for the following reasons. You know, flag poles should only be used to fly American state and city flags. Once the town council allows the flag pole to be used for advocacy, regardless of how noble or righteous the council believes the cause, the flag pole becomes a platform for free speech. But it has to be free speech for all causes, not just as Councilman Breyer says, for the values of the town council. That's what this flag is about. Wording use of a flag pole to to some groups or causes based on the political ideology of the council limits free speech. No one's denying BLM of their right to advocate for their beliefs, but town property, including flag pole, is not the appropriate place. We have to stop. We have to stop talking past each other, putting up symbols, arguing on Facebook about the merits of BLM. There was an advocacy group for opposing the flag on Facebook. And I have to tell you, all the comments are hateful coming by people who are opposed. We're racists. We're narrow-minded. We have to be watched. This is the kind of hate that is engendered on both sides. No one has a, no one has a hold on hate. It goes both ways. And I think putting up flags is very divisive. And if you want to make something happen profoundly, why don't people sit down and talk to one another? Do something that's useful. Do something that's good for the community instead of parading around with symbolism that has very little meaning, is very shallow, and gets nothing done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Scarpino.
Next would be Heather Felix.
Ms. Felix, please.
Sorry, this is Stephen Felix, her husband. I'm just on her Zoom. But I would like, I don't have anything nearly as eloquent as many of the people before me have prepared, but I'm here to speak in support of the ordinance because it has been, you know, somebody at the very beginning referenced the fact that our council members are elected officials that should represent us. I think that person said they should represent everyone. And they do represent the town, but they can't make decisions that make everyone happy. And the reason these people were elected was on the basis of their vision for Barrington, their values, and their stances on meaningful issues. So I, for one, support the ordinance for these council members to make these decisions and to push Barrington into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Felix.
Next is Vince Ricker.
Mr. Ricker, please.
Hey, how are you? I wanted to, I've lived in Barrington for over 16 years and I've been, you know, a Black person for much longer. And one of the things that I've noticed is that this could be about one flag and this could be about driving people crazy about one flag. But what we're really talking about is whether or not we want to elect them to an office, whether or not we want to, when we elect them to an office, do we feel that they can make the kind of choices that we want to make to to help move the town forward? And do we want to have a choice? Because the absence of choice is no choice. And it's sort of like children should be, you know, not, you know, not, they shouldn't speak up until they're spoken to. And you should only do what you've been told to do. And what we really, when it really comes down to is the fact that I can talk for hours about what I've seen in this town. And I can, you know, I can speak to the fact that when faced with people with opinions different in line about different racial equality issues, I invite them to go take a walk with me. And we walk, take a walk on the beach and we talk about it and we figure out what the problem is. Because that's what we're supposed to do. We're not supposed to be this Facebook keyboard mafia. But I do not, in this case, want to pontificate any longer than is necessary. I would like to voice my support for the ordinance that would allow the town council to vote the council's conscience because that is who we elected. And if there's another council that has another conscience, then those people are voted in to do their work. I appreciate the time and thank you for your work.
Thank you, Mr. Ricker.
Next would be Hermio Augustin.
Mr. Augustin.
Hello.
Hello. Mr. Augustin, yes, sir, we can hear you.
Hi, this is Patty Ann Hermineo Augustin. We live at 616 County Road. We've been residents of Barrington for almost 21 years. We're just chiming in to voice our opinion that we believe that we should have an apolitical flag policy, keep politics off the pole. I have no problem with private citizens having signs on their front lawn. But I would like to voice my support for William Jacobson's comments, Mr. Scarpino, and Paul D'Arcino. I believe that we need to keep politics off the pole. So we've been corresponding with some of the council members. We've gotten lectures on systemic racism. I don't feel that Barrington is a racist town. And we've raised two children here. We don't think that they've had any incidents where they've run into racist situations. I think that, you know, to apply the logic of the Black Lives Matter flag that is being flown not representing the national BLM, I could use that same logic and say that, well, I have a local MAGA crowd and I'd like to fly a MAGA flag on the same pole because it's a good intentioned MAGA crowd and it has nothing to do with any negative connotations that go along with MAGA. So I just believe that there should be an apolitical flag policy in the town.
I'm a veteran myself. And I also have been a soccer coach, a baseball coach, and more importantly, a assistant scout master in Barrington. And I really do feel that we need to remove these value statements from our flags and from any government property that we have in town. I don't think we need to be reminded, you know, of our values about Black Lives Matters. I think we all, anybody on this call, anybody in this meeting will always tell you, and I think they all believe, that Black Lives do matter.
Thirty seconds.
All lives matter. And I think we ought to keep our political statements off our government buildings and our flag poles. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next would be Susanna Holloway or Hollow something. I can't tell.
Hi, Susanna Holloway. Thank you. I live at 64 Fails and I would like to speak in support of the proposed ordinance. I think it would be wonderful for our town. I agree with Louise that I think it would be an expression of equality, which is not mere politics, but it is patriotism. And that's what our country stands for. Equality is just one of our founding principles. We have tried very hard for very many years to live up to it. We have a lot of work to do. But to be reminded of the work we need to do to really have equality for everybody, I think is a good thing. So I am so thankful that we're able to have this debate tonight and that the town council has brought this to our attention and has given us this space to talk to each other. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Holloway.
Next is Judy Dill.
Ms. Dill, please.
Hello, do you hear me?
We can hear you now. Yep. Oh, you just muted yourself. Please unmute yourself. There you go.
Okay. All right. I want to go on record that I believe the Black Lives Matter flag should not be flown along with the American flag in Barrington. I live in Providence, but I, my daughter lives in Barrington and I'm in and out of Barrington quite a bit. Every time I go by the flag there, I get a little knot in my stomach as a Jew. And I believe that politics doesn't belong on the pole. Black Lives Matter organization is a controversial organization and has been said before, it does have strong Marxist and anti-Semitic elements to it. One of the things they do support is something called the BDS movement, Boycott, Divest, and Sanction Israel, which works to eliminate Israel economically, academically, and culturally by these boycotts and divestments and sanctions. I would like to put a a check and emphasis in for what they do in the town of Warren. This hasn't been brought up yet. That they only fly the American flag, the state flag, and the town flag, and I think the POW MIA flag do. Again, I consider, would consider having another place in town on non-governmental property to have all organizations be able to fly their flags for a limited amount of time. So everybody could have their share of what they believe in and what they want to publicize. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dill. Ariana, let's have her hand raised. Ariana?
Hi, thank you for letting me speak again. I'd like to start by saying that we urge you guys to pass the flag policy as proposed. And I am so proud of this town council and Jim, photos to you for raising the flag. I know there was some controversies on how it was done, but I think it's very important that it was done. And I am very saddened to see that the Veterans Page of the town of Barrington has been using to promote and push such critical views of individual people. And the reason why I am bringing this up because in the beginning of the talking, one of the people that spoke was a representative from the Army Veterans here in town and saying that somebody posted a screenshot that slandered his name. And what that said, that screenshot said, I felt very personal because it was mentioning that last month, that the council has been, and I'm paraphrasing it, the council has been paralyzed by activists trying to extort apologies from the town council members for their whiteness. Over the past six months, they accomplished nothing but hire a diverse equity and inclusion consultant for $25,000 of our tax money and of course, the endorsement of a Marxist banner over the Veterans Memorial. This is important. This really matters. And I was the person asking for the apology or as they are calling, extorting people for apologies. And that is also not okay. So it's important to understand that Black Lives Matter is not political, but statements like this are extremely political. The voice of the town council is political. It should not be apolitical. We voted based on our political likeness. So you're representing what we voted for. However, Black Lives Matter is a civil and human rights issue, not a political statement. While we appreciate, all of us appreciate the service of many veterans that are against the Black Lives Matter being flown into town, you cannot be using that to promote one political view or the other.
Thirty seconds.
So the idea that Black people have to behave in some kind of heroic way to be valued, is it still a very colonial mentality and the epitome of racism? I'm sorry, but I think the obedient Negro days are over and they should be celebrated. And people should feel more welcome when they come to town, they see the flag being on the flagpole, on government property. That means that my Black boyfriend can feel more welcome coming to town and maybe someday he won't follow those shows anymore. And our neighbors who are victims of hate crimes and discrimination know that we have their backs and we will not tolerate this kind of behavior here anymore. Thank you so much for your time.
Howard Brown is next.
Mr. Brown, please.
Thank you. I'm speaking on behalf of Rhode Island Coalition for Israel. I'm the executive director. The organization is statewide. It's a grassroots organization of Christians and Jews whose goal is to support the American alliance with Israel and to fight antisemitism. There's been mention of Black Lives Matter movements, antisemitism as some kind of a theory, if not something that we're really actually seeing. And I want to make sure that people are aware that the antisemitism of Black Lives Matter movement has surfaced here in Rhode Island very recently. And I'm just going to tell you about it as briefly as I can. There is an accusation. It's called a blood libel that Jews and Israel are responsible for police brutality against minorities in America. It has surfaced widely within the Black Lives Matter movement in cartoons, in Facebook posts. In fact, you can see one on the East Bay Citizens for Peace Facebook page claiming that Jews and Israel are responsible for police brutality against minorities in America. It has even gotten to Congress. You hear it from people who just ran in the last election from the far left that Israel has got responsibility for killing American blacks and non-people of color. Now, there's a video, which we will make responsive, we'll make available to anyone who wants to see it, of 100 people representing the Black Lives Matter movement in Providence on October 23 of 2020, chanting and marching and saying, "From Palestine to the USA, all the cops have got to pay." Now, there is no connection between police enforcement against terrorism in Israel and American police problems in the United States. But it is a political lie and it is antisemitic.
Thirty seconds.
Okay. So I want everyone to understand that we're not talking about a theory. The antisemitism of the Black Lives Matter movement is here in Rhode Island and there's been at least one documented march chanting that antisemitic blood libel. That's the problem with it's kind of an ordinance. You don't know what you're buying into when you put up the ordinance, the flag, of a partisan movement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Deborah Neiser.
Ms. Neiser, please.
Unmute. Hi, my name's Deborah Neiser. I'm at 30 Adelaide Avenue. I agree with the keep the politics off the pole, Mr. Jacobson, the gentleman that just spoke. I'm also the proud great-granddaughter of the man who helped form the state of Israel. He worked very hard with Golda Meir. He worked hard with Moshe Diane and with the President of the United States back in the day and ran and started one of the Jewish newspapers that is still in production today. The reason I'm speaking today is not only to say I support the fact that the flag should only be raised and on that pole, that are the traditions of what has been set forth. The American state, the town, and the POW flag, and I strongly believe this. The other day, I innocently signed a petition letter from Mike Stenhouse to all of you members who I believe you received, along with many other people. I'm not a big emailer. And I, about three minutes later, received an email from Mr. Breyer with a statement that really started to become argumentative. And I was quite offended. I sent this letter to all of the town council. I did not expect a reply back. I was only letting you know that I supported the fact that politics should stay off the pole. And I really did not want to get into any kind of exchange of emails, etc. I have better things to do than to sit and chickenpeck at my terrible emailing and my grammar in in my emailings. And we talk about being bullied, and I felt very bullied. And we talk about being bullied, and I felt very bullied by you, Mr. Breyer. I felt very bullied by the fact that I had to ask you to stop harassing me. I had a very nice conversation with Mr. Carroll regarding this, and that when a letter is sent to all of the town council members, that you don't need to answer back, we can certainly bring it up at a town council meeting. I was president of a board, I, I know that when a, we received a letter as a board, it was not incumbent upon me personally to respond to that letter, other than to present it to my board, and we came up with a proper response. I think Barrington's going down a slippery slope with this also, I agree. I think that the legal battles that will ensue at some point with this will be outrageous. And I think that, Mr. Breyer, you want to talk about apologizing and, and whatnot, I think when I have to get to a point to ask you to leave me alone was despicable. And I am quite upset, I don't know if your town council, your members knew this, I know that Mr. Carroll did, and I deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nizer. Trinky Brookner.
I'd, I'd like to speak, please. I'm, I'm very sorry that you felt bullied, and also very sorry that you have the expectation that we won't respond to you, but I respond to every constituent who emails me, and I had no idea that you didn't want to reply when you emailed us.
Trinky Brookner, please.
Hi.
Hi, I'm sorry, but, Mr. Breyer, it, it, you didn't have to. I, I sent this letter.
I, I muted, Ms. Nizer. Trinky.
Hi. I live at 4 Ellis Street, and I speak for myself, and I also represent Barrington Interfaith Partners. We started this meeting very nicely, I thought, with a flag flying on our screen, and I know that the town councilors stood up and said the pledge, and I also did. I stood in my room by myself and recited the Pledge of Allegiance. I believe our flag is a political system, a political symbol. It represents the political system of our country, and I especially like the way that the Pledge of Allegiance ends. "Our country is one with liberty and justice for all." Unfortunately, we have never attained that ideal, going back to slavery, lynching, Jim Crow, restrictive covenants, police brutality, mass incarceration. It's time for our country and our town to face our history, and I think it's important that we make it plain that black lives do matter in this country, they matter in Barrington, and I hope that you keep the Black Lives Matter flag, as well as the pride, pride flag flying. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Scholz. Mr. Scholz.
Yeah. Hey. Does everyone hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes. I'm Michael Scholz, I'm a Jewish Barrington Democrat, and I support the statement Black Lives Matter, but the movement that uses the name and the flag hanging outside of City Hall is intolerant. It's a partisan political movement boasting equality, demonstrates a serious undercurrent of antisemitism and the vilification of the state of Israel. If we allow this bigoted flag on Barrington public property, we see the residents who say Barrington is for everyone are aligning ourselves with people who see Jews in Israel as the enemy. The Black Lives Matter Charter states that the U.S. justifies and advances the global war on terror via its alliance with Israel. The Black Lives Matter movement aligned itself with BDS, which is the Boycott Divestment Sanctions, which has called for the dismantling of the Jewish state and the right to resist Israel by all means, for example, terrorism. Multiple protests show anti-Israel demonstrations trying to merge what happened to George Floyd to what seemingly happened to Israel due to Palestinians. This movement marches with drawings of Israel soldiers with their knees on Palestinian necks, trying to make this connection. In December 2019, the Black Lives Matter co-founder Patrice Cullors said, "We realize we need to take our Palestinian solidarity a step further." Black Lives Matter L.A. head Melina Abdullah and her daughter have long records of antisemitic ranks and praised the Nation of Islam Louis Farrakhan. Louis Farrakhan has praised Hitler as a great man. He recently called Jews termites and obsessively hates Judaism and Jews. Black Lives Matter movement, six months later, on May 30th, 2020, went to Fairfax, the oldest Jewish community in L.A. Rioters looted the Jewish businesses on Fairfax, five synagogues, three Jewish schools were vandalized. Rioters chanted, "Fuck the police, kill the Jews." To put this in context, not one Jewish business or synagogue was vandalized during the 1992 Rodney King riots in the same area.
Thirty seconds.
Instead of condemning the violence against Jews, it took just two weeks, on June 19th, 2020, for the Black Lives Movement leaders to promote an event in New York City that stated on the poster, "Open to All Minus Cops and Zionists." The event's purpose was to advocate the defunding of the NYPD. Just to put it in perspective, okay? A quote from Martin Luther King, who would have opposed the Black Lives Matter movement, and he disagreed with putting this flag on the pole, he says, "The antisemite rejoices. Any opportunity to vent his malice, the times have made it unpopular in the West to proclaim openly a hatred of Jews. This being the case, the antisemite must constantly seek new forms and forums for his poison. How he must reveal his new masquerade, he does not hate the Jews, he's just an anti-Zionist. And you, my friend, that you do not hate the Jews, you are merely an anti-Zionist. And I say, let the truth ring from the high mountain tops, let it echo through the valleys of God's green earth. Where people criticize Zionism, they mean Jews, and this is God's own truth."
Thank you, Mr. Scholz. Next, we have Jamie Burke. Jamie Burke, please.
Hi, this is Jamie Burke, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, I just want to speak in favor of the proposed flag policy. I think it's great that people think that Barrington doesn't have a racist problem, but it's clear we do, and my black neighbors tell me we do. So I appreciate the flag flying there, and I also appreciate that many people understand it's the sentiment. We are not supporting the Black Lives Matter movement, we are not sending money to the Black Lives Matter movement as a town. This is a sentiment that I think is extremely important, that we reemphasize right now to our residents, because right now, it's just not clear to everyone, and it's important that, that we, we keep our values out there, and I appreciate a town council that has drafted this, and I hope that you will vote in favor.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Emily Altman.
I have to say something.
Ms. Altman.
Good evening. The name is incorrect, this is Howard Voss Altman. I serve as the Rabbi of Temple Albinim here in Barrington. I'm here to offer my support for the town's flag policy, which includes the town council's right to determine what flags, if any, shall fly on the town's flagpole. You've heard this evening from representatives from Rhode Island Coalition for Israel, speaking opposition to the town's decision to fly a Black Lives Matter flag on the pole. I'd like to address these allegations now. First, the Rhode Island Coalition claims to represent Rhode Island's Jewish community. Nothing could be further from the truth. They do not have the support of the Jewish Alliance of Rhode Island, the official representative of Rhode Island's Jewish community, nor do they have the support of Rhode Island's congregational rabbis. In short, this so-called coalition has neither the support of the lay Jewish community nor the religious Jewish community. Second, the coalition's representatives allege that the Black Lives Matter movement threatens Jews, and it has created a blood libel against our community. Once again, this is an outright falsehood. A charge of blood libel has a specific and historic meaning, a false and antisemitic accusation that Jews kidnap and murder Christian children to use their blood to make Passover matzah. Such charges were commonplace for centuries in Europe and led to widespread pogroms against our people. When the Coalition for Israel falsely and hysterically claims a blood libel against the Jewish people, not only spits on the memory of our European ancestors, who genuinely lived in fear of such accusations, it also undermines the struggle against actual antisemites in our midst, those who genuinely, genuinely wish to do us harm. Third, the coalition alleges that the Black Lives Matter movement incites hatred against Israel, and that we live in fear of their protests. Given the rising tide of racism in the last several years, and the number of young black lives murdered by police officers and their surrogates, it seems obvious that Black Lives Matter has a lot more pressing issue to deal with than Middle Eastern politics. But even if some protesters in some cities support justice for the Palestinians, such support could hardly inspire fear in the Jewish community. Indeed, many organized Jewish groups also support justice and peace for the Palestinians. In fact, not a single Jewish life has been lost as a result of Black Lives Matter protests. The issue, of course, has nothing to do with fear in the Jewish community. If the coalition was actually interested in diminishing fear in the Jewish community, they'd be focusing their efforts on rooting out right-wing white supremacists, the ones responsible for the actual murder of Jews in Pittsburgh and San Diego. These are the people that incite legitimate fear in our community, but instead, the coalition spends its days targeting the speech of those who appear to disagree with them about Israel. Finally, the opponents of Barrington's flag policy tell us that they simply want to keep politics off the pole. Well, with all due respect, that horse left the barn a long time ago. Anyone who flies the American flag puts politics on the pole. Any town that flies the POW flag is making a political statement, a statement of support for this most imperfect nation, a statement in support of the military and its soldiers. The Coalition for Israel has no interest in keeping politics off the pole, they simply want to suppress speech they don't like. When the Jewish Alliance sponsors programs about Israel that promotes human rights and religious freedoms, political views the coalition finds dangerous, the coalition representatives stand outside the Jewish community center to protest, or they demand the Jewish Alliance and its sponsorship of political programs. The coalition's claim that it wants to keep politics off the pole is absolute rubbish. Its primary objective is to intimidate those who disagree with them and suppress the speech of those they disapprove of. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening, and I look forward to more discussion about this.
Thank you very much, Ramar. Next, Ms. Carrie Payne. Ms. Payne, please. Ms. Payne.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. I want to thank everybody who's taken the time also tonight to stay on this call and to make their voices heard, I think it's so important. The problem, as I see it, just based on listening to everybody's passionate statements, is that when you fly that BML flag, you have to understand that you are aligning yourself with not just the sentiment, but the organization, as many others have said tonight. And when you do that, you're associating yourself with everything that goes along with that organization, all of its tenants, and all of the tactics that they use to achieve their goals. And again, whether those goals are noble or not, you cannot separate the flag or the sentiment from the organization and its tactics. Its tactics include things like defunding the police. In some of its chapters, they wish to completely abolish the police. They believe it's a healthy thing to dismantle the nuclear family. They create a narrative that the United States as a whole and law enforcement communities are systemically racist. Some of their tactics do include the use of violence, destruction of property, intimidation, and other criminal behaviors. And so when you align yourselves with that organization in the name of all Barrington residents, I would hope that you could see that many people are offended. And these are people that you also represent. These are good people. They're not racist, they're socially conscious, kind, level-headed, common sense residents of this town, but they're offended by your promotion of this particular organization. And it's heartbreaking to watch, because it seems that we're so willing to offend these residents, the military community, the Jewish community, the law enforcement community. These are people that you also represent, and it seems like you're so willing to offend them, but not others. And the other, the other thing that's heartbreaking about it is, in the name of equality, we're proposing an ordinance that gives the town council total and complete control over what flags are going to be flown. In this case, again, you can't separate the flag from the organization. So whatever choices are made by the town council may not always represent all Barrington residents, as we're seeing clearly tonight.
Thirty seconds.
The community is being divided. We certainly all have our own opportunities to put banners or flags or signs in our own yards, use our personal property to make our ideals known, there's plenty of opportunity for that, but putting it in the town square with no real set clear, you know, guidelines for what's going to be flown and what isn't, is going to continue to divide what you're going to decide what causes are moral and what aren't, what causes are worthy and what causes aren't, and it's, it's, I agree, a slippery slope and opening ourselves up for litigation.
Thank you, Ms. Payne. Amy Train.
Thank you. It's actually pronounced Ron, but no big deal. So I want to point out a couple of things. I stand with Louise Sloan and Ms. Brookner in what they have already said. A couple of things I wanted to add, Black Lives Matter, it's a movement, not an organization. It was started due to the death of a young man named Trayvon Martin. It's continued since then, it's trying to point out something that has been going on in this country for way too long, hundreds and hundreds of years of hate towards somebody just because of their skin color. So I agree with the ordinance, but I also agree that we should fly the Black Lives Matter sign. I think there needs to be a lot of research and discussion on the Black Lives Matter movement, because I'm doing my own research, and I'm finding, I'm not finding what the coalition said earlier to be true, that it's antisemitic. In fact, I think the argument was that Patrice Cullors is antisemitic, and she said in 2017 that she would not meet with President Donald Trump, just because, just as she would not meet with Adolf Hitler, because they are both literally the epitome of evil, be it racism, capitalism, sexism, and homophobia. So I don't agree with everybody arguing that they're antisemitic. I think the flag needs to fly, because there are people, especially in the last couple of weeks, as we've seen, who are being not only racially profiled, but they're being sent hate mail, and there are messages that are being sent that are so hateful. So to say that there isn't a racism problem in this town is completely wrong and inaccurate. That's not what I want my kids growing up in. And as far as people arguing, well, you can put your own signs out, my sign was stolen. So don't tell me that I can put my sign out when my sign is stolen. People's signs are being stolen, now they have to fly them in their windows. So I agree with the ordinance, I hope you will do the right thing and vote on it, and I hope that we will continue to let people know that there are people in this town who are being marginalized and deserve to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Phil. Phil.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Mel Byam, I live in Bristol. I am frequently in Barrington, I have a lot of friends there, and I am definitely an ally of Black Lives Matters, and I have been at the protests, and I have stood with the veterans there, next to the flag. My husband is an Air Force Master Sergeant retired, who is also black, and we have both stood there, and we believe that Black Lives Matter, we believe that there should be a choice for people in the town of Barrington to put things on their lawn, but also not be harassed by other neighbors who don't believe that. Yeah. Think that it's not... Think that it's not a political issue at all. Human rights are human rights. They don't have red or blue attached to it, and it's not political. So I ask you to please not make this political and see this as a human rights argument and that Black Lives Matters should be recognized, and I ask you to please fly it for the month of February, and I appreciate your time and your support on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa Lowenstein?
Ms. Lowenstein, please.
Thank you for letting me speak. I support the flag ordinance that defends the town council's power over what goes up on their poll. As Jamie Burke said very eloquently, I support the sentiment of the BLM flag, and I think the dissection of what it represents right now is completely unproductive. Why are we flying it? To disrespect Jews? To attack the police? No. In a moment of national fear and unrest, Mr. Cunha raised it to show our black neighbors that we value and respect them. I'm Jewish, and almost all of my mother's family, people who you would have pictures of on your piano, were murdered by the Nazis in death camps. So if I want to look for antisemitism, I don't have to look very far. We can't go back and pretend that that flag wasn't flown and try and undo and unring a bell. We have to defend a decision that was made for sentiment, and my family has lived in Barrington for 50 years. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Ms. Lowenstein.
Andre.
Andre Smoke, please.
Hello, thank you for letting me speak. I would like to add to the discussion and make a broader argument on why exactly the National Flag Pole is uniquely exclusive rather than inclusive space and uniquely unsuitable for government speech. So I want to start with the following analogy. We all learn in the elementary school that a color can be produced both by addition and by subtraction. By addition, when we take separate opaque paints, apply them and mix them. By subtraction, when we take a full spectrum light and drop a filter in front of it. And by doing that, we cut out, excise, remove certain colors to produce a different color. National flag is such a full spectrum light source, it equally illuminates anyone and everyone who is American. When we recognize or celebrate an idea, a movement, a group, an event in almost any space other than the National Flag Pole, we add colors. That's inclusivity. When we do it on the National Flag Pole, we inevitably drop a filter and excise, exclude everything other than that particular idea, movement, or group. There is no way around it. This symbolism is built in and does not ever go unnoticed. So why exactly a flagpole is inevitably exclusive and hierarchical? It's pretty obvious. It's a one-dimensional structure. It's arranged vertically, and it has an apex. Because of that, one cannot have an arbitrary number of various flags on a pole. Of any two flags, one will always be higher than the other. So practically and reasonably, one can have at most one additional flag at a time on a National Flag Pole. So therefore, that space is A, limited, B, hierarchical. And that is why the flagpole is very much unlike a bulletin board, where unlimited number of messages can equally exist at any given moment in time. And that is exactly what makes this uniquely unsuitable for government speech. Among several implications of these two properties, there is one that is less than obvious. The message conveyed is not only in what is being said by raising certain flags, but also is what is being said by not raising certain other flags. Let me give you a few practical examples. This January 18th, the Martin Luther King flag did not appear on the flagpole. If you maintain that the pole is your speech outlet, why did you choose to remain silent on that day, national holiday, no less? Did you have nothing to say? Moving on to June, June 19th, the Emancipation Flag did not appear last year, and I'm wondering what we're going to do this year. Are we going to lower, are we going to lower the Rainbow Flag for one day and give one day to commemorate the end of slavery in the United States? The problem is resolved simply. There is ample space for your government speech that allows unlimited number of simultaneous messages and without an obvious built-in hierarchy. Any number of equal displays can go on at the same time in town parks, beaches, streets, lawns, libraries, school lobbies, et cetera. A school lobby, for example, can have a pride flag on one wall and the Emancipation Flag on another, and a display of some sort and a flag celebrating the Children's Day all at the same time. You cannot have all that on a single flagpole. I think my position is pretty obvious.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. President, I do not see any other hands raised.
Okay. Seeing, oh, there's one. A mic would like to be heard. Please, sir.
Yes, hello and good evening, and thank you for hosting this discussion. As I listen to the discussion and look at what the town council has done, I get this tremendous feeling that there's a great amount of virtue signaling going on in Barrington. Because if there weren't, if it were more substantive than that, you would be out doing something about the poor state of black education in this state, which is a much bigger problem than anything we've talked about all night. You would be doing something about the horrendous black-on-black crime, 31 people shot in Chicago this weekend, that is happening across America, where eight or 9,000 black, mostly men, but a couple of hundred children get killed every year. So if you want to do something good, if you want to show your support for a particular community, I would suggest you look into doing something in that area. This is a very divisive movement, obviously. You can tell by the dialogue this evening. It is a very slippery slope. It is not fair to fly one flag and not the others. It's not inclusive to fly one flag and not the others. And it, the whole Black Lives Movement, Martin Luther King's philosophy on its head. Black Lives Matter is focused on skin color. Martin Luther King was focused on the content of character. Martin Luther King looked up to American ideals. He supported American ideals. BLM does not. Patrisse Cullors, Alicia Gaza, are both committed Marxists. It is the truth. No, Jacob, don't shake your head. Do some research. They are. Martin Luther King supported, as I said, American ideals. The website of BLM is defund the police, defund the family, and I can give you a quote from Black Lives Matter website that has been taken off, but we're committed to disrupting the Western-provided nuclear family structure by supporting each other as extended families and villages. That's great. Barrington should go that way. Thank you very much.
So let's call on Margaret King, please.
Yeah, Margaret King. Alpha Drown Road, I've lived in town for 50 years, which I think makes it better than just about anybody. I guess I'm one of the old timers. Anyway, I wanted to speak to taking politics off the town council's job. I think that's what this amounts to, and I think that what I am envisioning this evening is the proverbial can of worms. This won't be the last philosophical discussion this had, and I think that the town council has a lot more important things to do in terms of running the town. So I thank you for the opportunity to speak, but I hope that you all will consider that another evening like this with, you know, six more categories is not how you want to spend your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King.
Catherine Quinn?
Ms. Quinn, please.
I'm trying to get in, I'm trying to get in on my phone. I'm trying to unmute my phone by pushing star 69 because I don't have good internet. Anyway, I'm trying to call in from a phone. I can't, my internet doesn't work very well.
You sound fine, Catherine.
Okay, great. I'm going to hang up then. Okay, I just wanted to say my name's Catherine Quinn. I was born and raised in Providence. I love Rhode Island with all my heart. Lived in Barrington for, who cares really? Honestly, it's not relevant. I wanted to share that tonight, it's been very difficult to hear other white people like myself quoting Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. That's not appropriate. It's been very inappropriate for people to liken what's happening here to what happened in the Holocaust. There's something called false equivalency, and that's what's happening tonight. There's a lot of false equivalency going on. It's been very disheartening to hear people really utilizing how many years they've lived in a town as a credential. I've been keeping track because I love to notice patterns, and I've really noticed that most of the people who are against this flag have mentioned and stressed how long they have lived here. I wanted to thank Enrique for coming and speaking as somebody who actually represents the Black Lives Matter movement in Providence. I also wanted to address the rabbi and thank him for speaking because I didn't feel comfortable because I'm a Christian and I'm not a Jew, but I did reach out to the Coalition for Israel because of the post that they put on their website and the emails they've been sending me, which I don't really understand why they're sending them to me, but, and I did watch that footage, and the footage that they're referencing is of a young woman who I personally know, and her name is Brooklyn, and she does not represent Black Lives Matter, and she did not pretend to represent Black Lives Matter in that video in any way. She was protesting police brutality in Providence, and she identified her cause as justice for Jamal. She is interested in defunding the police, and she was extremely angry, and she spoke in a way that I didn't feel was appropriate. I spoke with her about it because I have a relationship with her, because I work with the community, and I actually have relationships with people who are involved in Black Lives Matter and other organizations and actions that are supporting the BIPOC community in Rhode Island. We white people have been heard for far, for so long. You can ignore me, you can let someone else have a chance to have their voice be heard. You can fly a flag that doesn't represent me, Catherine Quinn, for a minute, a hot minute, because for half a century, I've been the person who gets all the privilege, all the attention. So please do fly a flag that's a rainbow flag. Please fly a flag that's a Black Lives Matter flag. That protest was not a Black Lives Matter protest, and I do encourage people to look at that footage. That is propaganda, and the representations that have been made tonight are absolutely not true. I wish that Brother Gary Danzler had been able to come tonight, Sister Bernice, wonderful people who run that organization in Providence, who I know very well. There are, you know, I would venture to guess that none of the names I've mentioned...
Catherine, we just lost you, and your time's up.
We've lost your audio. So at this point, I'm going to call for...
They ignored me and offended me, and I was called at home by one of the town council members, president, harassed, and the town council chose to acknowledge that that was inappropriate and not pursue it. That deeply offended me, and guess what? I came back this month because I'm still participating in the process, and I encourage you to continue doing what it is that you feel is best.
Okay. At this point, I want to take a break, give everyone a short break, and then when we come back, we can talk about whether we want to continue on tonight or continue this meeting. But it is 11:06, let's try and come back at 11:15, please.
And Mr. President, we've got four hands up. I think we've, they've all spoken once before. I think we've gotten all the first-time speakers.
Okay. I want to talk to the council about how we're going to proceed. Okay. Councilor Castell is back. We're all here. Before we continue with the public hearing, I want to get a sense of what's left, and then we'll talk about how we can proceed. I see a total of five hands. Everyone will have an opportunity to speak. If not tonight, then if we continue this to another night, you will have that opportunity. I would say you don't have to take that opportunity. If someone has already said what you intend to say, then it's not necessary. And I don't think, depending on how we go tonight, I don't think we're going to get to the, to discuss and act on flying the BLM flag, which is, we've kind of combined those, but I don't know how many people are going to want to be heard again on that. So it looks like we have a total of five people who want to speak again, and I'll ask the council what your preference is. We could continue this so that we have, everyone has an opportunity to be heard, or we could push through on this. The next question would be, do we move on to the next item? And that would take a vote of the council because it's after 11 o'clock and under our rules, we shouldn't start a new item. That would be Agenda Item 19, unless the council by majority vote agrees that we should continue on. So what's your preference? My suggestion would be that we can push on with this one. If there are five people left, then we can hear what they have to say and then move through this ordinance, and then, and then I'll recommend that we continue the flying of the BLM flag because I expect that we'll have a lot more comment for that, too, to a special meeting that we can call. But we can play that by ear. My recommendation is that we continue forward, though, on the public hearing of this, and how does, how does the council feel about that? Yes, Vice President Ham, please.
And actually, Mr. Carroll, before I speak, I don't know if you can see all of us on your screen. I believe Mr. Breyer had his hand raised for some time, so I defer to him, and then I'll follow up.
Okay, I can't see everybody at once because we moved over to the panelists. So, yes, Jacob.
I was going to agree. I'd like to keep going on this. I think if we move it to another night, we will again have many people who want to speak and be heard and could find ourselves back in this position. I also, and we can discuss it after this item, but I also, assuming we are still able to after passing or not passing an ordinance, would like to also discuss the resolution because it's not only about the Black Lives Matter flag, but also about Black History Month, which will be over at the next meeting.
All right. Okay, now Vice President Ham, please.
So I, I think, I agree with much of what Jacob said. I don't think anybody wants to be here past midnight, which I think inevitably it looks like we're going to be. My only concern with the next agenda item is that there is a temporal aspect on it in terms of, as Mr. Breyer just pointed out, this being Black History Month and there being a proposed ending timeframe on it. So I guess it would depend on to when we... So I, I, I guess it would depend on to when we would um continue uh the rest of the discussion. Um, would play a factor into how I, I decide on that.
Okay, uh, so let's, let's talk first about whether, whether or not it sounds like you're in agreement that we should push through on this agenda item uh for the public hearing. Um, Counselor Conway, do you agree that we should keep going on the public hearing?
I do. I, my only question was if we were to push off the, the next resolution, would it be into the next meeting? And I agree the same thing with Counselor Breyer and Vice President Humm, that we would lose some of the meaning of the resolution.
Yeah. Now, I, I would, I'll be suggest, I mean, let's put it this way. If, if we're in agreement, and I'll ask you, Counselor Castell, do you agree that we should continue forward on the public hearing for?
I can care with, with the comments of Counselors Conway, Breyer, and Humm.
Uh, on the issue of the next agenda item, why don't we do it this way? We will have to take a vote, but we'll, we'll, we'll press through on the public hearing, uh, try to resolve the um, the pending ordinance. Uh, and then we'll kind of take a poll of the audience to see how many folks want to be heard. I think we've kind of combined a lot of things, so I think folks have, have had their say, but we'll, we'll play that by year after this. So I will reopen the, the public hearing and um every, well, I did not.
We have one, one new uh hand raised, panelists?
Yes. I do not have, know how to pronounce your last name, ma'am. I apologize. Pointowski.
Hamel, you need to unmute.
Ms. Pointowski? Okay, uh, currently we can't hear her, so if we can move on to the next person.
Mr. Brown was next.
Mr. Brown. I, I need to pull something up on my screen, which I will read. This was written by um the well-known liberal lawyer Alan Dershowitz. "We must not become complicit in the promotion of antisemitism just because we agree with the rest of the Black Lives Matter program. To support an organization or movement that promotes antisemitism because it also supports good causes is the beginning of the road to accepting racism. Many racist groups have also promoted causes that deserve support. The Black Panthers had breakfast programs for inner-city children while advocating violence against whites. And the Ku Klux Klan organized summer camps for working-class families while advocating violence against blacks. There must be zero tolerance for antisemitism regardless of the race, religion, gender, or sexual orientation of the bigots who promote, practice, or are complicit with it. Being on the right side of one racial issue does not give one a license to be on the wrong side of the oldest bigotry. To give Black Lives Matter a pass on its anti-Jewish bigotry would be to engage in racism. Black antisemitism is as inexcusable as white antisemitism or white racism. There can be no double standard when it comes to bigotry." Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Enrique would be next.
Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you again to the city councilmen and councilwoman of the great city of Barrington, great town of Barrington, for letting me speak again. Um, yeah, I, I, I don't, I honestly don't want to be here. I didn't want to be here tonight. Uh, I have things to do. I have great, I have papers to grade. I'm a teacher at Mount Pleasant High School. I teach black and brown and white students of low-income status, special education math. But uh throughout this whole conversation, throughout these tests from folks who have been opposing uh the, the, the flag, uh, you know, staying at, at city council, town council. It, it's been mostly from folks, right, uh, comparing it with, with uh, you know, antisemitism, uh, you know, connections to BDS, connections to Marxism, et cetera. Um, I, I, I understand, I understand, you know, their, their frustration, their pain, you know, their, 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 their knowledge on, on this issue. But I ask, I ask those folks, I ask those folks, who is, who is really the enemy of, of the Jewish people, of, of the state of Israel? Who, who has committed more atrocities, who has committed atrocities of violence, of hate towards the people of, of the Jewish community, right? Black and brown people, uh, we, we stand solidarity with, with the Jewish people who have suffered for hundreds, for thousands of years uh, under, you know, all types of hate. Uh, obviously, we all know about the Holocaust, the World War Two, Adolf Hitler, the Nazis, you know? And, and I think after that, after those moments, we all woke up, a lot of people woke up around the, around the world, countries, governments woke up. And we promised ourselves that we weren't going to go back that way. So th- this, this talk about comparing the BLM to it as an organization, no, ladies and gentlemen, no. It, it's, it's a movement to promote diversity, equality, uh, justice for all, all, all people, black, brown, and white people. But with an emphasis on black people because yes, black, the black community has suffered for hundreds of years in this country. From lynchings to, to burnings of people, to bombings of, of churches, to executions, to beheadings, to hangings of, of, of the black people here in this country. So please, this, 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 this uh representation of, of the BLM flag, it does not represent an organization, it represents a movement. And I also want to clarify something. There is a BLM R.I. PAC and a BLM uh organization that is.
Three seconds.
Organization is, is headed by Brother Gary and Mark. Uh, we work together, but we're just different organizations, different uh, uh, groups that exist here in Rhode Island. So I just wanted to clear that up. The BLM R.I. PAC is led by Corey Jones. Uh, but um, again, thank you again for letting me be here and uh, and participating in this. I, I, I'm very glad that this is uh being considered and uh I hope the town, the city councilwoman and councilman do the right thing and keep moving Barrington towards a more diverse, more, more equality uh, uh, community that represents all, all Americans. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you.
Karen Raznick will be next.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
So I'm just listening all night long about how divisive this is. And like I said before, the Black Lives Matter sign, uh, flag is very offensive to me. I am not opposed to having a flag that says we honor and respect black lives. I'm not offended, offended by having a sign that says, remember it's Black History Month. Um, but the BLM sign is very offensive. But I'd also like to ask that if we are going to fly a flag for the month of, of um February for Black Lives Matters, uh, March is Developmental Disabilities Month. I have a daughter who is autism and she was educated through the Barrington School System and she's twenty-seven and thriving. I would like to have something flown for that, or at least Autism Awareness Month in April, which is recognized worldwide. Buildings all around the world are shaded in blue. People wear blue shirts. And um I would like an autism awareness flag flown in the month of April. Because I think that we have a huge community in this town with disabilities that need their voice heard. And I think that's very important that we support our children and adults with disabilities who live in town.
Thank you, ma'am.
And that's.
But next would be Mel.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak again. I'd like to talk about why we're here, really. Um, we're here to talk about what's best for the community of Barrington, right? And one of your sisters, one of your community families, a week ago, received a hateful letter from someone that represented MAGA, who is also the person that runs the Trump groups for Rhode Island. So before the Black Lives Matter movement gets painted with a brush that accuses us of being like some of those other organizations, as Enrique said, Black Lives Matter is a movement. The Black Lives Matter PAC is a PAC that, that organized and helped um educate and, and um help bring awareness. I was on the advisory board. I run the Rhode Island Diversity Group and the East Bay Diversity Group. And I'm asking you to please honor this family, especially after the last week that they've had to get a restraint order against this person for walking up their driveway and into their garage to continue to harass them. If you support this family, I'm asking you for the month of February, leave the Black Lives Matter flag up. If you want to put it on the back burner and bring the flag up again next month, I, I, I ask you to please do that respectfully. I think this family needs support right now and after the last two weeks in Barrington, I think we've seen a lot of hate and we've seen a lot of racism and we've seen a lot of ignorance. And I've seen a lot of it tonight on, on this call. And I'm telling you, it's not about race, it's about being human beings and supporting community as a whole. I thank you and I please ask you to leave it up for the month of February and to put the pride flag up in June. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Michael Scholz.
Mr. Scholz.
Yes, I'd like to uh actually address Mr. Sanchez and um the, the way that he speaks um about how Jewish people should feel. And um it, it reminds me of, of the way um a white person might say, I don't see racism. You know, and the person who doesn't see racism, maybe they don't work in their shoes. If you stand in someone else's shoes, maybe you'd see that you do see the racism. You know, um the truth or intention of Black Lives Matter organization has become sacred, a sacred cow, you know, of contemporary American countercultural. It's, it's virtually forbidden for one to question the structure, the leadership, the goals of Black Lives Matter movement without being labeled as a racist or a white supremacist or just canceled. But of course, this is just a way to silence legitimate questions and concerns that I think a lot of us have. I know many members of, of the Black Lives Matter movement and supporters who are good people, which implies one, either they're not aware of what's going on, or two, for some reason, they may actually agree with what's being said and they're just being silent. And the Barrington Town Council, by pledging their allegiance to this movement and trying to lift one minority group by oppressing another, we're leading the nation in, in reversing civil rights. And I think the United States flag truly represents what I think all of us are saying, that equality is encompassed and we stand for the, for the flag for all. Also, I, I, I don't feel as if when someone questions whether or not an American can quote Martin Luther King and say that I, I have no right to question or no right to quote Martin Luther King, we all have a right to. Because Martin Luther King did stand to where the Jews and Black Lives Matter stands against. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scholz.
Robert Stern.
Mr. Stern.
Hello, how are you this evening?
A little tired, sir, but please go ahead.
Thank the council for giving me the opportunity to speak before you. I've had uh several emails go back and forth between the distinguished town counselors. And uh, the one voice that we can't hear from this evening are the voices of the veterans who are, who paid the ultimate sacrifice. And those Barrington veterans who paid the ultimate sacrifice are memorialized where that flag is, where the flags are located on town property. And before the council ends the evening, if you don't mind, I'd like to just reread the email that I sent over to the, to the counselors. And before you vote, if you vote this evening, try to imagine being in the boots of those who wore the uniforms of our country soldiers. Try to imagine talking with a buddy and in an instant, he is killed in action. Try to think of the flag draped coffin that is sent back home to a grieving family and community. Try to think of the mournful sound of the bugle playing taps at the end of the soldier's funeral. Try to think of the flag that once covered that coffin now crisply folded and handed to the grieving mother or wife of that buddy. Try to think of the flag that is placed on every soldier's grave on Memorial Day in this country. Try to think of keeping a promise to a loved one that you would visit that soldier's grave when that grieving mother can no longer do so. And here's the hardest part for the distinguished members of the Barrington County Council. Try to think of the memories of the soldiers who are memorialized at the Veterans Memorial in front of the town hall. We are elected to serve and try to think of the flag that they would want to be memorialized by. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you folks.
Thank you, Mr. Stern.
Deborah Nizer.
Ms. Nizer.
Hi, that gentleman just spoke so eloquently. Um, my son's name is on that honor roll in front of that town hall. Um, and I hope that you can imagine when he went into the Marine Corps that uh two weeks later, nine eleven occurred. We never thought we'd have to send our son off to war, not once, but twice. And how you don't sleep at night and how he fought uh so valiantly and came home a wounded warrior. Um, and I go back to keeping the politics off the flag. And I stand with the veterans and I don't know if I can even say it more better than the gentleman that just spoke for those. Because if you have to imagine yourself as a parent praying to God that you're not going to get that knock on your door and you lived and breathed for those Sunday phone calls that came at four in the morning because Iraqi time obviously is different than United States time. Um, I, I, I'm so disappointed um in how some people have been treated. And I, I, and I'm sorry for that, but I want you to realize that during the summer, we all went about our business. One person that day decided to do a despicable thing. And that despicable thing was calling that lovely family that I'm friends with um that name. And we're all now racist. We're being called bigots. This town didn't deserve to be that, called that. And I'm so disappointed in the emails that were received and the fact that if you don't agree, you're this and you're that. Um, and I, I'm ashamed. So thank you, that sir, sir before me that spoke so eloquently because I'm proud to say that my son's name is on that wall. And I'm also proud that my other son, who just got back to the United States the other day from being, being deployed, that we can all sleep a little tighter because, you know what, they got the bad guys and they got the ones that were threatening our security and our, and, and through terrorism. And I thank God.
Thirty seconds.
So get the politics off the flag. So get the politics off the flag, adopt a policy that I I'm not for this policy, but please, th- this is this is, there's other things to worry about. There's, we're in a pandemic. This town council, the the citizens of this town, we've got to get on with our lives. And we have to know that, you know what? We weren't racist and bigots before, but all of a sudden, one person that afternoon decided. I guess more people got to go on a little bit farther. I guess I didn't. But thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nizer.
Thank you. Thank you. Since you may or may not be aware that this is a time of rising antisemitism globally as well as in the United States. There are attacks on Jews for being the cause of COVID nineteen. There are attacks on Jews as has been described by some of the other folks here. One of the things that Rhode Island Coalition for Israel does is to raise awareness about antisemitism. You may have seen on the Blue Bug on Route ninety five in July, we had a huge banner that said, Stop Antisemitism. Because that's that's what we do, just like Black Lives Matter wants to raise awareness about the problem of racism. And so if you should go down the slippery slope of putting up this and that banner, um, we want to put in a formal request to fly our stop antisemitism banner um, on the flagpole, whatever it is, however it is you designate to be done. So wherever you go with that tonight, please inform us if in fact you're going to be doing this with various flags, what the procedure is for making a formal request. Because we have a flag for you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Pamela Panatowsky is back, raised her hand again. I'm going to try and allow her to speak.
Hello. My name is, hi, I'm on my friend Pamela's phone and my name is John Wright. I have grown up in Barrington. Went to Barrington Christian Academy. And then I went to Barrington High School in nineteen ninety-two. And I've recently come back to the area. And when I was in high school, I remember there was one black dude at Barrington High School. Charles Parmley. And I was friends with him as much as I could be. I was like a little freshman. He was like the the star basketball player, surprise, surprise. And life was not easy for Charles Parmley as the only, I'm pretty sure the only black man at Barrington High School. So I think about the flag that you're flying. I just encourage everyone to like jump into the deep end. Like it's not, to me, it's not about Marxism. It's not about picking apart little planks and a platform. It's not about BDS. I'm against BDS. I'm against antisemitism. That is a big problem, but yo, Heschel and MLK marched together. They didn't agree on everything, but Heschel decided to march with that movement. This is the moment where black lives come to the forefront. And antisemitism is important and 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 being all these great, there's lots of things to talk about, but right now we're in two pandemics. It's the pandemic of COVID and the pandemic of white supremacy that's been around since sixteen nineteen. We've got four hundred years that we're dealing with. So for all my Jewish friends, just jump into the deep end. This is this is about lifting up black lives, keep that flag up for Charles Parmley so he could come back to Barrington and be proud of the trajectory that we're on. See all the African American people that are now living in this town. See that flag flying in our town square and be proud of who we are. So let's keep that flag up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, and I think Rabbi Los Altman is, uh, maybe our last person.
I've got one more, Emily.
No, that's, I think that's the rabbi.
That's right, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you for allowing me to speak again. I didn't have an opportunity to say that that I just, it's important to note that the Rhode Island Coalition for Israel does raise awareness about antisemitism, but only of one kind. And it's important to remember that. As I said earlier, they don't enjoy the support of the Jewish Alliance, nor do they they enjoy the support of any congregational rabbi in um in the Rhode Island area. And they're raising antisemitism is only uh what they perceive antisemitism to be on the left. So that, for example, uh, when a rabbi uh, that belongs to the Rhode Island Board of Rabbis belonged to Jewish Voice for Peace, which is a left wing group. The Rhode Island Coalition demanded that that rabbi be expelled from the Board of Rabbis because they she didn't agree with their position on Israel. This is not about antisemitism. It never has been. This is about suppressing voices on the left that disagree with them. And it's important to note that because that's what keeping politics off the pole is about. It's about suppressing speech they don't like. And quite frankly, in this country, we need to be able to speak freely. We need to be able to fight for justice, equality, equity and inclusion, which is what that flag represents. It's all about diversity and voices that haven't been heard before. It's time we heard them. I thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Rabbi. It appears that we have heard from everyone. And seeing no further hands, I, oh. Beelahfa, please go ahead.
Thank you. I know it's late. I'm not going to take too long. Um, can you hear me? I heard a lot of folks saying, keep politics off the pole, keep politics off the flag. Well, the flag represents all of us. So if you want to keep politics of the flag, you make sure tonight before you go to bed, that your neighbor who is black or Muslim or Jewish, Jewish or Buddhist or from Senegal or from any country in the world has the same rights and feel as safe as you in your house. Thank you.
Thank you. It appears that we have no further uh members of public who would like to be heard, so I'm closing the public hearing. It it is late, but I uh before we kind of get into the nuts and bolts of it, does anyone from the council want to be heard sort of more generally before we get into the specific language? Yes, Vice President Hum, please.
Well, I I I have a few very brief preliminary comments, um, but even before I get into those, um, I I would be interested in hearing from Mr. Ursillo with respect to some of the uh statements that were made legally. Um, I I wrote down three specifically. Maybe there's more in there, but I'd be I'd be curious to get his um, opinion on that. It's kind of part one, but also part two. And more importantly, I do want to make sure because some of the comments seem to be referencing an older version of the flag ordinance that Mr. Breyer had submitted at the last meeting. And I think, Mr. Carroll, as you pointed out, before the comments were heard, there were some revisions. Um, you submitted some revisions, Ms. Conway submitted some, um, I submitted some as well that made it into the materials in the agenda, but um, I don't know if that one was circulated um that everyone else saw specifically. It was more the the merged version. So I I wanted to point that out, that some of the comments were geared towards an older version, but um, before I give, you know, any preliminary comments I have, I'm interested in Mr. Ursillo's thoughts. And and Mr. Ursillo, I'm happy to 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 raise what they were, just to um, to go through it that way, but I I think it's important.
So if you're talking about the pretextual nature of the ordinance with regard to government speech, there's no question in my mind based on the case law, all the way up to the United States Supreme Court, that what you do on this flagpole is government speech. You as the council, the representative, um, members of the community who have been elected have the right to decide um, what a policy is with parameters. And um, you have the right to decide to enact it ordinance. And once enacted, you have the clear right to decide um, which flags to fly or not to fly. I I think the case law cannot be any clearer. So that that and I don't see it as pretextual. I don't see it as setting you up for failure if you move, if you decide to move forward with such an ordinance. It's been done in many, many communities throughout the country. It's been done in communities here in Rhode Island. Some communities adopt an ordinance that is before you this evening, for instance. Other communities have simply put into place policies which don't have the strength of an ordinance, but nonetheless set forth parameters. Were there other legal issues?
Oh, and it, no, and actually, in fact, Mr. Ursillo, you answered it. Anything that was raised that I had in mind, you answered it all with within that um, that statement. So thank you. And 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 I I mentioned I have comments. I'm I'm going to reserve on my comments until um I go through some proposed additional changes I have to the updated version.
Anyone else on the council want to be heard before we sort of get into the nitty gritty of it? Okay, um, and I'll just say I'm grateful to members of the public for uh, sticking with us, for going through this. Um, as I said, this is, this can be a very passionate debate and it was a very robust debate. I I am glad to, I was still glad to hear from Rabbi Los Altman from from Temple Haven in about uh his support and the support of other faith leaders who are on on the call for the the flying of the flag. Um, in terms of veterans, I I reached out to veterans that I uh, know and love. And and one of them is a combat veteran. Uh, and I asked him what he thought and his view was that we post the POW MIA flag on that poll. And he said that we do that for a reason. And the reason is to send a message that we shouldn't forget. And he said, is that the only message that we want to send? And I thought that was um pretty profound. So, uh, but now, uh, we've talked a little bit about the sort of general stuff. Let's let's get into the specifics. And I want to suggest a a man a manner that we go forward because we have we'll we'll just go section by section. And I think, um, you know, we'll see if anyone has any changes to any individual sections. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay.
Are we, are we starting with the amended version that has the the green and the highlighted text?
Uh, I'm going to start kind of with the original version that you had. I had a really hard time understanding the green and the highlighted text. So I'm just going to go by the section and starting with section one oh four dash one, does anyone have any changes? Didn't look like anybody had any changes to that. The findings. Yes, Vice President Hum, please.
Yes, thank you. And 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 I apologize, I did. They're they're all reflected in that amended version.
I I I would suggest that 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 amended version be the basis for it and and further, I would move uh, for adoption of the ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty seven as amended um, January twenty-six, uh, two thousand twenty-one, as drafted by Jacob Breyer.
I second that motion.
Be at least, and and at that point, I understand counselors will have discussions, but I think there there was an effort to incorporate amendments that were produced over over some time. And that's my understanding.
So help me to understand, okay, so most have been made and seconded. Now we'll have further discussion. Um, Carl, are you referring to the one that has the green and yellow or the blue and the lighter blue and the yellow?
Yeah, and and at the bottom, it says amended January twenty-six, twenty twenty-one. And I believe that was, that may that may make things more efficient um, for us to actually have a basis to work from where changes have already been incorporated rather than than possibly reinventing the wheel um, and and starting over with those changes. Now, I understand you know, my colleagues may have may differ on that. Um, but uh, I thought that 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 the policy struck a balance and I and I support it. Um, but I also think it would move us down the road to to begin there. And I and I certainly respect differing opinions on it.
Okay, so looking at that policy as as it's been made, does anyone have any changes? That is section one oh four one, this is the one with that that is the January twenty-six, twenty twenty-one that has the green additions, Town of Barrington, the town to convey messages that. Any changes to that? Okay, Rob, go ahead.
Um, and and thank you. I do, I saw Mr. Breyer had his hand up again before I did. Is there anything you wanted to jump on first?
Oh, I was just going to explain because President Carroll said it was hard to follow, but starting at page seven, it just reads straight through. The colors are just, the green is what changed exactly word for word from an amendment. And the yellow highlights are where I reworded the changes. But if you read it start to finish, it's one solid continuous ordinance.
Okay. Okay. I understand. Um, Vice President Hum, did you have anything for one oh four one?
I did not to the first paragraph.
Okay, anything uh to the second paragraph?
I had a, are you asking me or are you asking the group?
Anyone, yep.
I had a question.
Sure.
My my question on one oh four dash two is it refers to flying the flag of the the United States of America as the standing practice. And it refers to flying the POW MIA flag as a policy. And I personally, I didn't understand the difference between the two or the origination of them um, and why we refer to them differently.
I um, I I saw your note on that. And I intended to change this to, um, so the second sentence starts. It is also the standing policy or standing practice. I I meant to repeat the language. There's not an intended distinction between the two. They're both standing practices.
Does anyone have any concerns or about that? Okay, Mary, can you make that change so that in section one oh four dash two, it says in the second sentence, it is also the standing practice instead of the policy. Okay?
I saw that right after I sent it to Mary.
Okay. Okay, and then the definitions, one oh four three, any changes, concerns? Okay, sure, Rob, go ahead.
This is as minor as it gets, but it's just, um, we had defined town council earlier as the council, so just deleting town in that very last line. So it's just as council.
Uh, yep, Mary, can you do that? Delete the word town and just before the last word council. Okay, um, section one oh four four, any changes to that? What concerns? Yes, Rob, please.
Sorry, sorry to 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 hog all the um, the discussion on this. Um, do you want me to go all the way through A, B, and C?
Sure, yeah.
Okay. Um, in A, the only change is the same thing, deleting town and leaving as council in two different places. Uh, in B, similar change, but different phrase. Um, instead of Town of Barrington, we defined it just as the town, so delete of Barrington.
No.
And then there's two. And then there's two statutory references where it says Rhode Island General Laws. In both instances, put the symbol sign.
Add the symbol signs for section 16.
Dash two dash 15, and then again, there's 16 dash nine dash 10.
Okay.
And then in section C, I do have a more substantive type of a change. I'll do the, the minor wordsmithing change first to delete of Barrington again and just leave it as town. But the substantive change is to where it says individuals carrying flags to insert the term lawful, so therefore carrying lawful flags.
Okay.
Which I think is an important distinction because I don't think, if we're going to implement a policy, I don't think we want to endorse slanderous, you know, you name it. You know, things that wouldn't qualify under the first amendment essentially.
To me, so lawful flags, Mary, with that?
Correct, so, so yeah, it'd be carrying lawful flags. And for that section, that's it for me.
Okay, any, any concerns or anything on that? Okay, 104-5. First bit there is, doesn't look like there's any concerns. I'm going to say that you could delete town because we've defined town council as, in, in, in subpart A, we've defined it as council, so. I would. I, I'm not sure that we need to have the, this is, this highlighted, say, any resolutions regarding or adopted with this chapter predate the enactment shall remain in effect. It seems like kind of a vestigial sort of thing that we don't really need because we're, we're going to vote on this. Keep it in there?
I feel very strongly that it stays in.
Why?
Because we, we passed a resolution last year honoring Pride Month and creating Barrington Pride Month every June and raising the pride flag every June. And when I set about drafting this, I spoke with the solicitor's office to make sure that this could be crafted in a way that would not negate that so that we would then go to the LVGTQIA+ community and say, you now have to ask again. We've, we've given that as a council, we've taken that step, and this allows that to stay.
Okay, first of all, I didn't know that's what you were referring to. I thought you were referring to the Black Lives Matter flag ordinance, excuse me, vote in September. So it never occurred to me on that. I'm going to assume too that for Pride Month, we're going to do another resolution. We're going to recognize that. So we're not stuck with the last resolution for Pride Month. We can, we can do one every year and, and. So.
I think, sorry. No, I, I think we, we absolutely can and should pass a new resolution celebrating June as Pride Month. I think we should do it in June, but I think that's very different than to change, to negate what's already been done. You know, keeping, allowing it to stay doesn't mean we can't pass new resolutions. But I don't want this ordinance to eliminate an old one. It's the only, it's the only, or the only resolution we have that we've passed that relates to, to flags. So it would be the only thing impacted by removing this sentence.
Actually, we also have the Black Lives Matter resolution. But Counselor Conway, you wanted to say?
I just, I wanted to just agree with Jacob on that one, that I don't think, given that it's an annual, that the resolution was passed in, to be in the future, we wouldn't have to pass the resolution every year. We could, but we wouldn't have to. So I agree that it should stay in there.
Okay. Vice President Humm, you?
I see, I see Mr. Costello, his hand raised. I've, I've spoken enough, I can certainly wait.
I concur with Counselor Conway and Counselor Brier on that same issue. And I think it's fair to say, and far be it from me, you speak for anyone else, but it's fair to say that that was the understanding of the, of the affected constituency as well last year.
Yeah, okay. Resolution, so, okay, so I'm, I'm fine with that. But I thought that we were talking about the, the Black Lives Matter one. And it just wouldn't make a difference because we're doing something about it right after. Vice President Humm, please.
I, I have a suggestion to maybe address both aspects of things. What if we add language at the end, you know, comma, either unless or until, whatever the better word is, until the, the council, you know, either adopts a new resolution or reviews it again, or something like that. And I, and I have that in mind for the, the first thing that you mentioned, Mr. Carroll, which was referring to the next agenda item being something that's going to be up for discussion. And whatever this ordinance says is either going to stay in place or it's not going to stay in place. I think perhaps it's, it's, I think it might be helpful to indicate that, you know, that it's, it's a temporary ordinance in terms of raising temporary flags. I think, I think I agree with what you said earlier that probably the, if you want to talk about the pride flag, I think it probably will come before the council again, you know, on an annual basis, which I think is absolutely the right thing to do. But I think, you know, I don't know what other resolutions are out there. I, I'd feel more comfortable using some kind of qualifying language to indicate, you know, until the council revisits the issue or until the council adopts a new resolution with respect to whatever flag it might be. So that's what I propose. I don't, I don't have specific words, but I think you get kind of the theme of what I'm referring to.
Yep, so we could add, any resolutions regarding flag raising that were adopted in a consistent manner in this chapter that predate the enactment of this chapter shall remain in effect until voted on, until otherwise voted on by the council?
Yeah, something along those lines. I think those words work for me.
Okay. So it'll remain in effect until otherwise voted on. Can, can you get that, Mary, after?
Yeah, what do other folks think though?
First, the, the Black Lives Matter flag, we voted to keep it up, but it was not a resolution. And it was certainly not, not a resolution that was passed in a consistent manner with this policy whereas the, the pride resolution was. And also, I believe Mr. Costello can comment. But regardless of whether we add that new language to this ordinance, a new resolution of the council would supersede an old resolution.
This is my.
If it relates.
Yeah, this is Mike. So a resolution, though, would not override an ordinance. A resolution would have to be in conformity with an ordinance because an ordinance would take precedence over a resolution. If you're going to add the language that Counselor Humm has suggested, I would use the term unless as opposed to until. But.
I recommend doing that because, first of all, I, I can't remember, but we, we have probably by resolution in the past flown the Armenian flag to commemorate Armenian genocide. I'm, I'm not wild about enacting as an ordinance something that we would have to go through a couple of steps if Pride Month changed from one month to the next or something like that. Or if we decided to fly it for a longer period or something. So I would say, my proposal would be to add the language Rob said, unless. The, what did you suggest, Mike? Getting a little late on not as. Unless changed by a vote of the council?
Yeah, you, you could, yes, unless changed by a vote of the council, sure.
Okay, that language. Anyone? Are we okay with that language?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm moving on to the next one.
No. I'm, I'm not okay with changing that line.
Okay. I'm not okay with making a resolution that is going to have, become an ordinance. I think, I think that belongs as a resolution. I think an ordinance is, is too strong for it. So I would, I would ask that we, I guess we could vote on that individually, Mike, could we?
Yeah, here's my suggestion. Get through the rest of the ordinance to see if there's agreement. There's, up until now, there's been agreement on all the changes. So let's see what else is out there, see if we have agreement on the remaining changes. And then you only have one amendment to have to deal with.
Okay, okay. Does that work for you, Jacob?
Yeah.
Okay, so the next one is a resolution, so demonstrate a non-political purpose. But let's, yes, Counselor Conway.
I just wanted to strike non-political.
Okay. Okay, yeah, that's kind of my concern too because I don't want someone debating over what is political or not. We get into a semantics argument. And I don't want to get into that argument. Because you could certainly claim, as people have, that Black Lives Matter is a political statement, while others would not call it a political statement.
For the, for the, for the record, I, I fully concur with Counselor Conway on that as well. And, and if you could get into arguing about an Arbor Day flag or an Earth Day flag, I mean, it's just going to be, let's not, let's not go there. Don't make, don't, don't add that ambiguity.
Okay. I'm not sure who, who added that language, but does any, Rob, please.
Yeah, so I was only going to comment that that, that was my addition. I completely agree with what Ms. Conway and Mr. Costello said with respect to how tricky of a word it is. I put it in there for discussion purposes under the, the thought that, you know, perhaps there's a way for the council to demonstrate in its resolution a non-political purpose. I don't know how to define that, which is the struggle and I think what, what Ms. Conway pointed out. So I'm, I'm willing to move on from that because it is a, it's a fairly arbitrary term. But I did at least want my intent to be conveyed that, you know, I do think there should be some sort of, you know, non-political or non-partisan showing or demonstration before the council votes on a resolution.
Okay.
I would, I would note that the, the term does appear in two places.
Okay, yeah, it, it appears in subpart B. B1, right? Okay.
Yes.
So, so that was Rob. So if he's okay with striking that, I guess everyone else is. Jacob, you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I, I included it for the same reason that, that Rob suggested it. I do think it would be incumbent on the council at the time to demonstrate a non-political reason. But I think, you know, codifying that does create unnecessary ambiguity.
Yeah. Okay, so. Yes.
Two more edits that I may be editing myself, but I had, I think I'm the one who changed it to may, and I'd like to return it to shall for both of those.
I think I was actually the one who changed it to may.
Oh, okay, okay.
All, all three of you did.
The reason I said that I wanted to have may is that, especially with the second may, there appeared to be a shall sponsor the proposal. That, that made it not discretionary. So any individual or group, I guess you could say shall. But if they work with a member of the council, then you have lost the ability to do otherwise because you've made it a shall and not a may. So I, I wanted to leave it as may. Yes, Vice President Humm?
I can, sorry.
You got it.
I had, I had the, the intent of it setting up, if a member of the public or a group from the public wants a resolution, that in order to have it come before the council, a member of the council must bring it before the council. And so to accomplish that, I think, I think doing shall for the first one and then may for the second one.
Okay. I'm okay with that. I just, okay, so Mary, if you can change that? Now, B. I don't have any problem with the, the B before we get to the one. Yes, Mary, please. I can't, I still can't hear you. The first one.
Yes.
The first one is shall. So A to, flag raising shall work with a member or members of the council or the town manager who may sponsor. Okay. Any problems with the B before the number one? I'm seeing any. Let me tell you sort of the, no members of the. I, I guess we can get to that, we'll take it in order. Notice has been provided to the council in writing at least three business days in advance describing the flag. It's not political purpose. I guess the, the issue I have with that is there may be times you just want to throw something up, like. I guess it's not urgent, but maybe we want to, geez, I don't know. If, if there was some terrible tragedy that befell another city or town in Rhode Island, we might want to raise their flag under that as a sign of solidarity. Or if the Little League gets in, into the World Series, we might want to raise that flag. I just, three business days is a lot of time.
President Carroll, if I could, my thought on that was, and I was thinking of a tragedy, we lost a firefighter or a policeman. I don't want to have to wait three days to raise the flag of that department on our flagpole.
Yeah. I, I think, you know, here's the, here's the thing. This, this provides discretion to the, the town manager. But there are consequences to the town manager doing this, potential consequences. So if the town manager puts up a flag that is, that the council would disagree with, the very least that would happen is that the council reverses that decision. It's an embarrassment. Very most that could happen is that the council fires the manager. So that's, I think there is a inherent sort of guide there. And how do you, how would you address it? If the manager puts something up, then we certainly could call a special town council meeting. That requires some advanced warning. If the manager did something, you know, crazy enough, we could call an emergency council meeting because the manager might be impaired in some way. If the, fly a ridiculous sort of flag, I don't know. But anyway, um, I, I would just suggest that, at lea-, I would just say at least one business day in advance, and that, you know, that should give us sufficient warning, where if it's something we don't wanna do, we can immediately call for a special town council meeting. And then it has flown potentially. Of course, if we call for a special town council meeting and it still flies, then that's a very defiant manager. So, I would just suggest that we change that to one business day.
I would, I would, I would agree with that. There, there, we need a responsiveness, especially in the case of a potential tragedy, whether it involves firefighters or anything like that. I, I think we do wanna be responsive as a community as quickly and efficiently as possible.
I think that was my edit, and I, I can understand why we would go for one business day, so I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Agreed.
I'm, I'm okay with switching it to one business day, but the, um, for me, it's not about responsiveness or discretion, it's about a judgment on whether the decision warrants public input and a statement to the public before a flag goes up. Now, in, I've only been in Barrington five and a half years. In that time, we've flown the Armenian flag a few times. We flew the pride flag once, and now the BLM flag is up. Before that, I'm told, no non-government flag had gone up. And so, I don't know how important that responsiveness is with raising a flag. When we've spent hours deliberating this, to, and it shows how important it is to the community. So, the reason for the three days is to ensure that it's a non-controversial flag, and that's why any one member of the council can kind of raise their hand and say, "No, we need to discuss this publicly first, we can't just put it up". I don't know how we would define when that's not needed. I certainly agree, member of, of the fire department or the police department, some huge national tragedy, certainly. But where is that definition? So, I don't know, that's, that's where I'm coming from. So, I'm, I'm okay with a day, but I, I don't think it should need to be a meeting.
I'm sorry, you don't think it should be to?
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with a, with one day's notice. But I, I guess I'm kind of moving on to the next step. Is, uh, but yeah, I, I'm okay with one day.
Yeah, okay. So, the, the concern that I have with this next one, and Mike, you can tell me whether, um, wrong about this, but I think it's a violation of the Open Meetings Act. The town council, the town manager cannot write to four members of the, five members of the council and say, "Unless I hear otherwise, unless anyone objects, then I'm going to do XYZ". That is a vote. If, it's unanimous vote if he doesn't hear from anyone, but it's a vote. And I'm certain that that is a violation of the, the Open Meetings Act. In this case, it's the same thing, except we've codified it. So, we've codified a violation of the Open Meetings Act by saying, you know, any one member can vote to put this down. Either he has the discretion, or he doesn't. So, that's my concern. Mike, is that, that's what I read from Amy's comments?
Yeah, so, so what would happen is, the way I see it happening, is if one member of the council objects, then a meeting should be called with 48 hours' notice to deal with it. That's, that's the way you would stay within the confines of the Open Meetings Act.
Okay. So, that is, we could, we could certainly put something in that said, "In such a case, any, any member of the council can call for a meeting in 48 hours".
And no flag would go up until the meeting is held?
Well, that's a vote. I mean, either he has the discretion or he doesn't.
Right, I, I, I agree, at some point, you either have to have trust in the, in the manager to, as Mike pointed out earlier, not do something that would knowingly upset the community and the rest of the council. Otherwise, there'll be consequences for the manager's actions. So, at some point, it becomes a level of trust. So, I think Vice President Hum wants to speak.
Uh, yes, Rob, please.
No, thank you, and, and with, with respect to that level of trust, first of all, I do trust Mr. Cunha. Um, but obviously, this is an ordinance, this, this goes, you know, into perpetuity or until it's changed. So, whoever's sitting here on this Zoom call may not be making the decisions at the time. But I, the, in B, the first section of highlighted language I, I had added, I don't know if it's exactly as I added it, but the theme of what I added was focusing on the fact that as our town manager, Mr. Cunha, or whoever it is, i- is essentially acting as the, the CEO of the town, the chief operator of the town, and flags can be an operational decision. Um, so, for example, if you're gonna fly the flags at half-mast, that's a decision that the town manager makes, the, the council doesn't get notice of it. I'm not saying it's the same thing as, as putting up a flag and, and, you know, whatever that flag may be, but that's what I was trying to, to focus on there, to try to show that level of trust that he's in that position for a reason, to make those types of decisions. So, I'm, I'm not necessarily commenting on the, the number of days. If I am, I, I think, you know, at least one day is fine, I don't even know if it needs to be a business day. And then perhaps we could operate under the, um, the proposal that Mr. Rissillo put forth, you know, the call the meeting within 48 hours if anybody objects. But I wanted to comment on that, so, thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think if it's, yeah, I, I think, um, a, a day is a day notice, and then, so, what, a flag would be up for two days at the most. Right, so.
Unless it's a weekend, because
Right.
you can't count weekends in the 48-hour notice. But if it were done on a Friday, so you could have the meeting on a Tuesday.
Yeah, and, and to Rob's point, or, sorry, to Vice President Hum's point, this isn't about tru- trust in Jim, it's about a council and a town manager. And right now, we have five relatively aligned council members and a relationship with a town manager that works well. And in the future, that could very much not be the case. But also, had, had there been this block in place, we would have been having this meeting at the end of August. And it's gone on for, for many months, because there wasn't some sort of clause to bring this to the public to speak about. It's, it's not about who decides, it's about the public being involved.
Okay, uh, are you? And so, with regard to this, what's your view?
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with one day notice, provided a meeting will be called if one member of the council wants a meeting within 48 hours.
How about for section, subpart 2, this language, and I'll, I'll say it twice, Mary, so that, I'll say it, and then see how people feel about it, and then if they agree, I'll read it again slowly. "If any member of the council so requests a meeting to address the raising of the flag, shall be held within two business days thereafter." Does that make sense?
Yeah, how about, um, as soon as possible as permitted by the Open Meetings Act?
Okay, that's better. Oh, uh, for subpart 2, uh, "If any of the council so requests, a meeting shall be held as soon as possible."
Consistent with the Open Meetings Act. Or in compliance, maybe in compliance with the Open Meetings Act would be stronger.
Yeah.
Going back to subsection 1 for a moment, did we say to strike "non-political" in that line as well?
Yes.
Yes.
That would be 2.
Does 2 as rewritten make 3 superfluous?
No, 'cause if there was no objection, if nobody called the meeting, the council should still discuss and act on it at its next meeting, so that the public can have a voice in the flag being raised. If, if the flag is still up, if it's not still up, there's no need.
Okay, um, I'm okay with that, are we all okay with that? Did you get it, Mary? You want me to repeat it? Okay. If any mem-, this is subpart 2, "If any of, member of the council so requests, a meeting shall be held as soon as possible in compliance with the OMA." Then we go in, and then it go "and", and then we go to 3. Are we all okay with that? I will make a motion.
Mike, Mike, can I, I just got one more thought, um, and it's what, what we've done with the flag since the BLM flag's been up. There's been two occasions where we've been directed by the president or the governor to lower the flag to half-mast. And so, I might suggest that you add a, a paragraph C that says something to the effect of, "When directed by the president or the governor to lower the United States flag to half-mast, any temporary flag will be removed in respect for the solemnity of the occasion."
Oh, I think that's great. Uh, we did that for, um.
We did it twice. I just think it takes away for the reason it's at half-mast.
Yeah. That, that makes sense to me, everybody else okay with that?
I agree, yeah.
And, and the flag is just about on the ground at that point.
Yeah, true.
Oh, okay, so that would be C. And Mary, uh, Jim actually wrote that down, so you can get that from him. Uh, would anyone like to make this motion?
Well, sorry, the, um, point of order, Counsel Castell made the motion, and I seconded it.
Yeah, that was before it was amended. Uh, there is a way to do this, but I'm gonna suggest that the easier way would be for Counsel Castell to make a motion to adopt this as presented, and you second this one.
Yeah.
I, I, I so moved to adopt, um, ordinance 2020-27, uh, as, as amended and recently, um, recently drafted. Is that adequate?
I, I think as amended is, is enough, because you're amending it, you're actually amending it this evening. Tonight is the night you're amending the original ordinance.
Okay. Uh, okay.
And I second.
And it's actually this morning, not tonight.
Yes, the motion is made and seconded. Uh, Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
I have a comment before I vote. Um, I don't think we've addressed, uh, section 104-5A, we were gonna.
Correct.
You're right, you're right.
You're gonna make me do this a third time, aren't you?
Absolutely.
Well, I, so, there, there we are, I, I feel strongly that we should, we should adopt resolutions, uh, supporting various things, uh, but we shouldn't adopt a, set up a, uh, an ordinance for something that really is, um, intended for resolutions. So, that's where I feel, and I know Jacob disagrees. So, should, should we vote on just that issue, that one issue separately?
I would suggest, uh, Mike, that you make a motion to add that language, see if it gets a second, have discussion, and then vote on that. Once that's decided, you can go back and vote on the entire ordinance as amended.
Okay. So, uh, section 104-5, subpart A, uh, the last sentence, at the end of that last sentence, which currently reads, "Any resolutions regarding flag raisings that were adopted and consistent with this chapter that predate the enactment of this chapter shall remain in effect", I would add, comma, "unless changed by a vote of the council", and I make the motion to add that. Is there a second to that motion?
Seconded.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, uh, yes, Rob?
I just wanted to echo what, uh, you said, Mr. Carroll, about the differences between resolutions and ordinances. I, I don't think we should, um, be codifying resolutions. Um, I think it just, it creates too tangled of a web. If you, if at any point in the future, again, it's not gonna be this council sitting here, and this town manager, and everybody else who's tuned into the Zoom call, it's gonna be a different group of people. So, I, I, I don't think, um, I don't think we should have resolutions tied into ordinances like this, so, I agree with that, thank you.
I, I would tend to point out that, that what we had before, and I, and I like the, the language of a perpetual, Pride Month is what we talked about before, but, but that, that was always something that a future council could take action on. And so, the practical effect is limited. And so, that, and, and in that sense, and, and for those legal reasons expressed by President Carroll and Vice President Hum, I, I would tend to concur with that, I understand where you're going. You may have to make refer, refer in that would make it more complicated.
If, um, a future council can amend this ordinance and remove it at that point, but I don't see why we would create an ordinance that negates something that we've already done. What we're, what we would do by adding this amendment is to say, "We are no longer celebrating Pride Month every year", that every year, we will have to choose whether or not we honor Pride Month. And I think it is far too important of a step that we took last year to undo by removing.
That's, that's not accurate. It, it would say, "Unless changed by a vote of the council", so.
Point, like, it, it would require, all along, it would have to require an affirmative act by the, by another council, which, yeah, you're right, would reflect a different set of values than, than we have. Um, at least that's my understanding. And so, that, that, and, and that was true even before this proposed amendment, correct?
That's right.
But with this sentence, the Pride Resolution will continue on unless voted by an additional, by a different resolution.
Was always the case, right, that's my understanding, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I just, I wanna clarify that, because we're not removing the sentence at all, we're saying that we're continuing whatever was decided before, un- un- whatever was decided before, unless it's voted to end by another council, which is what.
That is a correct interpretation.
Okay.
And, and if we do not add it, could it be undone? If we do not add it, could, could a council vote to not celebrate Pride Month?
A council could ultimately vote to not celebrate Pride Month by, they would need to do, you're saying without this change, they would need to introduce an ordinance and hold a public hearing to do that.
Well, I guess it's a question for Mike Ursillo. With, without, without the amendment, can a council not make a resolution that would negate a prior resolution?
Right, right. So without the amendment, those resolutions or that resolution is basically grandfathered in. And the only way to un-grandfather it would be to amend the ordinance itself, which of course is a very different procedure than changing a resolution. So, so.
So I, yeah, I, I believe a change that significant should require a public hearing. I don't think that we should remove our annual celebration of Pride Month with one simple vote. I, I think that amending the ordinance should be required to remove Pride Month. And so I'm going to stand firm that we don't change.
Yeah.
The.
Jacob, you have the legal implications correct. You are right in what would be required if that send, that clause were added.
Two, two meetings instead of one.
So, motion's been made and seconded. The motion is to add the language unless changed by a vote of the council. Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye, to add the language.
Okay. Counselor Brier, how do you vote?
Nay.
Okay. Counselor Conway, how do you vote?
Nay.
Counselor Castell, how do you vote?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The motion carries three to two. So now with that change, we are ready to, for.
I would like to make a motion.
Sure.
I, in section 104-2, prior to the last sentence, it is to add, it is also the standing practice of the town to raise the Pride flag during Pride Month.
Are you trying to make it so that we will have to have two meetings to change?
Could, yes, two meetings that have to remove Pride.
Okay. Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Can you repeat it again, Jacob? Sorry.
Yes, it is also the standing practice of the town to raise the Pride flag during Pride Month.
Mike Ursillo, is that, because it says the method for establishing or ceasing additional flag raisings shall be set forth in this ordinance, is that the place where it should be included or would it be further on down?
Not to. So, I think, you know, Jacob is trying to, as he just said, make it more difficult, basically. The need for two meetings in order to change the practice of raising the Pride flag. So, it's, it's doing basically what, what you've already undone. It's, I, I mean, if, if, if the motion passes, yes, it would require an amendment to the ordinance to change that policy. So I, I guess, Counselor Conway, I would say, since you voted against the prior motion, you would be consistent by voting for this motion.
Okay, thank you.
I would, distinction is that doing it this way is not codifying a resolution in an ordinance. It is putting a practice in an ordinance akin to, that we've now included. It would take an ordinance amendment to not fly the POW flag. So it would be giving a similar weight to the Pride flag as the only other non-government flag that we fly.
Vice President Hum.
I, so I, I just wanted to comment. I'm going to vote against this particular motion, not because I have anything against the Pride flag. And in fact, when this comes up, I'll, you know, I'll tip you off. I'm going to vote in favor of raising the Pride flag during, during, during Pride Month. I think that's a great thing that we do. I think the purpose of section 104-2, it's indicating that the US flag and the Pau Mia flag are longstanding flags that have been up for a long, long time. We probably can't even trace back the history of how long they've been up there. By inserting that additional sentence, we're not making this policy about specific flags. And I know that there's been lots of discussion about the BLM flag. Now there's been more discussion about the Pride flag. I don't think we should make this specific policy about specific flags. I think it should be a general flag policy. We have the US flag, which has been up. We have the Pau Mia flag, which has been up. Everything else will be set within this particular ordinance or a further council resolution consistent with the ordinance.
So the, the POW flag went up just a few years ago, I think, by order of President Trump. So it's not, I mean, it hasn't been longstanding. It was ordered up on federal property and, and we choose, we choose to fly it.
I, I think we've flown it for years. I think since before, that predates Trump. So motion's been made. Is there a second? Okay, seeing no second, the motion fails. Now, would Counselor Castell appear to make a motion to adopt ordinance 2020-27, the flag policy as amended?
Counselor Castell appreciates the verbiage so that he can just say so moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Brier?
Disappointingly, aye.
Okay, Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The motion carries. Now, we have the, this remaining item on our agenda and according to our rules, we must allow for public comment. We only need to allow for public comment once on this. I recognize the the, the timeliness of this, that it is Black History Month. However, I should note that based on the language, the Black Lives Matter flag will continue to fly until there is another vote of the council to take it down. Because, you know, we've, we've adopted language that says something that was done consistent, oh, actually Jacob pointed out that it wasn't. So the question is, do we want to continue, keeping in mind that we have staff who are on, on here who have worked a very long day?
Mr. President, I might also add, out of, out of an abundance of caution, I scheduled this meeting for six hours. And I believe that 1:00 AM Zoom will kick us off.
Okay.
So that may help with the decision.
We could certainly have, we could certainly call a special meeting next week to deal with this one remaining issue. And I would recommend doing that. It's. That's Jacob, please.
Well, can we ask if, if anybody from the public is interested in speaking? Because it doesn't have a public hearing. If people aren't interested in speaking, then, then we can possibly vote on it. And if it's going to take more time than that, we could then proceed, reschedule a new meeting.
Okay, so far we have two. I would ask everyone from the public who would like to be heard on this to raise their hand.
There's five hands raised.
Actually fifteen minutes. We certainly could hold a meeting. Rob, please.
Just for discussion purposes, I have two very related comments. Number one, it, it's more a question maybe for Mr. Ursillo, but number one, are we required to have a public comment for this agenda item? And I'm saying that I'm very much in favor of public comment generally. But my second point is, I would submit that more than half the comments, well, more than half the comments on the flag issue addressed, on the, the flag ordinance issue, addressed the Black Lives Matter flag. I, I, I don't know how much of that would be new material. It would just be rehashing and you just kind of re, going through again, things that have already been said. So I don't, I don't know. I don't know how much more we can hear that we haven't already heard. But I also want to be fair to transparency and make sure that we're doing it the right way. So that's why I asked that first question.
All the hands just went down.
I ju, I just erased all the hands. I was going to ask anyone that still wants, just in case they were from a previous discussion.
What if it's, can we ask if anybody has anything new that they haven't already said? And give them the opportunity to do so?
We've got three hands raised.
I have a suggestion. President Carroll, if you want to have someone put a motion on the floor, get a second. And then let's see, based on what the motion is, if there's going to be public comment.
Okay, so let's do two things. First, and I can't, I don't, I've lost track of the rules. Let's just say in accordance with the rules, I make a motion to continue onto the next agenda item, even though we are past 11:00 PM. Is there a second to that? Counselor Brier made the second. Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
I think before I vote, I'm curious as to the answer on the question on public comment, whether, whether there, there's an entitlement to public comment in this item and whether they should have it.
So unless it's a public, if it's a public hearing, there, there has to be unlimited public comment. This is not a public hearing. It's simply an agenda item. And I am running to your rules now because your rules may say, even though it's not a public hearing.
They do.
You allow public comment. So what you would have to do is you'd have to suspend the rules by a fortified vote to delete public comment.
Okay. So we need to do two things. One, we need to decide if we're going to go forward with anything. And then by a fortified vote, we can suspend the rules to not allow for basically additional public comment. And I, I'm okay with that because I think everyone who's, who has their hand raised has spoken at least once and probably twice. And, and we were, we were trying to kind of combine those discussion points anyway.
So I have just confirmed that your rule would have to be suspended.
Okay. So if we suspend the rules.
You could just have a motion and vote.
Yeah, but we still need to make a motion to go past 11:00.
Yes.
Or actually we can suspend all the rules, because that's one of the rules. I'll make a motion to suspend the, the town council procedural rules.
I'll second that motion on, on the stipulation that all of the hands that are raised are people who have spoken about the Black Lives Matter flag.
Motion's been made and seconded. Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
I vote aye, because we've been here for a long time and so have the folks who are hanging on. So aye.
Okay, Counselor Brier?
Aye.
Counselor Castell?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. I believe Counselor Conway and Counselor Brier introduced a resolution. Does anyone have any questions, comments, or concerns about that, or are we prepared to vote on that?
I would, I would just like to, to point out one thing is one of the things that was brought up a few times during the public hearing on the flag is that it's just a symbol we should be doing things. And this resolution highlights some of the things that we've actually done. When the flag, the Black Lives Matter flag first went up, my thought was it should be up for a while, long enough so that we can have done something. And after a while, we can say either we haven't done anything, we don't deserve to fly it because it is just virtue signaling. Or we can look at it and say, during this time, we've accomplished things and so we don't need the flag to be up to be making that statement. We now have tangible actions we've taken. And we've taken some of those tangible actions. And so that's why after, after Black History Month, I think it is time to, to take down and to point at the, the strong steps we're taking toward diversity, equity, and inclusivity.
Counselor Conway?
May also add to that, that I think part of this is also when we raise a flag, it's part of signaling to the community the values of the town council and the beliefs that we have. And when the community takes that baton, as we've seen them do specifically recently with the Black Lives Matter flag or signs that people have in their, their lawns and they're distributing them as part of the community that's then lifting the rest of the community up. I think that the job has been done of the flag as well.
Okay. Counselor Castell?
Just to note, I know for a fact that people who have seen Black Lives Matter, but also the Pride flag go up, have been personally felt that, that welcomed feeling as, as being fully included in the community. This is important to do. It, it, I know there are other more tangible measures that we can take for, for diversity, equity, inclusion. But this makes a difference. And I know that because people have told me about it and how they felt. And, and I think that this council shows a sensitivity to both American values of equality and also Barrington values. And, and we'll keep moving forward.
Vice President Hum.
Well, I'm going to propose a, a very minor change to the, the resolution, but first I, I just wanted to say something. And first of all, I, I want to thank all the speakers. I think everybody on both sides spoke very eloquently and said some really good things that I'm not going to do nearly as good of a job putting forth. So thanks to everybody for, for taking the time to do that. From my perspective, you know, I think certainly I, I believe that Black Lives Matter. And I support Black Lives Matter, Black Lives Matters advocacy for equality, for justice, against discrimination, against racism. I'm glad and I'm optimistic for our future that the town seems to think the same way and wants to show expressed support. I do want to highlight though that I, I have two concerns with this overall issue. I think the first concern is I don't think the flag pole is the place to do it. What should or should not go on a flag pole has become way, way, way too politicized, way too divisive. And I really do think that it's to our community's detriment. I think the flag was put up with good intentions and really noble intentions. But based on the level of contention that I think we've seen, it's clear to me that this particular flag has caused our town to take several steps backwards in our ongoing goal of improving our inclusion. And improving and wanting our whole community to buy in to diversity, inclusion, and equity, which is such an important mission, I think we've actually taken steps backwards with this particular flag. I think as long as this flag. I think as long as this flag is on the flag pole, we're not going to move that ball forward. Um, in fact, I think, you know, at, at, at the last, um, DEI meeting, I think we had, uh, Trinky Ruckner spoke and talked about, you know, moving forward, moving back. Um, this is one of those areas I think we move back. So we need to really work hard to move forward after this and get everybody in the community on board. The second thing that I wanted to point out is I do think there's a difference between Black Lives Matter as a cause and Black Lives Matter, the organization. And to me, based on the research that I've done, Black Lives Matter organization is a political organization. So when I first heard that quite a while ago, I, I was surprised. I was ignorant, I was confused. I said, you know, what, what the heck do you mean? It's a, a political organization with all these, these beliefs that people have, have talked about tonight. Um, you know, I, I thought it was a, a, just a really good movement, a good, uh, essentially the good cause to uh, improve Black Lives and show support for Black Lives. Um, so I did some research and I went to the Black Lives Matter website. Um, you know, the official website. And I went as recently as yesterday, just to confirm that it was still there. And, um, I'm going to read three excerpts from the website. And, um, it's at blacklivesmatter.com backslash herstory. And the first quote is, quote, "In 2013, three radical Black organizers, dash Aleisha Garza, Patrice Cullors and Opal Tmeddy, dash created a Black-centered political will and movement-building project called hashtag Black Lives Matter," end quote. It also says, quote, "Black Lives Matter is an ideological and political intervention in a world where Black lives are systematically and intentionally targeted for demise," end quote. And it further says, "When it was time for us to leave," uh, quote, "when it was time for us to leave, inspired by our friends in Ferguson, organizers from 18 different cities went back home and developed Black Lives Matter chapters in their communities and towns," dash, "broadening the political will and movement building each, building reach catalyzed by the hashtag Black Lives Matter project and the work on the ground in Ferguson," end quote. So I, I read that because based on the description of the organization itself on its website, it indicates that it's a political organization. And I think that's really important to distinguish because I, I, I don't think as a town, we should be taking political stance. I think the town should be all for equality, all for supporting Black lives. Um, one of the speakers tonight, I wrote down her name, but it's several notes back, so I don't have it in front of me. You know, discussed a, a different type of a flag. If a flag said, um, I support Black lives. If a flag said equality or something along those lines, that's different than when it says Black Lives Matter. And even though I believe that Black Lives Matter, simply putting up a flag that says Black Lives Matter and nothing else does nothing to distinguish between the cause or organization. And that's why we've gotten such volatile reactions. So i, if, if it were to me, I, I wouldn't put that specific flag up on the flag pole. Um, I'm, I'll tell you, I'm going to vote in favor of it tonight because I do think it's important to highlight this over the, um, the, over, uh, Black History Month. So I think the timing of this is, is really important to keep that flag up there through the end of the month. Um, so the one proposed change I have to the resolution is instead of using, um, March, I think it's March 3rd is the date and I don't have that in front of me. I, I, I would use March 1st, which gets you past the end of February, which is Black History Month, and then take it down. And I think March 3rd was chosen because, um, there was a reference in the, the ordinance about, um, temporary shall mean, you know, up to 31 days or something along those lines. That was kind of a change that I had. I initially put it in as either 28, 30 or 31, depending on the month. But the intention was it goes up for a month. Um, so it's not tied to 31. And I think that provision in the ordinance also contemplates that the council can choose a, a, a different, um, timeframe. So, um, so that's what I have to say. That's the, the proposal that I have with respect to the resolution. Um, but I'll leave it for others to comment.
Uh, Jacob?
So I, I'd like to, um, follow that one with a, a comment about the 31. And then also, I, I completely agree that it is important to distinguish between a, the organization and the movement and that we're flying the flag of the movement. But it's easy to be mistaken for the flag of an organization. Uh, at first I was telling people, you know, it, Black Lives Matter doesn't have an official flag. We're flying a flag that says Black Lives Matter. But it turns out I was wrong and they do. And it looks quite different than the flag that we're flying. And so even though it's just, um, semantics, I mean, we're not flying the flag of the organization, Black Lives Matter. They have a flag and it's different. We're flying a flag that says Black Lives Matter. Um, it's, it's not the flag I would have chosen. And actually when Annalise, uh, and I were, um, discussing the resolution, we also discussed the possibility of, of a different flag. But because of timing and not being able to go into the community and discuss it with people, because we just, we didn't have time, especially with the 300 plus emails. Um, we, we figured this, this is the flag that is up. It says an important message and so we'd stick with it. But I do think if, if we're going to look at possibly doing a flag next February, I think we should find one that isn't going to create tension. We do want to bring people in together by recognizing these things. So I, I completely agree with you on, on that mark. Um, I'd, I'd be okay with March 1st. Um, you did change it to 30. I moved it to 31, just so it could be a month in any month. And so then, um, Annalisa and I, and I, I don't want to speak for her, but, um, we, we discussed extending it because February is the shortest month. And so to not have it be the shortest duration possible to raised, to be raised for a month is why we went with that. I, Counselor Conway can, can speak more?
That's exactly, the exact thinking behind it is that February is the shortest month of the year. And so to, to give it equal flying time, we would extend it further. Now that being said, I recognize it's been flying since September. But again, it's now, this is the resolution that would fly the flag until the end of the month. If the month was a normal month.
Um, so are, are we okay with modifying it to be on March 1? Or did you want to stay with March 3rd?
I'd prefer to keep it March 3rd.
Okay, uh, I don't object to that. So, uh, unless someone had an objection, did one of the two of you want to make a motion to, uh, adopt the resolution as presented?
I'll, I'll move to adopt the resolution as presented.
And I'll second.
Okay, uh, motion made by Counselor Breyer, seconded by Counselor Conway. Any further discussion? Vice President Humm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Uh, Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, the motion carries. Um, very late, let's, uh, we, we can shoot me any, uh, ideas you have for the agenda. We'll be talking about the Ad Hoc Tax Exemption Committee and whether it should continue the, the asphalt plant, the smoke-free ordinance. Um,
And a virtual, virtual FTM.
And a virtual FTM. Um, does anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
To move?
Uh, Vice President Humm, how do you vote?
I'm on the fence on this one, but aye.
Hey, Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, we are adjourned. Thank you very much for all the folks who stayed on so long.
Thank you.
Especially to the staff for.
Appreciate your time.
Thank, thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
At home safe.